Hello. Hello. All right, it appears as though we're all here and 7:30, so I guess we can get started without any further ado. And so with that, I will call this second meeting of August to order and we'll go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, which is a republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Secretary, please note the roll. And we'll move on. There were no executive session announcements. There were no executive sessions between the last meeting and this meeting, so there was no executive session announcement to make. And so we'll move on to public comment. Mrs. Custer? Sorry, is there anybody wishing to make any public comment for the first, on any agenda items for this evening?
I'm not sure if Mrs. Custer's having a problem, but there are 11 people with their hands raised right now. The first one that we have is Kelly.
All right, Ms. Barrett, if you'd open Kelly's mic.
Okay, Kelly, you should be able to talk now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can?
Yes, we can hear you.
You can hear me? Okay. It is now six days till the start of school. I will not receive my son's iPad until tomorrow night, and we are an Android family, so it now leaves me with three and a half days to try to figure out how to use this technology. I am beyond disappointed since virtual learning has been a part of this equation the whole time. There's been no training for parents, students, and staff, and the school expects us to be ready for school on August 31st. There's either a failure to provide services that can reasonably be expected. It is setting the teachers, students, and parents up for failure. We need the time and information to make this work because winging it did not work last year, and I do not want to start this year the same way. That's all.
Hey, Bob, we may want to make sure that everybody's doing agenda items first on the first public comment and then the non-agenda items on the second.
Yes, that's correct. Sorry for that clarification. We're doing off to a rough start here. Ashley has a new computer and she's having trouble getting that sorted, so we're off to a little bit of a rough start. Hold on just a second. Hang on. Try again, Ashley. No, you're not coming through. Okay, very good. Try that. All right. Bye. All right, sorry about that. Yes, I'm sorry. The, so the first public comment is, as Vice President Leach has mentioned, four agenda items. So if you're talking about anything that's on the agenda, the COVID-19 update, sports and sports and extracurricular activities, professional staff, anything that's on the agenda, that's what we want to talk about first. Then we're going to be talking about new business, and then the second public comment is the opportunity to talk about anything else that you want to talk about whatsoever. So that's how this typically works. And I'm sure we're going to have a wide-ranging discussion under that second public comment session. So if you follow that, we'd certainly appreciate that. And we do expect, like I said, the second public comment to be a wide-ranging discussion, and many topics will be discussed under new business this evening as well. So with that, we have 10 more hands at least for this. And also, when you do, when the mic is open for you, if you would also mention not only your name, but also your address as well.
Okay, the next person is Stephanie. Stephanie, if you could give us your address and confirm that your question is for an item that's on the agenda?
Hold the agenda down so people can see what's on the agenda.
All right, looks like Stephanie isn't on now. Next person is Jerry Thomas. I'm sorry, Thompson?
That's, that's okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Jerry Thompson, 253 Glendale in Upper, Glendale Avenue in Upper Pots Grove. Good evening, everybody. This past Friday, the PIAA Board of Directors emphatically approved, by a vote of 25 to 5, a motion for school sports to carry on as planned. Across Pennsylvania, thousands of anxiety-ridden student athletes and families, along with their dedicated coaches, celebrated this news, which served to revive temporarily stifled aspirations and renew hope for some semblance of normalcy in their lives as students. I believe I speak for the vast majority of Pots Grove student athletes and their parents and guardians in thanking Dr. Shirk, Mr. Anspock, Dr. Ziegler, and the school board for allowing this meaningful outcome to evolve over the past couple of weeks. As parents and guardians, we remain adamant that opportunities to compete in interscholastic sports represent a critical contributing factor in the mental, emotional, and physical well-being of these young people. This position is not just baseless conjecture, but rather one that is long supported by medical research and data. We remain steadfast and inspired in our belief that the diligently administered CDC and state-supported health and safety protocols are proving to be exceedingly effective throughout the state. Underscoring the credibility of this belief is encouraging data, such as the reliable sample of close to 20,000 pre-workout screenings collected from athletic trainers across the state, which yielded only three cases of positive COVID-19 test results. In addition, a similar second sampling of over 10,000 student athletes resulted in only one case where a student tested positive for COVID-19. And we believe that the recent board decision to pursue virtual learning for all students provides an added, built-in layer of health and safety assurance based simply on the absence of student interaction during school day. We remain committed to the belief that the inherent risk of participation in school sports is tremendously outweighed by essential health benefits and significant growth opportunities, and that it should continue to be left up to parents and guardians to decide whether their children participate. I speak tonight on behalf of the extensive number of Pots Grove student athletes who stand ready to continue their committed adherence to the effective health protocols which have been in place for several weeks, who have patiently persevered for months awaiting the opportunity to play the sports they love, and who deserve, and perhaps even need, to officially move forward with the pursuit of their athletic passions, some for the final time. We remain confident that the board will continue to collectively recognize, support, and dutifully represent the unanimous position of the only constituents truly impacted by this issue, Pots Grove student athletes and their families. Thank you for listening.
All right. Again, I, Mrs. Custer normally does this, and she does a much better job than I do on this.
Bob, can you hear me now?
I can, Ashley. Thank you. I've done a terrible job. I'd like to remind everybody that we do have a two- to three-minute limit on the, on the speaking. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I appreciate that, and we appreciate your comments. There is a two- to three-minute limit on the, on the conversations and the comments that we take here in public comment. So after, if you'd like to pick up and please try and clean up my mess.
Okay. Well, I missed what the mess was because I was busy cleaning up mine. So, all right, so I have I, I have hands raised, but now it's not letting me. Lori, did you take that? Am I no longer able to call on people? There we go. Okay. So next is Kristi Solis. Kristi, if you can state your name, your address, and all comments are to be on agenda. Non-agenda items or agenda items?
Agenda only.
Agenda only, that's what I thought. And keep it within two to three minutes, please. So I'm going to unmute you right now, Kristi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Kristi Solis. I live at 56 Peachtree Circle. This comment is for an agenda item. In the last meeting, there were some conversations about some extracurricular activities and sports versus others. I would just like to reiterate that COVID is a respiratory disease spread by droplets expelled. Once in the air, they can travel up to six feet with normal breathing, not coughing or blowing. This is where the safety recommendation of six feet comes into play. Football seems to be the first sport people are concerned with. However, with face shields and visors, droplets would not be able to be expelled, nor would they be able to make entry into eyes, nose, or mouth. Plus, players can wear gloves. My ask is, please don't look at these activities just based on a six feet apart. For example, band members can stay six feet apart, however, blowing into an instrument causes all types of things, including saliva, to be expelled into an unknown area and land on anything around them. With school staying virtual for now, there's a much less risk of any type of large-scale outbreaks due to any of these activities occurring during the fall. Aligning with the PIAA and the fact that all these activities are voluntary, I am asking for the board to allow all fall extracurricular activities to happen as long as each individual family feels their student is safe to participate. Please don't make that decision for us. The risk of mental health issues are alarming without them. I'm asking the board to take our seniors into consideration, especially after several colleges have put out tweets that they're looking forward to visiting PA schools to recruit in light of the PIAA announcement. And at the minimum, please, if the board decides to not allow students to play during the fall, please at least give them an opportunity to play in the spring. My son is one of many seniors who has been dreaming of this year his whole entire life, and I watched several seniors across all different sports last year have breakout years that helped them get into college that they wouldn't have had without a senior year. Don't leave them with what ifs. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kristi. Bob, just to be clear, I don't see anything on the agenda stating that we are voting on sports tonight. You're muted.
Mr. Lindgren, it is a discussion item that
Yes.
Okay, so, all right. Okay, no problem. Just making sure. All right, next is Susan Simmons. Susan, I will unmute you. If you can state your name, your address, and keep it under two to three minutes, I would appreciate it. You are unmuted. Wait, no. Yeah. Can you? It's saying here, "Ask to unmute." Let me see. I'm trying here. Can you? Now, Susan, you should be unmuted now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Susan Simons. I live at 312 Maple Glen Circle in Lower Pots Grove. I have two boys with autism who are in special ed, Eddie and Evan Simons. My oldest son, Eddie, did very well, thank God, with the homeschooling, but my youngest, not so well. I was just wondering what the plan going forward was for special ed. I had a couple of questions. There seems to be Delaware County, Chester Counties have exempted special ed kids from online schooling, which means they can go in, so I was wondering why Pots Grove hasn't decided that. And also, teachers and the aides will be in the classrooms on video, and special ed is a short classroom anyway, I mean, a small classroom. So I was just wondering, why couldn't they even at least try to have some students maybe come in, at least part-time? And another question is, the Western Center is open, I believe. And, but still, basically, I just haven't had really any answers about special ed, so I just wanted to know what the goal is.
Another agenda item again.
Hello?
Yeah, Al, I'm actually checking to see if that would fall under the additional targeted support and improvement plan. But my phone's acting weird. So.
It, it wouldn't. That, that's part of our, yeah, that's part of the PD, PD program that we're involved with at the high school.
Okay, all right. Well, Susan, I guess you can go ahead and finish, but these questions, at the beginning of the meeting, the comments are to be on agenda items only. And so if you can finish up, then we can get to the next person. If you'd like to make a comment at the end of the meeting, you are more than welcome to. You can raise your hand again, and you can finish at the end.
Okay, well, that was really just my concern. I was finishing up, and I just wanted to know the goal going forward, you know, with special ed, so just leave a comment at the end.
You can, or you can go into a question and answer, and you can type out a question there, and an administrator will try to answer your question for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have Sarah Becker-Frelick. I should know how to pronounce your last name by now, Sarah. My apologies. Sarah, if you can state your name, address, keep it under two to three minutes, and as we've stated, it does need to be a comment on a current agenda item. You are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Sarah Becker-Frelick. I live at 200 Ferry Street in West Pots Grove. I'd like to speak on action item, I'm sorry, agenda item 4.2, sports and extracurricular activity status. I am calling in today as a community member, as a parent of a high school student who participates in the marching band, as a fellow educator, as well as a staff person on your Pots Grove High School marching band. As many of you know or may know, we have been rehearsing with social distancing in place for a total of about two and a half weeks with our band camp sessions and our pre-band camp sessions a few weeks ago. I want to tell you, first of all, that I was extremely apprehensive to begin with, but I understand that a commitment is a commitment, and I am committed to this band, I'm committed to my daughter, and I'm committed to the arts. And so though I was apprehensive, I went forward with the, the plan for rehearsing and getting the kids together, and I have to say that that things are working out. The kids are respecting us as far as what our requests are for social distancing. We are doing all rehearsing at six feet distance and doing everything that we can possibly think of in order to keep the students and the staff safe. I would encourage that the board can vote to continue extracurriculars in, especially band. I have seen in my own daughter from, from March until we started rehearsing, you know, a certain kind of mood, and since we've been back to practicing, I see a light that has sparked in her again. And so though I was apprehensive and nervous about it myself, I think that's important that the kids have this opportunity. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Sarah.
Oh.
Oh, sorry. Wait, there.
In addition, I would ask that and encourage the board and administration to provide. Can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting a message here. I would encourage the board and administration to financially provide for the PPE that is necessary to keep the, the students and the staff safe, particularly in relation to woodwinds. They, they can be provided with these bags that they can put over their instrument to, to protect those around them when they are playing as an added protection. At this time, if they are provided, that they're being asked to be provided from parents, and they are quite expensive. In addition to that, since there will be fewer transportation costs, since the band will not be traveling to competition and likely football games as well, I would ask that you divert some of those funds to helping them to continue to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, next we have Kristen Wallace. Kristen, again, state your name and address, and keep your comments to, under two to three minutes, and they must be based on the current agenda. So you are now unmuted. Wait, let me try that again. No, you should be unmuted. Can you hear me now? Yes. Great. So first of all, thank you to the board and administration and teachers for all of your efforts. These are trying times and no doubt difficult decisions. I just ask that, as you consider the start of fall sports and band and all other activities, that you kind of take into consideration a few things. One is, you know, other districts of similar size and makeup within our pack have delayed the commencement of the sports programs to the spring, as well as delayed the start of school. And I do wonder what that means for that, what our teams are playing against for similar size. Two, our board has determined it isn't safe to return to school where students stay six feet apart and wear a mask at all times. Three, our governor has recommended a delay in the start to January 1st. Fourth, our health and safety plan really accounts for screening of symptomatic COVID-19 virus and does not specifically find ways to detect the asymptomatic athletes. Additionally, it doesn't really contain the details of what we do when we find that one or two or 10 athletes or coaches test positive and what the next steps are, which could be potentially disruptive to our student athletes. Potentially, we're doing them a disservice by starting and stopping when potentially we could just start in the spring as an alternative option. I will admit that I'm not sure what magical thing will happen in the spring to make this a better environment, but hopefully, once more is learned about the virus, it will allow for a more appropriate response plan, response plan to keep our community safe. I would say that if you decide that sports are safe and the district is comfortable with the risk and the liability associated with it, that I would strongly encourage you to allow at least one parent to attend these, these events. As many parents before have stated, this is their children's senior year, and they should not miss out either. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. Okay, next we have Stephen Barzik. Stephen, again, tell us your name, your address, and please keep your comment within two to three minutes, and make sure that it is an agenda item. You're unmuted. I hope.
All right, my name's, my name's Stephen Barzik. I'm at, I live at 1211 Spring Hill Lane in Upper Pots Grove. One of the, the question that I had, I had heard a rumor, and you know how rumors are, they're not, they usually don't turn out well. And I wanted to find out the, what the case is, that St. Aloysius and other non-public schools would not be provided a nurse as required by
Not an agenda item.
Yeah, that, Stephen, that's not an agenda item. If you could wait until the end of the meeting, the public comment at the end of the meeting, that would be great.
It's not, okay, so it's not an action item for personnel, and it's not the extra thing, so it's the second public comment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Great. I just go and buy the email I had. Thank you.
No problem. All right, next we have Cody Robbins. Cody, again, state your name, your address. Wait, he disappeared. All right, Cody Robbins is no longer there, so now we have Francesca Malatesta Moran. Francesca, if you state your name, your address, keep your comment within two to three minutes, and make sure it is an agenda item. I am unmuting you now. It's still showing that she's muted, but I've unmuted her. Hold on.
Hi.
Sorry, my, there. Go ahead and try now.
Hi, this is Francesca Malatesta.
Okay.
I reside at 1645 Potter Drive in Lower Pots Grove. My question and concern was over transportation for non-public school students, and I was hoping to discuss it this evening.
Yeah, that's not an agenda item. So if you could wait until the end of the meeting and bring it up then, you can do the same thing, raise your hand, but if it's not an agenda item, we can't, it's, it's not discussed until the end of the meeting. All right, okay, that's it. I don't see any more hands raised. All right, I think we're, we are all done with public comment.
Okay. Um, for those of you who are new and haven't been, you know, coming to meetings for a while, apologize for that, haven't been coming to our meetings for a while. And the, the public comment is an option for folks who are at the meetings to talk about the agenda prior to us going into our business. So prior to us voting on agenda items, we get to hear public comment on those agenda items before we make our decisions. Then we go through the agenda, we talk about the issues, we vote on the issues, and then after the, after the items, and we have new business, we give another option for public comment so that people can talk about anything they want to, and also any of the new items that we talk about, plus, I mean, the discussion items that we bring up, so that that's the time we have new business, and there's no sort of schedule issues holding us, you know, to the meeting. So that's why we do it this way. So we get public comment on things we're going to talk about, so that people can get their, their issues known ahead of it. their, their issues known ahead of it and we don't get derailed and kept from the business of meeting for that evening. That's why we do this the way we do it. But there is a wide open schedule at the end of the meeting and that's, that's why we do this. It's not to not allow you to talk, it's just that we want to get to the business of the meeting that's scheduled in a timely fashion. So that's why there's two sections of public comment and why it's arranged the way it is. So you will get the opportunity to speak at length at, on any subject you wish at the second opportunity. So that's why we're now going to move into the business section of the meeting and we'll start with 4.1, our, the report of the superintendent, our COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Langer. I just wanted to take an opportunity at our past board meetings, the board had asked that we give updates regarding, regarding our area and COVID-19. And I can report for the last four weeks, and this started on the July 31st, that our PDE, and that's where one of the spots where we get our information, our community transmission level has been moderate. And if you remember, the moderate level was a choice for us as a school district, it's a choice across the state. It's not specific to Montgomery County or Pots Grove, that we can either A, opt for a hybrid model or B, the virtual model. As you all know, we opted for the virtual model. Specifically, in, in Lower Pots Grove, as of, as of last, last, as of, as of last Friday, we have a total of 75 positive cases. Upper Pots Grove has 35 and West Pots Grove has, has 21. The, the moderate range, if you remember, and I think it's important, is between 5% and 10% positivity rate for, per, per 100. So what I wanted to also share is a stat that we're going to start following, and we asked the, we asked the county health department to help us with this. We're hoping to get this specific piece, to get our stats specifically for lower, upper, and west Pots Grove, so we can monitor ourselves and our community. We feel that as we move forward, that'll be a really good data point as well. Also specifically to August 21st, the county that we've looked at, the, the positivity rate in the county for the last days does not match up with PDE. It's 3.1%, which is pretty much consistent to where it's been over the last four, four weeks as well. So I just wanted to give the board that, that information. I also wanted the community that information and we continually, continually get those reports. Their, the county's goal is to get that to us on a Monday. This week it happened to come today, so we'll continue to keep the, the community updated Moving forward to 4.2, sports and extracurricular activities. What I, what I wanted us to discuss tonight, and you've heard some of our, our community members discuss the pieces, you know, regarding having a fall sports program. We also know that we, we had a ruling by the PIA double A. You also know that our health and safety plan for athletics and band has been working for us over the last four weeks as well. Tonight, we have our team physician, Dr. Wade Brochus, who's also our school doctor, and he's, he's on our panel tonight to, to have, have the board ask him any specific questions regarding our decisions to, to move forward. So I'd really like to, you know, open it up to, to our board, also in light of, of Dr. Brochus being here tonight, the Montgomery County Department of Health came out with guidelines, really just hot off the press, received these at 2:00 this afternoon. So it's really more information for us to, to look at and really digest for, for, you know, as far as our sports programs, programs are concerned. But I really want to start tonight and be respectful of Dr. Brochus' time with the board and any questions that they might have of him. Dr. Brochus, maybe you'd like an intro statement and then we'll get into questions.
Maybe he has a new computer too.
Dr. Brochus, can, can you hear me or hear us?
Yep, sorry. So, so just a quick, couple quick limitations. One is that I'm a primary care physician, I'm not infectious disease specialist. However, I am also medical director for PMSI and we service 180,000 in the primary care lives in our local area. So I feel very well versed in being able to both tally and disseminate information that I feel is credible. I'm a sports guy, I played three sports in high school, so I have that bias. You know, I played in your schools in college, I listened and played sports. And I also have a son, although not in Pots Grove, who is also a senior in high school and does participate in sports. All that being said, I certainly have a fair amount of information that I believe would be worthwhile for the board and for those listening, so I'll be happy to answer questions plus also I have some facts I'd like to pass on.
Thank, thank you, Doc. Would you like to have an opening statement or would you like to have the board ask specific questions at this time?
Well, you guys ask the specific questions and then I should probably hopefully be able to answer those questions plus also pass on some of the information as part of those statements.
Dr. Brochus, do you, what is your opinion on us allowing contact sports versus non-contact sports? Maybe we should start with sports that in their nature cannot be six feet apart. Do you recommend that we allow those sports that cannot social distance to occur this fall?
So, great question, obviously very controversial, both not just only for Pots Grove but across the state. Clearly, the governor and his medical team has recommended that there be no contact sports and quite honestly, all fall sports be at least postponed. I'm of the opinion that I, I agree with that for lots of reasons. First of all, if we take a look historically at even just our local region, you know, it would have been nice for the PIA to not create a mess and have uniformity. As of right now, even inside of our league, there's been multiple school districts that have actually delayed. I think the medical facts behind it are worthwhile. I think your point is very well taken about the six feet. Some people love Dr. Fauci, some people don't, but the reality is that he is the leading authority. In fact, the Bible of all medicine is called Harrison's textbook of principles of medicine. He writes the chapter on ID. He has a very, had a great web presence and he has said very clearly that although there are three ways to spread COVID-19, both by surface, by aerosol, and by droplet, because the virus itself is relatively heavy, it is spread by droplet predominantly. And that's why the staying six feet apart is so very important. So because contact sports cannot stay less than six feet apart, automatically I believe that they should be at least delayed.
So just to clarify, if there's sports that are, are non-contact and that can keep the six foot social distance, you wouldn't, as the, the team doctor, you wouldn't object to those occurring this fall? Is that correct?
No, I, I didn't say that. He actually said, hey, listen, let's comment first on the contact sports. Quite honestly, I think as a parent and a physician, if it were me, I would actually recommend even non-contact sports being delayed and for the following reason. Remember that 40% of all people that are asymptomatic would test positive if it was mass testing. As I'm sure you well know, Pennsylvania across the entire country lags dramatically in the frequency of testing. The Washington Post found that there's a dramatic difference, and they reported this based on their research, that there was a lot of difference between the age of the kids. Unfortunately, less than 10 years old, they're less susceptible to both get it and also transmit it. However, if you look at age 10 to 19, which obviously the high school falls into, not only are they as susceptible as those greater than six years of age, in a South Korean study, it was found that they actually spread at a higher rate than those that are adult. The other thing is that if you're looking at non-contact sports and, and, you know, the PIA and many other organizations, including national organizations, have said very clearly what sports are at the greatest risk. And if you take a look, obviously something like tennis is labeled a one out of 10, right? Golf is a three. So to put it in perspective, so these sports should actually have markedly less risk for transmission. However, yes, let's pick golf. If it's a foursome that's playing golf, unfortunately, it's just not four kids that are standing there. If the child is, is an only child, he himself is standing there as a product of three because he and his parents both live in a household. If someone who like my wife is, is the oldest of eight, right? Now you have to worry about 10 different people that a child represents standing there in the foursome. If you look at the recommendations by the CDC, WHO, and also interest classic sports, they've actually recommended that if you're going to play golf, that what you're supposed to do is say hi, play golf, bye, and otherwise try and socially distance at least a six feet, otherwise to try and decrease the likelihood. So quite honestly, although it may be reasonable, I actually don't think it's a great idea. Not to mention, I think it creates a very difficult dichotomy in the population of those inside of Pots Grove, because then you have parents that are unhappy their children aren't able to participate and those that are happy because they're able to do that. So it actually creates not only an increased risk for the kids, but then also a lot of frustration for the parents. I think it'd be wise to have uniformity and either, and possibly have delay into the spring.
What you're saying is that it's best to treat all sports the same rather than distinguish between the degree of risk associated with a particular sport?
I personally think so, although there is inherent differences in the risk. The reality is that you, you know, I'll put it in a different situation. In my office, I have patients saying, hey, doc, I want to go to the Y, what do you think? And I would tell them this, hey, listen, odds are people are taking precautions, they're trying to do six feet, they're trying to wipe things down. However, if you look at it and say, is it safer to not go to the Y and work out at home or just go work out to Y, clearly it's safer to stay at home. Likewise, although there's less risk for those non-contact sports, it's not no risk. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, Mr. Thompson was very eloquent and others about why it's worthwhile. And I agree that, you know, sports offers a lot of things that are beneficial, there's no doubt, you know, and I'm still in favor, I believe, you know, Mr. Onspach, Mr. Thomas have done a great job at promoting social distancing and doing screenings I had recommended previously. And I believe that having some type of program that continues to promote wellness, including strengthening and, you know, flexibility and cardiovascular and nutrition and sleep and leadership and other things are worthwhile. But I think it's, it's foolish to try and take children, that's what we're trying to make the decision for, and put them at risk, even though the risk is less in some sports than others, it's certainly nothing. You know, it's not that it's zero for these sports, it certainly is something. And again, I mean, my son Ross runs cross-country and I had recommended that, you know, he not participate this year.
Let me finish, let me ask a follow-up to that. If you're not participating in sports, which is where I'm at right now, and not working out, what do you recommend as an alternative to keeping fit? So what should parents do with, in your case, your son, who presumably might not be participating?
Right. So as I said, I think, you know, the school has done a great job. Part of the problem with the recommendation for or against continuation of sports as they would normally fall in the fall is we're trying to be responsible for our own kids. We don't even know what the other school districts are doing, right? So that's problem number one. Problem number two is, as you said, I think it's important that the kids be able to get out and be able to stay physically fit and be able to, to have expenditure of their, their frustrated energy, right? So Mr. Onspach and Mr. Thomas have been able to set up a, a situation that follows all these rules, you know, screening, social distancing, and trying to make sure the kids are part of a positive force for Pots Grove High School. And I honestly think that would be reasonable. Again, my son's a cross-country runner, so quite honestly, he goes out and runs, you know, we follow all social distancing, so that, that symbol, but I think the kids deserve to have something that is going to try and keep them both physically and mentally fit. And maybe not just only now for COVID times, but honestly continuing on very long-term in the future to create a, a program of wellness. And I believe that would be wonderful. But at least as of right now, I think that, you know, following the good hands and, and guidelines by which Mr. Onspach and Mr. Thomas have set this up would be a, a really good idea.
Thank you.
Dr. Brochus, I had a question in regards to the travel leagues that we see that are going through, our basketball leagues, the baseball leagues and everything like that. I have not noticed any uptick in COVID cases since they've started. So why are they different than ours?
So, great question. So part of the problem is that, as I'm sure you know, and I think was already stated, you know, we've actually been very lucky here in Montgomery County in the fact that we've actually had a significant decrease in the overall total rate, right? Everyone that's an expert believes strongly that there will be a significant uptick beginning in the fall and especially late fall, early winter, that'll have a dramatic impact on these sports. If you take a look at the local numbers, I believe I saw that, you know, if you would just select the Pottstown zip code, that there was 26 cases reported in the past two weeks, which is markedly less than we've had, right? So I think that part of what's going on with that is the fact that, you know, we're able to, to follow some of the rules, also because there's been generally a slight slowing in our part of the state. And also the, the sheer fact that quite honestly, there's not a lot of mass testing. If you think about how we're testing, I believe one of their parents said is that we're testing people based on the fact that they are symptomatic. Either they have a temperature or they have a positivity in their questionnaire, right? Unfortunately, 40% of the kids may be asymptomatic, so one of the things that we may not know because we're not doing the nasal swabs and, and in the very near future, obviously we'll have the saliva test available, which is going to be cheaper and quicker. But at least as of right now, the nasal swabs are the best we have. In my office for a little while, we offered the finger prick test for blood. The problem is I stopped it immediately once we started to get all the data in because there was upwards of 20% false negative rate. Well, that does no one any good, right? So without testing, we don't really truly know whether these kids are positive or not.
Dr. Brochus, question, I, I realize you're, you're the team doctor for our sports, but in regards to marching band, something came across our desk today, I'm not sure if it was from you or from where, it seemed legitimate though, that it would be safe to do if they are kept at a 20-foot distance because of the spit blowing. I don't know how you do that with marching band, we'd have to hear from them, but what is your feeling on marching band, if you have one?
Yeah, I saw the same thing and it, it came from the state, right? So clearly, if people were able to follow the, the 20 feet, I think that may be reasonable. But the problem is, how do you do that? I mean, you know, then you're going to be spreading these, you know, kids and, you know, my, my wife went to Upper Perk, their band has always been notoriously large. Thing about Strath Haven, when we played them in football, right, they were massive as far as their band. How are you possible to keep those kids 20 feet away? It's bigger than the football field, right? So I, I think it sounds great in theory, and I think one of the other parents very eloquently said that one of the concerns for the marching band is that, again, the main way to spread this is via droplet, you know, via aerosol. And so part of the problem is that for the band members, the majority of the band members, in fact, are using instruments where they're blowing into it and potentially, you know, spraying things. So that's why that is being listed as not just six feet but 20 feet. Whether it's feasible or not, logistically, that's another story.
I have a question. I know we're talking about the students here for the most part, you know, but I have to think about the coaching staff. You know, how do you feel the risk is for them? Would they be at a heightened risk, do you believe, because they're working closely with, with the, you know, 11 to 19 age group?
Sure. So great question. And I'm going to spin that answer back just a little tiny bit because this, this came up during, during camp. And that was, one of the other problems with having sports of any type, quite honestly, is not only the, the coach, but the entire team. So one of the football team members just sort of had cold-like symptoms, no big deal, right? And in any other time, we wouldn't- And in any other time, we wouldn't worry about that. However, in COVID time, what happens is that person has to be tested. They then have to be basically quarantined until the results come back five to six days later. If in fact, the person does test positive, then because of risks and tracing, you've got to shut the entire team down for the 14 days, right? So, you know, it's not just only the coaches, it it really is every member of the team because when we're talking about the sport itself, we're talking about tennis, okay, well, there's one person on each side or potentially two persons on each side if they're playing doubles. But the reality is that when they're getting together, they're getting together sort of in a group. So therefore, the people, all the members of the team are at slightly greater risk, including the coaches. And that's what makes my recommendation for consideration of having everything shut down really be the same. And and just so you know, that that sort of holds true for band. I mean, because part of the same thing holds true for that, right? So although in theory you could do the 20 feet apart, part of the problem is if someone does start to get cold-like symptoms or other symptoms and testing needs to be done, that person's out until the results come back. And then in the event it came back positive, everyone's shut down for the two weeks. Hopefully, that answered your question.
It it does, thank you. Um, I I do have, it's not really a follow up, but an additional question. Um, so I saw something come out, I believe it was from PIAA stating that um giving their schedule of to to restart. And if I'm remembering correctly, it said once they were allowed to start preparing for uh competitions, there would be five days of practice and then their first scrimmage. And how do you feel about that? My first thought was, okay, they've been conditioning great. But is it safe to go play a scrimmage when you've only had five days to practice as a team?
Well, as I'm sure you well know, because this is actually coming up in in the pro situation, right, is that um, you know, clearly, people want to be able to have strengthening, conditioning, well in advance, and they want to make sure that the team is all on the same page um in advance of of having scrimmages and or games. scrimmages have always been used as a game-like situation to try and have in-person teaching, uh, and that's regardless of any sport. Um, clearly, it it's not the ideal, but unfortunately, we're not living in ideal times. I mean, you know, you hear it all the time and it's almost a joke, but, you know, we're in unprecedented times. We're in truly, you know, e- exclusive times and all the other adjectives that are said before are the times that we're in right now. And that follows and follows all the way down into sports. Again, it's not ideal, but the PIAA, who again is made up of a governing bias that does include basically all aspects, um, is trying to do the best that they can. You know, I think it's unfortunate that they didn't give better guidance and said, hey, we can do this, but we're going to leave it up to the school districts. And you can see inside our own league where PJP and Norristown and others have decided to to pull the plug. Um, you know, it's leading to to mass confusion. And ultimately, the other problem is that, you know, in sports, uh, and again, I've been around it my entire 53 years of life, um, part of the problem is that as an athlete, not only do you want to play, but you want to be successful. Well, how are we going to have district playoffs or state playoffs? When, you know, whole school districts like Harrisburg and other schools across the state have decided to say, we're not participating at all?
Thank you.
I just have one one quick question, um, just thinking about, I know a lot of kids play club sports. So if we're not going to offer, um, say, we're not going to offer contact sports, um, and we have no way of not allowing them, like soccer teams, you know, um, I know there's a lot of elite clubs out there, but you would feel the same way about them also, is that correct?
I would, and if you remember early on, um, I guess it was sort of the middle, middle spring, um, one of the larger spreads of COVID um of of kids was actually in that situation where there was an adult that was one of the coaches at multiple elite soccer clubs. He himself tested positive and actually spread it to the kids, right? So um, that's a a pretty clear-cut example of what can happen if they're allowed. And again, you know, again, I'm a sports guy and I think it's unfortunate. And I feel really bad for the kids, and I I think one of the parents also on top of that very eloquently said, hey, this is a big deal because, you know, college has gotten expensive upwards of $65,000, and if we have kids that are good enough athletes, that it they can get D1 scholarships, you know, it it saves the the family tremendous financial hardships, and I appreciate all that. However, that being said, if you take a look at what's going on for the kids that do get sick, and thankfully, it's a very small minority, right? So if you take a look at the the frequency of kids, right now, 22% of the entire population i- is pediatric age. But yet, of all the cases of COVID across the nation, only 8.8% of all US cases are are in the pediatric age. So it's actually a smaller subset than the normal population. That being said, the kids that do get sick and symptomatically sick unfortunately are at greater risk of things like viral myocardiopathy, where they're they're going to be changed for their entire life, right? And that's what we're really trying to give medical recommendations for, because how can we have that on our conscience?
Sorry, did you say they're at risk from viral myocardiopathy?
Yes, so kids and adults both, um, if you take a look, there have
How many of those kids did in fact develop that condition?
A very small percent. Again, if you take a look at the 8.8% of all cases nationwide, of exceptionally small percent of that 8.8% is is developing cardiomyopathy.
How many of them?
Very small, it it's less than 5% of all the 8.8%.
Okay, so point four.
Yep. It's small, the problem is that if it's your child, what are you going to do? You know, and that that's what we're harbored with, we're harbored with being the people who are trying to give a recommendation for everyone's children as if they were our own. And although that's the most severe and serious complication, don't forget other respiratory as well as neurological things have happened, whether it be peripheral neuropathy, loss of smell, loss of taste, ongoing headaches, persistent brain fog, um, persistent respiratory illness that are giving asthma-like symptoms where they never had asthma in their entire life, right? And that's what makes this disease date so difficult. Now, to just further state how little the population is, just so you're aware, JAMA Today released an article that was talking specifically about the pediatric population, and it was done on a study that was done by Johns Hopkins, so obviously it's in Baltimore, relatively close, right? And what we found was that there is a very low association of, so a very low risk in asymptomatic kids that actually went on and got the disease date, right? So what their their study was, was really geared towards looking at those kids who were at the time searching medical or surgical intervention. So just so you're aware, you know, the the defined population, so again, it's sort of an odd population to begin with. But basically, the end result of that was that you're looking at, you know, a less than 1% of all these kids that were seeking it actually wound up testing positive when they were testing asymptomatic patients. But their extrapolated recommendation and discussion in that article, again, released today, was that basically what's happening is that you can sort of project the likelihood of these kids testing positive if they're asymptomatic based on the overall prevalence of the local population. Again, we've already talked about the fact that right now, the local population's probably at the lows it's been since March, right? That being said, everyone's expecting an uptick in the very near future in early and especially mid to late fall.
Doctor, I just want to have one more question. So Montgomery County with the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia came out today in their guidance of what can be done and what can't be done. Obviously, they came out with guidance saying that certain uh objects can be done depending obviously on the percentage of positivity, less than 5%, less than 1%, less than 9%, and such like that. So what you're stating tonight is you completely disagree with the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, is that correct?
That's not at all what I said, but it was a really nice try trying to turn that around. Um, what I did say is that we have to be exceedingly cautious. If you're asking me, do I agree with what came out, and and again, thankfully, I, you know, I was able to see that. Um, and, you know, I think what their whole point of all that is, uh, if you were to really take a look, is to try and say, hey, listen, um, I I want everyone to understand that the risk is there, but there are things that we can do to try and help to mitigate risk. Clearly, everyone, and again, this came from Montgomery County Office of Public Health, right? So what they're trying to do is they're trying to say, hey, we're trying to do everything we can to try and help to minimize risk. My comment to you guys was very clear in that was if if you're asking for my recommendation, I would say that we have to try and be exceptionally cautious. I believe that would be wiser to not um have the sports. If you were to decide as a board that you want to have the sports, I think following the guidelines to a T is the best you can get. Does that mean that you're putting yourselves and the children in particular at no risk? No, it's not saying that. What you're saying is you're trying to do your very best you can to minimize the risk based on the current recommendations, that's it.
Okay, now first, I don't think I was changing anything around. What I'm hearing from you is that we are against, as in you are against taking the risk on. And the report that came out from the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and the Montgomery County said that they believe you can, obviously, it's up to the parents and up to the school district stuff to decide if they want to take on the risk. Your recommendation is no. I don't feel that I turned anything around, I just feel you disagree with them, that's all.
Well, it's not that I disagree, sir, but I think what they're doing is they're trying to do it solely based on percentage of testing, right? And part of the problem is that, again, you know, and it's certainly not just me, it's across the entire country that Pennsylvania in particular has been doing a really crappy job at doing testing. In fact, we actually fall into the bottom 5% nationwide as far as frequency of testing. Um, in fact, in our local area, um, we actually are slightly better than overall state, but not by much. And so if there were mass testing and we were able to get a true legitimate number, then sure. The problem is that we actually have significantly less testing. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the article that was sent out today was talking very specifically about, hey, let's use 9% as a cutoff, right? Um, and part of the problem is that as of right now, at least until the salivary tests are coming more readily available, um, you know, what we're going to find is that we're sort of currently in that stable or declining 1 to 5% case. And what they're saying is that, you know, except for moderate contact sports or activities, um, and they have them all listed there for you, that we can try to do that. And certainly, again, as a board, um, that's going to be the decision you're going to make. I think that part of the problem is we truly don't have the data to support where we're really truly at as a population for the testing.
Okay, then let me ask you a question in regards to not sports-related, but medical-related then. Because we've been actually looking as a school board and as a district of whether or not we are going to be on the low side, which is this positivity chart that Montgomery County's been giving us. Low means that you can either go in-person or virtual. Moderate was either virtual or uh in my or hybrid and such like that. In essence, what you just said is, we shouldn't even be looking at that as well because it's completely faulty numbers as well. Is that correct?
In theory, that's true, because again, again, I I would ask you this, sir. You know, all you, everyone that's on the board is there for a reason, they're very active uh in their community, right? So we know a lot of people. Um, I could tell you, if you take a look at my practice alone, my practice represents about 10,000 patients in the local community in in Roersford, Pottstown, Pots Grove, um, Phoenixville, et cetera. The amount of patients that have been tested out of my own office for the 10,000 patients is a very small segment, right? So, and even if I were to ask the people in my local neighborhood, almost no one has been tested. Right, people are only being tested when they're symptomatic. And that that's what represents the difficulty with looking at these numbers, saying, well, let's take a look and see how it is upon testing. Most people are being tested solely when they're symptomatic.
Hey, doctor, I have one quick question for you. And I appreciate all the uh your time and um coming to to help us tonight. Um, how would you feel, I know that, like, my husband's a coach, of course, and um they're training now in soccer, and they do all the protocols, and it's really been a great effort between the parents, the the players, and the coaches to make sure that everybody who goes for these training and conditioning sessions are following protocol. And and I'm very, very proud when I hear that. Um, but how would you feel if we did like an intramural program with just Pots Grove kids versus Pots Grove kids? Maybe not the contact sports, but I'm trying to think of a way that there's a possible way to keep the kids active, but keep it safe. Um, could you shed some light for me on that?
Sure, um, this group, I I will tell you that it's, again, this is so hard. Because if I were to say, yes, go ahead and do that, certainly one of the things that's happening is at a minimum then, we're able to contain what's happening because it's inside of our own school district, right? So we can know exactly what protocols are being followed, and we can follow the kids, and we can follow them for any symptomatology that happens both before or after. And Dr. Fauci talks really about um three populations of kids, right? The first of which is asymptomatic, so you have no problems. Second one is pre-symptomatic, which means that it's, they're feeling fine today, but tomorrow they're bad. Um, and then certainly symptomatic kids, right? And the reason I bring that up is because if we're only dealing with our kids, at least we'll have a handle on the pre-symptomatic because we'll know that, hey, they don't feel good tomorrow, right?
Okay.
That being said, I go back to the same thing I said before about the why, and that is although I think it's great, it'd be great for the kids, I think we want to keep the kids active, both physically and mentally, and we want to keep them involved in our teams, um, because it's a great social network where they actually get great joy from a mental health perspective. Uh, again, the question really is, at what point, how much risk do we want to swallow when we're dealing with the kids? And that's the hardest part, ma'am, I I really wish I had a great answer for you.
Yeah.
But again, it's not that there's no risk, it's just that we're going to minimize the risk. Um, and then we have to, as parents, administrators, and coaches, then say to ourselves, well, how much risk do we want to assume for these kids?
Yeah, well, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Uh, doctor, again, I I I want to uh, thank you also for taking the time to talk to us. Um, I just want to, I don't want to come off wrong here, and this isn't actually geared towards you, it's geared towards the rest of my board. Um, we need to remember that we're not medical doctors. We didn't go through the same training that Dr. Brochus has gone through, um, same education, um, any of, not even close. Um, and he has seen way more and I'm sure has read way more uh studies about this. So even though he might not be saying what some of us want to hear, I think we really need to listen and understand that, you know, he's giving us his um, he he's giving us his medical opinion. And um, I put a lot of cred into that personally, because um, you know, I can't imagine um having to face this as a doctor and um just getting bombarded with information every day like we are, but actually reading it and and remembering it and understanding it. So that's really all I wanted to say, because it, um, you know, again, thank you for taking time out, talking to us, and um, you know, explaining a lot. I learned quite a bit from um, you know, a lot of the things you were saying. I didn't know that Pennsylvania was low on testing, I just thought Pennsylvania was doing great. But now I'm thinking, oh, maybe not so much. So, um, you know, but thank you so much, I do really appreciate it.
Yeah, I I I thank you for your comments. I mean, honestly, your your point is taken, and that is, it it's my opinion, I can tell you that. Clearly, you know, there are members of the medical community that were given a recommendation to the PIAA that were not the same as mine. Um, and again, you know, what's interesting is we're trying to hear as the board and me getting comments to just talk about our little community. Please remember that, um, a- as I sort of started this, what makes it very difficult is that, you know, when you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars like are being involved in the Power Five conferences of the NCAA, and they're shutting things down because they're concerned about their coaches and their players, um, and it's putting a strain on the financial institutions, the colleges. Um, and again, that that's essentially all colleges in our local areas, especially D1. So if you look at LaSalle and Penn and Villanova and Temple and St. Joe's, um, and extrapolate all the way out to D3 like Alvernia, et cetera, this is the case across the board, um, because they don't want to put their kids at risk. And I I could tell you, my opinion's not popular, not even in my own home. And I could tell you, my opinion's not popular, not even in my own home, but, but I think we're looking at the safety of the kids. So thank you for the kind comments.
Dr. Brochus, if I, this is Dr. Schur, just jumping in real quick. One of the things I just, I heard you talk about early in this conversation is about the delay piece. And I'm just, I'm just curious your thoughts on the delay and how long that would be. And not, not to give up on anything specifically, I mean, obviously, we have no guidance from PIA as far as a winner, a winner, you know, pushing all the seasons to December, January, February, et cetera, to give, to give our student athletes opportunities. But I was just, can, is there any more, or can you expand on the, your delay piece of that conversation?
Well, yes, sir. So, Mr. Schur, I said that solely because, again, if you're looking at what most of the school districts that are deciding to hold off on fall sports, that's their recommendation. I think one of the other, either board members or parents all said, well, we don't really know what's going to happen this spring, and sadly, that's the case. If you take a look at the projections based on the CDC, you know, it's interesting because what they are projecting is that it has been following almost the flu epidemic of 1918. And remember, back at that time, we didn't have viral genome determination like we do now, right? And what they're projecting is that it's very likely that what happened back then was a very similar SARS-like virus that started in March, which obviously is unusual time to come out for the flu, right? And then the reason there was a second spike in the fall was it really is a SARS-like virus in combination with the flu virus, which is what caused such a massive spike in late fall, early winter, followed by a very smaller spike potentially in very late winter, early spring, right? So the CDC is saying that, hey, you know, that's likely what's going to happen to the best of their knowledge. Now, no one has the crystal ball, not even Dr. Fauci. And in fact, just to go one step further, you know, his comments are, when you're talking about kids, there is more unknown than there is known, right? So, but I think the best we can do is project and say, hey, if we start as a nation, and especially as our local community, follow the social distancing to the best that we can, try and minimize the large group interaction, try and make sure that we are wearing our masks, using PPE, and trying to, you know, use hand sanitizer, et cetera, where necessary. It's the best we can do, and if we can thwart this thing, so that way there is a legitimate winter or spring season, that's the best we can do. Can I guarantee that's going to happen? Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Sure.
To try and move this along a little bit, let's see if there's other questions from other board members. Moving along in order of seniority, Mr. Strunk, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
No, I don't. I, I agree with Dr. Brochus in terms of lowest risk opportunity. However, I liked the guidelines that were put out by Montgomery County, and I personally would be willing to take that level of risk as a parent when I looked at that. And, and I, I agree with Dr. Brochus, that it's a greater risk than what he was, what he's suggesting, which is nothing at all. But I appreciate this, making decisions with data, using positivity, even knowing that it's not the best of data that we have in the county, comparing that with how it's, how it's trending, and then looking at the types of sports that could work in each of those situations. So, and I also heard, I know, we questioned Dr. Brochus as to whether he was against that. He really didn't say no. He's, he's not against it. He just said it's more risk than he'd be willing to take. I'd be willing to go there.
Very good. Thank you.
More than that, I'm uncomfortable with.
Understood. Ms. McIntyre.
I like the guidelines that came out today. I think that gives us something to look at. I don't have any questions. I am very passionate about this. I really want to give the kids something to play, something to participate in. More than that, I want the parents to be able to choose that. I know some people say what, it has to be all or nothing. At the risk of them losing everything, I'd like to see us maybe try to strike a compromise. And I think that the guidelines help us to do that. So for me, I would definitely honor the guidelines. I like them. I like that they're in place. And a lot of people may not understand what we're talking about because they just came out today. I'd love to publish that so that everyone can see that and talk that out. But again, I just, this choice for me has to be left up to the families. Thank you.
Agreed. Dr. Schur, can we ask Ms. Viger to get that posted on the site, our possible website, and maybe make that a part of the minutes of the, of this meeting, please?
Yes, we can. It's, Monco, Montgomery County Department of Health, did publish that later on this afternoon. So if anybody wants to go to that site right now, but we can absolutely put them on our website and make them part of this minutes.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, Dr. Nippert, any additional questions or any other comments you'd like to make?
I'd like to thank the doctor for his, his remarks. This is, this is one of those tough problems where you and I would like to hang a probability on this and say, well, if you participate in, let's say, intermurals, the probability of catching COVID is 2.67%. If you don't participate, the probability of catching it drops to 0.34. We can't hang numbers on these things. And I like the idea of giving parents something because we just, we just keep becoming the abominable no man. And that's, that's not good either. So the issue for us is how much risk are we willing to bear for our students? And, you know, you and I have talked about this. I'm, I'm on the faculty of Widener, and Widener is not doing any sports this fall, period. A lot of schools have gone, made that decision, and it's going to cost us, us some money. You know, we're looking at a deficit, a huge deficit for a small Division III school. But, you know, you have to afford people some sense of an experience. So that's the end of my comments, but I, I'm really torn on what we can do here for kids. My kids participated in band, and they got a lot out of it. But I don't know what I would have to do if something like this had happened when they were in high school.
Mr. Parker, your questions, additional questions or comments?
No additional questions to Dr. Brochus. Just thank you for your boldness and willingness to give a, what might be an unpopular opinion based on the facts as, as you see them. I do have a question for Mr. Davis once we're done with Dr. Brochus.
Are you sure you want to wait, or you'd like to ask it now?
I can wait. I don't want to get away from your opportunity with Dr. Brochus.
Okay, I'm doing well. Mr. Lappic, any questions or comments you'd like to make, sir?
No questions at this time, but thank you very much, Dr. Brochus, for coming out and speaking with us this evening. Really appreciate it.
All right. Ms. Grimmer?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank the doctor. He's so knowledgeable and so helpful. And actually, thank him all the years he's helped to keep all of our athletes and students on the, on the mend. But I, I think for us, we really need to make a decision so then we can make a plan to move forward. I think the students, the student athletes are confused, concerned, what's going on. They don't know. Parents don't really, we're not giving them any direction. So we, as a board, really have to come up with a plan and make a decision, then, then move forward. I too would like to see if we go to no sports or no contact sports. I know how creative our athletic department is, that I would like to see something we could put in place to keep the kids active. You know, like I said, like the intermural program, or I would like to see something like that that could get the kids involved. You know, because I don't want them to get lost either. I mean, it's all about the kids, you know, and these are their years of their memories. So, so that's basically my, my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grimmer. Ms. Custer, do you have anything else you'd like to ask or to say?
No, just again, thank you to Dr. Brochus. And really, we, I just, it's about students, but it's also about the coaches, too. They're just as involved, coaches, you know, band, the marching band instructor, all that stuff, you know? So we just got to keep in mind of the big picture.
Mr. Leach, any questions or comments you'd like to make, sir?
No, I just want to say thank you very much to Dr. Brochus for taking his time tonight and giving us a lot of information to go over. I really appreciate all the work he's done for our district over the years, and he is obviously very knowledgeable in his field. I do believe that we should continue to look at the guidelines that Montgomery County has persuaded out to us today, and I would prefer to go by those guidelines at this time.
Right, you're good. Okay, hang on just a minute. All right. Dr. Brochus, my turn finally. Thank you again, as everybody else has mentioned. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, and thank you for sharing your opinions with us, your letter, and for talking with us. I have some questions, and I need to be brought up to speed and educated, if you don't mind, taking some questions from me and sharing some more information with us for just a bit longer. We talked about the incidence rate. You talked earlier about the incidence rate for kids not 0 to 9 years old and for 10 to 19 years old. I think the incident rate for kids 0 to 9 is about less than 2 per 10,000, and 10 to 19 is less than, is just over 5 per 10,000. Is that right?
Yes, sir. The most recent I saw was 8.8% because of a bump up that happened in July.
Okay. And for 20 to 79 is about 12 per 10,000, and 80 and above is just under 10 for 10,000, right?
That's, that's pretty close, yes, sir.
Okay. That being the case, and there's, so, so they, they do tend, that those, those ages, that those younger ages do tend to catch the virus less. And that's across the world, that's not local, around the world, yeah?
That is correct. No doubt, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you're, you're saying that the data says that the, the older group, the 10 to 19 years old, you're saying that they spread it more, though?
Yes, actually, there are multiple articles that support that, but the bottom line is that the kids that are very young, and again, the less than 10 age group, they actually not only get it, but also spread it at the lowest rate, right? But those kids that are 10 to 19 actually are more likely to spread it even than adults. And that was actually suggested in this South Korean study, and it was suggested predominantly because they felt that, first of all, they were feeling asymptomatic more so than adults, and therefore more, having greater congregations than adults, and therefore they were the ones that were more likely to spread it. So that's why. As far as the kids...
That, that seems to contradict what we, what the study from Switzerland and the study from Australia.
There's no doubt. But ironically enough, if you take a look, one of the problems was that Australia and Switzerland actually had some of the lowest transmission rates across the world, right? So, and that's because in Switzerland, people listened. The government early on came in and said, everyone's quarantined. Everyone's like, okay, that's not what we did here in the United States.
Well, that's New York, right? New Yorkers don't listen to anybody.
Well, you're, you're 100% correct. In fact, that New York is different than other parts. So if you take a look at, for example, the lethality of what's going on, you know, we'd like to think that because the rates of transmission are going down, at least out in the reported cases, that it's less. However, that's really not the case. It was just reported yesterday that the lethality is still going up. And, but it's, there's large variances. If you look at it in Arizona, it's as little as 2.1%. And again, not pediatrics, but across all populations. In New York, however, it's 10%, right? So part of the problem is the dense population of New York contributing to that. And that's why they also believe that the South Korean study was very similar in that regard, in the fact that, you know, younger kids enter population, and the kids not really being quarantined like they were in the other two countries you mentioned.
So, I'm sorry, the lethality rate in New York is still at 10%?
That was the last thing that was reported, yes, sir.
Across all age groups?
All age groups, yes.
What is, see, that's, that's information, but it's not really data because I don't, I specifically need it sort of broken down across our age group of, you know, that's particular to us. I sort of need it broken down. So I have it in our age group, which particularly broken out with the 70 and above taken out of that. Don't I? Because that's the age group that's most risk.
Well, you'd love to actually know even more so what's the lethality of that age group at risk in our local population and not New York or Arizona, as neither of which apply to us.
Right.
And I'm not sure you can even get that from our local county health department accurately.
Well, exactly so. But closer to home, you mentioned earlier on when we were talking about the soccer coach, I believe, that spread it to, to the team, right? There was a soccer coach, and he was on the team, and he spread it to the team.
Yep, club team, yep.
That was a counter example, right? Where the, the coach spread it to the younger kids.
That is correct.
How many of those kids ended up in the hospital?
I don't know the answer to that, sir. I can't even speculate.
Right. Because again, what we've got here is a question that I have, is that when we talk about the lethality of this thing, or even the serious consequences of it, my understanding is, let's, let's set aside for a moment the long-term issue because when we're talking about a disease that's only been around, worst case, as far as we know, last October, right? We don't know of any existence of this particular strain prior to October of last year. Maybe it was...
That's why it's called novel. That's correct. It's new. It's a new virus strain altogether.
Right. So let's say October of last year till now, we have no idea of the long-term effects. But let's just say the short-term effects. Most of the cases that we're talking about, we're looking at people get the cold, and in two weeks, they're over it and they're moving on.
By far, especially in the pediatric population. That's correct, yes, sir.
Vast majority of kids, they're getting sick, and they get over it, and they move on, and it's two weeks for that, that group.
Or less. So that's correct, yes, sir.
And we have some people with what I would consider, to be, to be honest, really, really, really frank with you, a small group of known comorbidities. Diabetes, the pulmonary issues, and I think it's, it's really not just obesity, but morbid obesity that's really a problem, and just a few others that are really at risk. Is that fair?
Absolutely fair, across, across all age groups, but especially pediatrics. That's correct.
Right. And if we want to be even more cautious, we can even throw in pregnancy as a comorbidity. I mean, that, to me, that's being extremely cautious. There have been, as I, as I understand it, there have been pregnant women born... as I understand it, there have been pregnant women born, or children born with COVID of pregnant women. Pregnant women have given birth to children with COVID, you know, but those children have survived, but they were born with it nonetheless. So, we can, we can throw them in and say those people are also at risk. But those are all fairly well-known, and if we isolate those people and call them, those are the at-risk known population, we isolate those people, and everybody else, we say, go forth, get sick, and get better. Why is that not a reasonable strategy?
Well, let's start with, that strategy was utilized in Scandinavian populations and was horribly unsuccessful, so I would...
Wait, why is that horribly... Why is that a horribly unsuccessful strategy, not just Scandinavian general, take Sweden in particular?
Okay, so if you take a look, what's happened is, they had their entire population get sick, it starts to go down, and people were getting sick again. So, let's go with just human immunity first. Johns Hopkins reported this about three weeks ago, and it's actually been re-reported within the last week, that human immunity is about 14 weeks. So, part of the problem is, not only can you get a different strain of the same virus, you can get the identical virus, and in fact, within the past week was the very first reported known case of someone who actually got this exact virus twice. So, part of the problem of thinking you can just get herd immunity by having everyone go out and do what they're going to do, get it, and then hope it's over with, especially in a pediatric population, is somewhat foolish. The second thing is that it's not exclusive to pediatric population, because these kids don't live alone, right? So, they live with their parents, their grandparents, their non-parental caregivers, and so if the kids get it, even though they are likely to be relatively asymptomatic in the very largest part of the population, unfortunately, they will be barriers for those people who are at greater risk of actually getting sick. So, that's the other thing, is we're trying to account for the overall global population within the park itself and not just the kids. We're looking at the kids as far as sports, but I think you would agree that having someone just to try and get herd immunity by going out and getting it like we used to do for chickenpox, not a great idea for this.
Just a quick question, sir. Can I interrupt?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, if the immunity only lasts 14 weeks, I'm sorry, I moved away from your conversation and missed a couple of things. If immunity only lasts for 14 weeks, isn't herd immunity pretty much an impossibility?
For the most part, yes. The, what's interesting is that, that's what's making the vaccine such an issue right now, right? We have two major problems with vaccines. If you take a look, and it was just reported this week that Pfizer's doing a great job, and J&amp;J is doing a great job, and we already knew about Moderna and AstraZeneca. What we don't know is two things, even when those vaccines become available, sir. One is, we don't know how long the immunity is going to last, because they're trying to make tweaks to what we can do to have our own natural immunity to last a little bit longer. And the second thing is, we don't have any long-term safety data, so even when those vaccines become available, we won't know that. The projections for the immunization are expected to be at a minimum twice a year and potentially four times a year because of that immunity difficulty.
Depending on your thought, you either want to buy J&amp;J or sell it.
Well, it's a great time to buy, because if they become first...
If they're going to need it four times a year!
Right, so...
Well, that was, that was the risk, right? That was the, that was the, that was the risk. I mean, when you, when you make the decision to do all this stuff on the fly and accelerate all of the testing and doing all that, you know, doing everything concurrently without knowing all of the facts and fast-tracking it, you know, to get it to market...
That's right, but I hope you understand my point about the herd immunity. I mean, if people's natural immunity is only in the last 14 weeks, we're sort of at...
You come out with a new virus every year, you come out with a new vaccine every year, in a way.
You're right.
It sounds like you take the same shot, and you need a booster shot.
You don't take this, well, you get a new flu vaccine every year because the strain changes every year. You don't have, there's no...
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I'm talking apples and oranges, but I take your point, Dr. Brochus.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to your point, though, and again, just not to go left turn or right turn here, but I think talking about the flu shot is an interesting thing, because, again, you know, we're looking predominantly at one main large subtype of what's going on with COVID-19 right now. You know, with a flu shot, the flu shots are highly unsuccessful, and what I mean by that is, if you look, for those of you who are my age, so 50 and up, we can get shingles vaccine. The Shingrix vaccine is about as good as you're going to get, because across four large trials that got it to indication, it's successful at 90 to 95%. What is the flu shot each year? In best years, it's 65%. What was it last year? Because they guessed wrong, it was 42% effective, right? So, that's what's making getting this virus vaccine up and running to not only be successful, but also long-lasting is being so difficult, is that they're trying to guess right. They had all the information, although this is a novel SARS virus, they had this, they had the majority of virus, with the, except, small exceptions, pre-existing, so they already knew how to base it, and what they're trying to do is give us the exact strain and long-lasting immunity with no side effect.
Bob, can I just jump in here real quick?
Yes, please.
So, you know, I had mentioned more than once that, you know, it's not just the students, it's the coaches, it's the parents, you know, big picture, not small picture. And you were asking about, you know, how many pediatric patients have been hospitalized, stuff like that. In February, I believe, my son got really, really sick. He was, he was away at school. Had, you know, in hindsight, we look at it, he had every symptom of COVID: teeth chattering fever, the dry cough that wouldn't go away, he just had it all. He ended up with, eventually with sinus infection, and went to the doctor, they gave him some stuff for it. He realized a few weeks later he couldn't hear out of his right ear.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, he's now been diagnosed with having lost 87% of the hearing in his right ear. For good, he's never getting it back. Now, we don't know if he had COVID. Now, I know that's a little early, and there was a flu going around, but two of his roommates also got very, very sick, and they got tested for the flu, and it came back negative. They didn't get tested for COVID because COVID tests didn't exist yet. But if he did in fact have COVID, and due to COVID, he lost 87% of the hearing in his right ear, I don't wish that on anybody.
No.
Okay, because that's something he has to live with for the rest of his life. So, when I'm looking at things like, you know, do we have sports because, you know, we're willing to take the risk? No, I don't, I don't think it's worth, worth the risk, even though we don't know for sure if he had COVID or not. But if he did, and that was a side effect, which they said could be side effect of an extremely high fever, that's not worth it. It's just, it's just not. I mean, I, now, many times I walk into a room, and I have to tap him on the shoulder because he can't hear me when I've walked into the room. He's 22 years old. That's just not right.
I don't, I don't know how we balance all of these choices for the entire district. I don't know how we balance all of these things for all of the kids in the entire district, and all of the risks for everyone, and the possibility of what could happen and what might happen and what will happen, based on all of the unknowns with this. You know, I, you know, and...
If I could speak just one second, I appreciate that, and, you know, the great work that you guys are doing on the board. You know, I reached out to Mr. Anspach to send him a text and substitute a letter, which I'm sure you guys have gotten, solely because you're in a very tough position. This is not a win-win, it's really a lose-lose no matter which way you vote, right? And I believe that, you know, what you have all asked of me is to try and do my very best to give numbers, to give data, and to try not to just give conjecture. Part of the problem is, as Dr. Fauci very eloquently said, is for kids, there's more that's unknown than there is known, right? And, sir, I believe that you and the rest of your board members are going to have to vote based on what you know, and vote with your heart as if they were your own kids. And it's hard, because, again, you know, we want the kids to be active in their community. We want them to be physically active, because we don't want to promote obesity. We want them to be part of a team, right? Because that's how work is, like all of you work in your workplace. It's, no one is individualized. It's just a really difficult situation, and I wish I could give you more guidance, but if Dr. Fauci, who is the guy who wrote, writes the most important book in all of medicine, doesn't have the answers, I clearly don't. So, all I can say is, I would recommend that you take the information and vote with what you believe is best, so...
Very well said. Can I ask Mr. Davis a question?
Please.
Mark, you still with us?
Here.
All right. I don't know where the board's leaning.
I'm interested.
All right, I don't know where the board's leaning, and we'll find out momentarily, I imagine, but if the board wants to vote not to have contact sports, but to allow sports that could be, you know, six-foot distance kept, since our team doctor has advised against it, does that put the district in a liable position?
Well, that's a question I really can't completely answer. The question is, would you be negligent and not listen to that advice? And I can't say you'd be negligent, you, I don't want to put words in the doctor's mouth. I mean, he was very clear in what his recommendation is, but, you know, he did say, it's partly your judgment, it's a risk assessment. That's what the PIAA has said. You're going to have to decide what risk you have an appetite for. I sent an opinion, I think I sent it to the whole board, I know I sent it to Dr. Schirr, that generally, you do not have, in my opinion, a liability for COVID, because you have immunity under Pennsylvania statute with certain exceptions, and those exceptions, motor vehicle exception, which really wouldn't apply here, certain other exceptions. The one that requires the most analysis is, would this be a, an exception that would expose you to liability under the real estate exception? And it has to be a defect in the real estate, and our best judgment is that COVID would not be a defect in the real estate. First of all, you wouldn't know where you got it. Did you get it and touch the desk?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's an evasive answer. I, you know me by now, Bill, I'm not usually very divisive, but I can't give you an absolutely clear definitive legal issue, because it hasn't been tested yet. Again, if you want to be perfectly safe, as Dr. Brochus said, on a medical side, if you want to be perfectly safe, don't take the legal risk, although I do not think it's significant.
Are we voting on this tonight, or are we just discussing right now?
It's just discussion according to the agenda.
That's what I thought.
It is. If I, if I may, it is discussion, and it's, but it's also for us, and I want to let Mr. Anspach weigh in at this time. There was a timetable established by the League when, when they were, they were asking, I don't think they were tallying, but they were asking if, if boards could come up with an answer of what particular sports they would be in favor of or not, and then, of course, the PAC, the PAC recommendation was to start September 8th. So, I want to have Mr. Anspach jump in, because, you know, right now, our next board meeting would be scheduled for the 8th, and that would, that would, that would interfere with that particular date. So, I know that the League was asking, and then maybe Mr. Anspach, and then if Dr. Ziegler could follow up with any other information that would be pertinent for the board in this decision.
Yeah, thank you. So, as a league within our discussions over, over the last week, and schools having their board meetings this month, we asked if all schools could have their decisions by August 31st. We still have, as a league, we still have a practice date, first practice date of September 7th, which is Labor Day, but the reason we put September 7th in there is because we need 15 practice days before our first competition date, which is September 25th. The reason we stated the 8/31 date is because, to our knowledge, that was the last board meeting of one of our school, member schools within our conference, and from that point, we would know who was participating in, in sports or what sports within our conference, and then that would give us time to go over league schedules and how we were going to run competitions within our league.
Yeah, Dr. Schirr, Mr. Anspach's right on point. Pioneer Athletic Conference is asking districts to make a decision by August 31st. We are currently looking at and assessing at that point, then, how many schools will be in, and we will reassess our plan and look at our plan for the September 7th start date.
Thank you both. Any, any questions from the board to Mr. Anspach or Dr. Ziegler?
Yes, Mr. Anspach. Golf, cross-country, and tennis. I'm not a sports guy. Can they be done, in play, with six-foot social distance kept at all times?
We believe that golf, golf could be kept at six-foot social distance. I worked with our cross-country coaches, and going over the guidance that was set forth by the PIAA that was sent out about two weeks ago regarding coming up with procedures that we could do to keep social distancing within those races, and tennis. The problem with tennis would be doubles tennis. They're side by side, so six foot of social distancing would not be practical in doubles tennis.
And again, I'm ignorant, can, can we have, I imagine we can't have tennis without doubles tennis, right? That wouldn't make sense.
No, we would be able to make that work. We would just not participate in any doubles competitions.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion if, yeah, I don't want to cut anybody else off if anybody has other questions or comments or anyone.
I do have a question, actually. I'm not sure who to, whom to address this, but if we were to go without sports, are we just talking about not being able to compete against other schools? I know Patty talked about intramural, or are we talking about not even allowing practices where, I mean, for certain sports, there are certain things you can do to practice where you're, you know, practice, you know, shooting at the goal, or, you know, something along that line. What, is it an all or nothing, I guess is what I'm asking?
Mr. Lappig, one of the things that, you know, Mr. Anspach and the athletic department have been working on, really leading up to this scenario, is, you know, a program that would be intramural-like, that would allow our student athletes to keep conditioning, add strength training, which we currently aren't doing, I believe that's correct, Mr. Anspach, and also, you know, allow us, you know, allow us to continue that conditioning process when things do open up. I was texting, I had one of my colleagues in Chester County, Chester County, one of the Chester County schools is going with the, with the, with the golf and the singles tennis, but also, you know, delaying, delaying the start of their fall sports, but at the same time continuing the voluntary and conditioning, and hope that something breaks either, you know, with, with the, with the data, or with the PIAA, or with possibly even a condensed season as we turn into the new year. So, I just got that tonight. I just share that with you. So, there's a lot of different things we could do, Mr. Lappig. We're, we're just, you know, we're just trying to plan, and we're just, there's a lot of things we could do as, as we move forward with this, but our goal is to try to, like, hone in on these, this, this process here tonight or by Monday.
Okay, thank you, and then just a, yes, a question for Bill Parker. Just, I know you're being ready to make a motion. Yes, the question would be, would be a motion to cancel fall sports or a motion to delay fall sports? fall sports? Which if I understand correctly, then allows us to reopen the meta later date if we just postpone.
And then, Mr. Parker, I just, before you answer, I just want, Mark Davis, I'd just like you waiting in the wings so that we make sure that we do a proper, a proper motion that we would need. So, sorry for the interruption, but I just wanted Mark to be on deck.
Let me answer.
All right, I'm sorry.
Let me answer that thought. I'm not putting it in motion form yet. My thought, Jim, and to the others, is to, when it's appropriate, make a motion to postpone fall sports and activities except golf and singles tennis, based on what we heard tonight. That's my thinking.
Now, would that be clear enough direction for the administration? It seems to me, what that says to me, and I may be missing the unintended consequences, that you would start the two sports that would be suggested that motion, and then you would continue to practice. I guess that's what, I don't want to put Bill's words in Bill's mouth, but we would continue to practice but delay interscholastic competition until, I guess, a date we could set and then decide again.
Question. I have a question. Could we consider adding to that band where appropriate instruments? Certainly, the horns, I understand, might not be an acceptable instrument. They sound like a marvelous way, a marvelous megaphone for COVID virus. I mentioned last time, my son and my daughter played in the band. My daughter played French horn. That's a great megaphone for COVID virus. My son played the drums. I don't think that's a, something that could be a spread. So I'm wondering if the list of sports could include band. I myself, I know I mentioned this to a couple of people, was part of the trick drill team, which.
I don't want to speak for the administration, but that probably should be put in some kind of template or format that we all understand what we're doing. I mean, I appreciate your big picture, but, you know, somebody looks at the various instruments. I'm certainly no expert. I'm not sure that's enough direction to make it clear to the administration. I mean, I understand clearly what your intent is, but perhaps we ought to have something more specific in front of us when we vote on that.
I want to come back to the Montgomery County guidelines, because I think in a very different way, they don't say you can do these sports, you can't do these sports, but instead they say for all four sports, here's the level of activity, be it individual or group, that should be allowed, given the positivity rate or given the conditions in the area. So I would go that way as a, as a motion to adopt those guidelines. It gives a group behind us that is supporting that, that's done that work, that is based on some degree of science, and is, to me, is a stronger direction than just saying yes to golf and tennis and no to everything else, because you're also saying that what we're saying no to, they can continue to practice. Well, that's what the Montgomery County guidelines are saying.
I'm going to ask, yeah, I appreciate that, and I think some of the pieces that we've done already with our band program have worked effectively with our, you know, physical distancing and the hygiene and the community hygiene responsibility. I think just really, just really today, Montgomery County piece really sort of spread out the music piece a little bit to a further distance, and then, you know, and that's including choir as well and stage productions and so forth. They get it, they get a little bit more specific there, you know, with those pieces. So I think, I think, I think the band piece is interwoven in this piece in some, for some respect. I do think though, when it comes to, and I want to have Dr. Ziegler weigh in, because the delay is not going to help us with scheduling anything, okay? We're not going to, we're not going to be able to, you know, if we're ready to go, say, with, you know, with soccer, we're ready to go October 1st, but everybody else has started, but we're not ready to go till October 15th, everybody else has started, even though we're ready, you know, the league, we might not have anybody to play. So it's a scheduling piece as part of that. So I want to really just stop, and Dr. Ziegler, maybe being the league president, you can shed a little bit more insight to the board on the scheduling factor.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Scher. So if we say that we're going to delay, whether it be a few weeks or into the winter or spring season, if we do that solely as one school, that won't work if there's not other schools there to do it with. Currently, you know, the Pioneer Athletic Conference and even suburban one currently, and I'm sorry, District One, is looking at a fall start. And obviously, there will be discussions around perhaps a delay, but as a school, if we say we're delaying sports, it puts our students at a disadvantage because other schools may be starting those sports. But I just want you to know, it's not like we can delay and just hope that there's going to be teams out there to play against and compete against as the PAC may move forward. At this point, they are moving forward with sports until we hear otherwise. So just wanted to make that known. It's not like we have the authority just to move our school a few weeks or a few months delay. You know, what you would look at doing is what other schools are doing is unfortunately, they would just postpone sports, fall sports into the, until it could be rescheduled, but right now, the Pioneer Athletic Conference, District One, even PIAA's sports are on. Obviously, schools are looking at other options in the Pioneer Athletic Conference. We'll, you know, discuss that also, but I just wanted you to know, as a school individually, we don't really have that power to just go and delay because we need people to play.
One thing I'd like to say is, I agree with Mr. Strunk in the guidelines that were given to us today, because not only do they deal with sports, but they also deal with our other extracurricular activities like debate club, including science clubs, the engineering clubs. It includes a lot more than just the sports, and I know we focused completely on sports tonight, but we do have the other extracurricular activities that we're going to want the non-sport kids to be a part of. And this guideline also includes them, which is why I'd like to see if we're going to make a motion, the motion to continue with this guideline with the actual schedule as the PIAA made, but using this guideline for all of our activities and sports. That's what.
Al, who'd that come from? Do you know what time it was sent, so I can find it quickly?
We got it from the email today from Dr. Scher. It's the, let me read this, it says Montgomery County Office of Public Health Guidance for Sports, but inside it also includes, it says right in here, IG Indoor Competitions Clubs, including Science, Engineering, Debate Clubs. It's also including all our indoor activities as well.
I agree, Al. It's very comprehensive and it gives us a solid footing, and it allows parents to make the choice ultimately.
I'm not quite sure how I feel about lumping in activities where if we're going virtual, that they would be able to still participate in fully from the comfort of their home, as opposed to being a contact sport. I sort of feel like there are two different levels of interaction there.
But we're not at the contact sport level. If you're following the guidelines, we're not, we're not at that level. If we just stick to those, it gives a guideline as far as non-contact, and I believe there was moderate, I want to say it was indoor sports, so maybe like a volleyball, things of that nature. So just following that rubric, we're not talking about contact sports versus debate club and things of that nature.
Got it, thank you. I was thinking with the prior conversation about sports in general, not be able to compete with other schools.
Let me, I do want to clarify that, because I have it up on my computer. It does include moderate contact sports, as they call in soccer, field hockey, lacrosse. It's sort of all encompassing, this rubric, in saying exactly which sports are considered higher contact, which sports are considered moderate, which sports are considered low. It does include all of those as well. Again, I agree with Tina 100%, as in it should be the parent's decision as into how they're going to go. I'm just using the guideline and rubric that was given to us by the Montgomery County Health Department.
Right, and I like that it spells out percentages, that you can go to the Montgomery County website yourself if you want, and just as we did today, and take a look and see what that number is, and that gives you the guideline as far as where do we fall, what sports and activities are go within that rubric. That's what I like about it.
I know I read that earlier, but we received so many emails today, I'm trying to look at it real quick myself, again.
Mark, if I were to make a motion, what would the motion have to be say if I wanted to use the guidelines of the Montgomery County Health Department's guidelines to keeping our schedule as suggested with the PIAA?
Look, I don't have any magic. My suggestion, Al, would be the motion to go ahead with fall sports in accordance with the league's schedule, but including obeying or meeting the guidelines that's set forth by the Montgomery County Office of Public Health Guidance for Sports dated today. I would incorporate those with that. I also have it in front of me that Bill sent us today, dated August 25th, so we're clear what we're doing and what guidelines we're adopting. So I'd suggest that we continue, if that's what you want to do with the league's schedule, but that we do so in accord with the August 25th guidelines as updated by the Montgomery County Office of Public Health, their guidance for sports.
All right, then I'm going to make a motion that we continue with fall sports under the schedule that was given by the PIAA, but.
I think the league, Al.
Okay, by the league, but it must follow the Montgomery County Office of Public Health Guidance for Sports as it's displayed now, and if it's changed. Can we add that, if it's changed?
Absolutely.
And if it's changed throughout the fall sports, winter sports, whatever sports it has, as long as we follow that to a T.
Second.
All right, I'm sorry, we have a motion in a second now. I do need to make everybody aware that Ashley stepped away from her computer, and she's back, okay. I think she's back. Ashley, can you come on and let me know that you're back? Oh, well, we'll check in a minute. All right, this is the part where we normally say, does anybody have any questions or comments? So we'll start with the board and see if anybody has any questions or comments they'd like to talk. I see Dr. Nippert has his microphone unleashed, so please, we'll start with you, sir.
I didn't mean to scare you. No, I have no comments.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments they'd like to share with the board at this time?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm clear what that guidance is saying. I just tried to read over it quickly again. So what is it saying in essence in regards to sports that are contact sports at this time? So everything except golf and singles tennis. What would be happening at this time? Mr. Davis or Al, you seem familiar with it, or anybody else?
Well, I'll let Al speak to it, but I mean, and I'm not the expert on the numbers, but it has a scale that suggests where the positivity is. That dictates what you can do and not do, and it dictates different directives for different sports. Now, I can't apply the numbers, I'll defer to Al.
At this time, from what I read.
Oh, Dr. Mr. Strunk.
You say, go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Higher contact sports, given where we are at this time, would only be allowed to do individual-level drills or rehearsals using distance protocols. Testing positivity would have to get below 1% or less than 10 per 100,000, well, actually, it's both, incidence less than 10 per 100,000 and testing positivity below 1%. And then, higher contact sports could be involved. It says cautiously participate in team competitions. So we would have to get to that testing positivity of rate as a county below 1% for higher contact sports to go from individual drills to competition, and even then it says cautiously.
So until our rate is below 1%, we're not allowing any kids to be within six feet of each other?
No, 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 no. The, the, below 1% is the high-contact sports, like football. That would be the high-contact sports. The medium-contact sports, like a soccer, a field hockey, a lacrosse, a volleyball, those type of sports are under the medium section, which is the positivity scale of 1 to 5%, which we are currently in. I think we're in the, it's the moderate level. Remember when we get that report now every board meeting, what we were the last four weeks? In the last four weeks, we were moderate. As long as you stay in moderate, you would be allowed to play those sports only against other teams that are also in the moderate. In other words, you couldn't turn around and play someone in, I don't know Philadelphia, how their numbers are, but if their numbers are higher, you cannot play a team in that sport. You could only play a team that has the same levels that these have. So they have to also be below 5% or below 1% naturally. Then, of course, you go into the lows, and then the low-contact sports, which were, I believe, like golf and tennis. Actually, it has baseball, softball, track, swimming, golf as low-contact sports. They would be okay to operate in the 5 to 9%, which we haven't gotten up to 5 or 9. We haven't been over 5% in a big month, but they would be the low-contact sports.
Thank you for clarifying that. That helps quite a bit. I'm going to have to vote no. I just voted no to school opening for hybrid. We're still in the same state we were two weeks ago, whatever it was. I'm not comfortable with sports such as, or any sports happening such as soccer where they're going to be in that close contact. I understand the point of the motion. I'm going to vote no. If the motion's ultimately voted down, I'll make another motion, my original motion. Thank you.
Guys, real quick, can anybody hear me?
I just wanted to ask Al a question.
Can you hear me? Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Oh, this goes to Chuck's question. I think I have an answer now, Chuck. This guidance also includes bands, so I'm asking Al.
It includes band at 20 feet. It says.
And it defines the, I was concerned about it.
Yeah.
It's just woodwind.
It's all encompassing.
Brass. So that's in your motion, and I just would direct Chuck to the bottom of the chart that talks about music programs.
Yeah, band is in there. That was the one thing I remembered from reading it this afternoon when I was prepping for this meeting.
I just want to be clear what we're voting on, that's all.
I do have a question. We've heard from Steve on the sports end of it, because we haven't heard from our band director, and it'd sort of be nice to hear what she has to say. I don't know if she's actually on the participant list or not, to be truthful.
She's not, she's not on our.
Al, you're not on.
But maybe, maybe Mr. Anzbach, you can weigh in. I know you've had conversations, but also maybe clarify some of the points regarding the different levels would be helpful to the board in this questioning, that's the period.
Yeah, absolutely. So I speak to Ellie, our band director, pretty regularly, and, you know, with all our optional pre-practices, our student athletes, our coaches, our parents, Jack Thomas, they have been doing a phenomenal job, and they've been doing the social distancing, all the safety protocols, or check-in procedures, or attendance recorded, has been phenomenal. So I know that she would definitely continue to follow our safety guidelines, keep the social distancing, doing everything that she currently does to continue to participate in band workouts. Currently, they're going two times a week, that's their practice schedule. It has been working. You know, just this week. You know, just this week, she's averaging around 26 to 28 students per practice.
She is on, by the way.
Yeah, as I say, she's actually on one of the, if she can maybe...
If she can maybe raise her hand, then she could speak.
What I will say is this guidance that came out from Montgomery County today, this is new to all of us. So the 20-foot recommendation is brand new. So that is one thing that we haven't been implementing because we haven't seen it until today. So that's a new part to all of this. But, but yeah, as far as the practices, it has been going well. It's been going phenomenal. And we've been following the six feet of social distancing, mask wearing, all that. So that's a credit to everybody involved throughout this entire process.
Want to come back to at least Bill?
Do we want to hear from the band director?
I would like to. I don't want anyone else.
Let me see.
I would too.
At the moment, I can't unmute her for some reason. It's only chat that's popping up. Let me see if I can get her now.
Hello?
There you go.
Hi, guys. All right, so I just wanted to speak, first of all, thank you so much for everyone for being able to speak with me and asking to speak with me. And again, I would like to back up Steve and everything that he said. He's done a phenomenal job representing everybody under athletics, including the band program. As he mentioned earlier, we are following all the same protocols that athletics is following right now. I know there's been a lot of questions being raised as to the safety of the horns and what instruments and such. So in regards to that, we do and have provided students, at least our brass players at this time, with horn covers that can help eliminate the the spread of the coronavirus with the saliva and the spit and all of those things. The other thing that we have done is our drill and such and how we march on the field. Everything is six feet apart. Students are following the protocol, as Steve said earlier, phenomenally. So in my personal opinion, with the 20-foot rule, I have not read, and I have not read any aerosol study that says that the band has to be spread out that far apart. However, under the six-foot rules and such that we have been following since, all the students not only have followed that protocol to the T, but it has also been reinforced in how we operate. Same thing with my staff. Everybody's six feet apart, wearing masks, hand sanitizer stations, temperature checks, and we're doing everything in our power to continue to have the program to run similarly to athletics with all of the efforts and everything that's going on and moving forward. Again, having Steve as a guide to all of that is supposed to be extremely phenomenal. So with everything going on, and again, with how the drill is being run, we're doing everything in our precaution to make sure that nothing is being spread. If the board has any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer.
The only thing I wanted to clarify, just so everybody understands when I'm reading this, and obviously, band director can definitely chime in. It actually says on here, it's only the brass and windwood instruments that would need the 20-foot distancing. All other music activities can maintain the six-foot distancing. And of course, it includes choir and stage.
It's interesting, again, I personally can't speak. I have not read in about any kind of study that says brass and woodwind instruments have to be 20 feet apart, but we can always adjust those things. But again, with the horn covers that are being provided and those types of safety precautions, for example, a woodwind instrument can be thrown completely in a bag and able to play and produce sound for others to hear. And all of that condensation, all that spit gets put into that bag. Brass instruments, for example, they have horn covers, so where the spit and saliva would be covering out, similarly to wearing a mask, that cover goes over the bell of the instrument itself. So all of that is being trapped in by the cover. And our students are already, at least our brass players at this point, have already received horn covers to make that happen as a safety precaution to continue to press forward. So in that case, I don't think, if the covers are being used, I believe the six-foot difference, six-foot spread is still safe. Now, obviously, I'm not a a health expert, but things can be adjusted in order for the season to continue. If 20 feet is what needs to happen, then 20 feet is what needs to happen, and our numbers are small enough where I can spread them 20 feet apart.
Thank you, Ellie, for your insight. And to your credit, you know, Mr. Anzbach has kept me posted, you know, along with the other coaches as well, and the due diligence that you all have done is extraordinary. It does say 20 feet is recommended. A lot of these pieces that we have before us are recommended. So we'll continue to use those recommendations to the best of our ability as we move forward like we do in our, all of our decisions. And I think that's something we'll keep in mind and give you and Mr. Anzbach an opportunity to digest some of those, those pieces. And with this document that we'll have posted on the website, there might be more information from the Children's Hospital Policy Lab as well that might give you more insight to why they chose that, that distance.
I want to come back and just in clarity, the guidelines do not give a green light to contact sports for moderate contact sports at our level. So it's not saying yes to competition. The guidelines say for moderate contact sports, soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, may continue to scrimmage under the guidelines, but would be recommended to keep the scrimmages local or isolated with partner schools or teams in the area. Moderate sport competitions should only be permitted with another team whose local area positivity rates and daily case incidents fall within the guidelines. So for moderate sports, it's not saying, yes, you can have competition at this level. It is putting restrictions on that competition, and in fact, it's putting restrictions on the scrimmages too. So I think it's more stringent than what was stated before for moderate sports.
And, you know, again, all of this is going to have to be looked at because not all of the folks that we compete against are going to be within Montgomery County. So we're going to be balancing that with what's happening with Berks County or Chester County or whoever the competition may be against, and we don't know how that's all going to shake out. So if this passes, if this motion passes, then there's still going to be a lot of stuff that needs to be looked at. And God knows who all is going to be in the same boat with us, you know, next week, next month. So there's still a lot of unknowns down the road going forward. But, you know, let's see where this goes and how this, how this happens. So we're here. Any more board members have questions or comments before we open this up for public comment?
I would just like to see if we have a backup plan, that we could do the scrimmages, which is Potts Grove versus Potts Grove, and that's like a little scrimmage thing, little intermural thing to keep the kids active. That's the most important thing. I want to see if we can get something like that in place. Thank you.
Patty, were you asking for somebody to respond to that, like to see if there is a backup plan? Or just simply saying that was your concern?
Yeah, well, actually, I would like to know, maybe there is a plan, you know, but I'm sorry, Steve, I hate to put you on the spot. Can I put you on the spot to help me here?
Yeah, let me jump in first before Steve. So basically, we could still, if we can still follow, we're going to still follow Montgomery County rules and scrimmage amongst ourselves. So we could do that. So I'll let Steve jump in, but we would just, if we vote to follow the rules and we don't compete, we can, we can stay within the rules in our own system. Steve, you want to add to that or subtract?
Yeah, yeah. So again, this, this Montgomery County plan has come to us today. So like, I sat down with Jack Thomas, you know, prior to me leaving work today this afternoon after our field hockey practice, and we kind of went through it. And, you know, there's some questions in here that we would have to digest absolutely from a scheduling standpoint and who we're playing regarding following these thresholds and when the threshold numbers are coming to us. Because I don't think they're, they're weekly. They come to us on a Thursday. So like, we'd have to digest them. So there would be a series of things that we would have to figure out. Manageable, we could absolutely do it. Prior to this, we have, we have sat down and thought about, how can we, if there are no sports, if the board would make the decision for no sports, how are we going to continue to invest in our kids and our students, you know, provide them opportunities that focuses on their physical and mental health? We have discussed it. We, so there will be, in the event that we have to go that route, we would be ready to go. You know, that, so to answer your question, Mrs. Graham, yes, there would be a plan where we continue to invest them from, from a strength and conditioning, intermural concept, skills and drills, health and nutrition, we would be able to do that.
Thank you, Steve, for all you do.
Okay. Very good. I just wanted to wrap up before we go into public comment because there's a motion now, and we're going to be voting on this momentarily. And I just wanted to wrap up real quickly with Dr. Brochus and respond to some of the Q and A that was out there. First of all, Dr. Brochus, again, thank you very much for coming in this evening and speaking with us. I'm sorry if my tone's not necessarily completely respectful to you. I was trying to get a lot of information out very quickly. For folks that haven't been here, again, from the beginning, I've asked a lot of questions, and we've been talking, we've been talking about this stuff since the beginning of March. And our approach from the beginning has been that nobody who had comorbidities or nobody who was afraid to come back into the building has ever been expected or required to. And it has been my position all along that that was not including not only the children, but children's families. And it has always included the fact that children do live with parents and grandparents who may have comorbidities. And we did always talk about the extended families that could be affected by it. So that has always been a part of our approach. So if I spoke in a shorthand tonight that did not seem to include them, I apologize for that misconception that folks may have had. That's always been part of our understanding and part of our discussion. So that's understood and known. I do appreciate Dr. Brochus's expertise and his coming and his volunteering to help. I've many, 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 many years been in the minority on this board, and I know that it's, it's not fun to come in to a group that may not be 100% supportive of your opinion and to speak the unpopular truth to the folks. So, you know, thank you, doctor. I thank you very, very much for coming in and speaking to us. So I, if, if you took anything that I said as rude or poor behavior, then I apologize to you, but that certainly was not my intent. And I do appreciate everything you had to say to us.
Thank you very much. Honestly, no disrespect was, was coming my way. I felt fine. Clearly, you guys have a lot of very pointed questions that need to be answered, and you're trying to do so for the greater good of the public that you serve, right? So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board, and I hope I've answered your questions to the my greatest in my ability.
You have, you have, and I do appreciate it. The reason that I was, you know, some folks, I was looking at the comments, and I'm just going to throw this thing out there. The reason that I included and talked about pregnancy on there was because that is not one of the known comorbidities that we talked about back since March. It was something that I was addressing as something that could be considered a risk factor. That is not one of the known, to my knowledge, CDC-known comorbidities that I was just mentioning as an additional risk factor that we could consider to be something that we would want to use as a precaution. So again, I'm just clarifying and expanding my remarks, as they say in Congress. So that's it that I have to say on that subject. And so now, Mrs. Custer, if you'd help us with opening it up for public comment? Good. Dr. Shirk tells me that this time, the County Department of Health guidelines are now posted on our site. So, Mrs. Custer, if you would now help me with public comment that folks have on this agenda item, or non-agenda item, but this motion on sports. Yes, it was an agenda item, but now we're taking a vote on it, so people can now have public comment on this issue.
Okay, well, I know a few of these hands have been raised since before we started talking about this. So I'm going to start at the bottom and move up.
Okay.
But the first person on the list, it's not a name, I don't believe. So unless your full name is on there, I cannot call on you. So whoever is T-I-N-A-C, I don't know if, maybe that's Tina C., but it's all one word.
Let me explain, Ashley, if I might, why people, we're not trying to single them out or embarrass them, but the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law requires that our minutes indicate who spoke and where they're from. So that's why we ask you to give your name. If you don't give your name or want to identify yourself, we respect that, but then you can't make anonymous public comment. Go ahead, Ashley.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll try to call on this person, and then they can state their name. How about that?
That's fine.
But it's, again, it's only allowing me to do chat, not... There we go. Wait, maybe?
Hello?
Okay. All right, we can hear you.
This is Cathy ELO.
Okay, and if you can state your address?
1282 Whitespire Circle in Upper Potts Grove. The first thing is, we did not follow the Montgomery County guidelines for hybrid. Why is it so important that we follow the guidelines for sports? Also, back in 2007, I was involved in an incident, if Mr. Durenzo is on, that involved sports not following the same rules. I know it's completely different, but if you're going to allow one sport, you need to allow all sports. In this scenario, we cannot have our children together as students in the school atmosphere, but we're going to allow them to play sports together. I have a senior as well. Fortunately, she's in a winter sport, so if we delayed sports, hers would most likely be delayed as well. I don't think this is feasible for our district to not allow hybrid, but allow sports interaction. We should have just voted for hybrid. And I'm talking to those of you who voted for virtual, should not be voting for sports. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tina. All right, we've got quite a few here, so... How about if we go from the bottom again? I see, hold on, I'm having a tough time here. Jerry Thompson.
Hi, thank you. Jerry Thompson, 253 Glendale Avenue in Upper Potts Grove. I'd just like to commend the, Mr. Leach in particular, for the motion that he put forth that I think is very sensible, weighed everything, took everything into account. And I just commend him on that. I'd like to encourage the board to fully support that. I think it's based in data, it's based in recommendations from public health officials. I just think it's a very sound motion to make, and I think it will really do justice to our kids. And I'd also just like to reiterate a point I made earlier, that I think actually, though it may not have been intended this way, having students all virtual now, I think adds a layer of safety reassurance for our kids because they're simply not seeing each other all throughout the school day. And that, you know, it just added contact that we're avoiding by way of that. So certainly wasn't intentional when that vote came down, but I think it actually does help to support, you know, one more small layer for our kids. And again, I just, I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, so now we are going to look, let's see, Brittany Bra... Okay, so now we are going to look, let's see, Brittany Bradley. Again, I think Lori has to move her up to the top and unmute her. There you go. I think you're unmuted now, Brittany, if you can state your address. And you can get started. Bradley. You sound like you're really far away.
Pause here.
We can't hear you at all now.
Okay, I'll just pause.
Just pause it?
Yes.
Okay, go to the next person, you're saying?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, wait, now we can hear you.
They can hear you now.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, like, I very much appreciate this time tonight. I appreciate the doctor coming in and talking to us. I appreciate everybody's perspectives. And I just continue to feel that when our kids are safe to, when we feel that there's a level of safeness, right, for them to go and to play sports, which I think is extremely beneficial for their mental health, for their social interaction, just for their emotional and mental well-being. And then we look at that in the classroom, and we see how we could replicate some of that. I'm just really hopeful for kind of a spring, maybe even like later winter, where we're able to get back into the class. And so my question to the group is, when will we hear kind of next steps about evaluating as we move forward?
Okay, Brittany, I appreciate your question. This is just comment. So, you know, I'm sure you'll hear ongoing conversation about this.
Okay.
But I appreciate your comment. We all do. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next we have Renee Polaway. And I think you're unmuted now. So if you can state your address. And we're trying to keep these under like two to three minutes.
I must have hit the raise hand by accident. I didn't know I did.
Oh, okay.
So sorry.
You want to make your comment? No comment?
Yeah, no comment.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, so next we have... Hold on. Still trying to get used to my new computer here. All right, we have Stacy Messing. I believe you are unmuted now, Stacy.
Hi, Stacy Messing, 1979 Summit Way. So I'm very confused. If the health and well-being of our students was the primary driver for not having the hybrid, despite the fact that the community, or that the PDE guideline said that we were safe for hybrid, and despite the fact that the majority of community members wanted hybrid, how can that not be the same driver for sports? That the health and well-being are the primary concern when sports have no guarantee of protection the way the school environment had been supported with the masking and the distancing and the only in-school two days? And the, but, and you're also considering listening to the guidelines to play sports, but you didn't listen to the guidelines in order to open school. Those children that don't play any sport at all, they now, because of no school, have the exasperated concerns from those that are being mentioned with not doing sports. And there's no outlet being given to them. There's no, there's no conditioning, there's no scrimmaging, there's no small group socialization for two days a week with their schoolmates in order to maintain their mental health and their socialization and all those other things that the argument is being made that sports will allow. It is just so hypocritical and so inconsistent that I'm beside myself that we have spent almost three hours talking about this when there wasn't nearly this much consideration and discussion given to going hybrid or not on the day of the vote. And I just, I've made my, I wrote my comments also. I just don't know if they're going to be heard in time for the vote. I'm very disappointed. I have had much respect for how this board has handled everything. Even though I voted for hybrid and you didn't go that way, I still had respect for the decision, because you didn't feel comfortable that all the PPE and precautions were in place, and I respected that. I voted for hybrid. I would not put my child in a sport where they'd be playing sports right now, because that is an extremely unnecessary risk to take. And I really, really hope the board decides to do the right thing and keep the health and wellness of our students that play sports, their families, their brothers and sisters, and their coaches all in mind when making this next decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, next we have... Sorry. I have a very sensitive mouse pad now. Okay, David Borzick. All right, I believe you are, you're now unmuted, David, so if you can state your address.
My name is Dave Borzick. I live at 1270 Randy Drive. I have two sons, one that plays football and one that runs track. I am surprised that you're making a vote on information that we are not privy to, because we still work and don't have an opportunity to see this information. And so therefore, you're making a judgment on our behalf rather than letting us be fully informed as to what you're going to do and what is going to be done. The other thing is, is I've heard all of these statistics, and everyone has said the same thing. Statistics are not as valid as we would like them to be. They're scarce, they're inaccurate, because they don't have all the information, because not everyone's being tested. I think the coaches, the coaching staff have done an excellent job with what they're doing. And I think the one thing you're missing, other than the physical part, is our children's mental health. They depend on their interaction to, with their fellow students. And they won't have that, because they'll be virtual. So they'll be sitting at home, doing homework, and never have any interaction. And so their mental health has decreased immensely, and so has the system as a whole. I hope that you will take this into consideration. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dave. All right, next we have... Lisa Hefner.
This is actually David Hefner, her husband, 928 Kepler Road. I'd just like to make a comment, a couple of comments about this issue. First and foremost, I don't really have a dog in this fight. None of my children go to Potts Grove, but I'm a citizen of this township, of Lower Potts Grove Township. And having listened to the discourse tonight, I was not privy to the vote or the information given about the hybrid education. But if I had been, I would have been in the majority to say that it should have been left to the individual decision-making of the parents to decide for their own children. And with due respect to the previous commenter a few minutes ago, the fact that this board made a, in my opinion, wrong decision to dictate to the citizens of this county what their choices can be as opposed to facilitating those choices does not mean that they need to make another bad decision along those same lines. Hybrid learning, sports, clubs, band, music, these things are all things that should be left to the decision-making of the individual parents and students. People who are taking the risks, the coaches, the teachers, those are the people who should be given the opportunity to make their own decisions about their lives and not dictated to by this board. I understand that you are all in a very difficult position. I understand the responsibilities and the ethical duty that you have to this, to this community. However, as a coach myself, as a former athlete, a musician, a student, an attorney, there are ways to effectively protect and be prudent while still engaging in your life. Whether it is music with a, whether it is the innovation of a bell cover for a tuba, a bag to put a woodwind instrument in, there are ways to do this effectively. And to simply, to simply follow someone else's rules instead of allowing the individual freedom and personal choices of citizens of this district to be our guide, we're making a terrible mistake, and not just for the health and well-being of our children, but for their perception of the freedoms in this country. I am... I am deeply saddened by this, by this, by what I hope, what I perceive to be the direction that this board is leaning. And I pray, I pray that reason and sense will overcome fear in this discourse. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have Lauren Delp. She's not on mute. There we go. Okay, Lauren, you are, you're unmuted. Again, your address, and try to keep it under two to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. 116 Rose Valley Road, Pottstown, PA. I thank everybody for all of their hard work. Just voicing our teacher concerns on the SchoolAG and PG concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that, that might be it for comments on, on the sports. I do believe, I think these, the four hands that are up, or three hands that are up, were up before we started on this, I believe.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much, Ashley. Appreciate that. So that's all the public comment, and we've gone through all of our board comments and everything else. So that being taken care of, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
No?
No.
I think we need to do this by name.
There was, there was five yeses and four nos.
We can, we can do it by name.
Well, we still need, I still need to know who voted what.
The winner is voted yes.
Okay, so yes was...
Go ahead and call the names, please. We'll call the...
All right. Tina?
Yes.
Bill Parker?
No.
Jim Lapik?
Nope.
He's going to switch.
Yes.
Patty?
No. She said yes. She said yes earlier.
Who am I missing here? Sorry.
I didn't say yes.
Oh, Chuck?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Strunk, you need him.
Ah, yes, yes.
Yes.
He was a yes?
Yes.
And then, of course, Bob?
Yes.
And I was a no. All right.
So that is a yes. That is, motion carries.
Yes.
Yeah, we already said that.
Yeah.
No, I didn't, I didn't know.
Just for the record, what, it carried what? Thank you.
All right, there we are. So move on to personnel.
If no one has objection to 5.6, could I combine 5.1 to 5.6, please?
Second.
I'm sorry, do we have a second on that?
Yeah, Bill Parker.
Okay. We have a motion, a second on 5.6, personnel items. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Sorry.
I'll wait a little bit longer next time. All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to action items for business, the virtual environment lease. We're asking the board to approve administration to enter into a lease agreement with E-plus technology for the update of the district's virtual environment as presented.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
The only question I have, Dr. Shirk, and maybe Mr. Tony will answer this, is I just want to make sure that we are good to go on servers for the start of virtual. I just want to make sure we're all 100% with this. We're good to make sure our kids can get on the virtual environment.
Ms. Leach, I'm going to let Mr. Burkett wait on that. He'll be able to explain that more thoroughly than I.
Yeah, the majority of our equipment, or the, I'm sorry, the majority of what the students will be using is web-based. This is our server infrastructure for authenticating students, things like that. So to answer your question, yes, we will be ready.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Please.
Yeah, this goes back to something I mentioned earlier. If the teachers are saving their Zoom lectures as MP4s, do we have the capacity for storage of all those class periods? Because that's going to become a very large amount of memory. It's going to take a large amount of memory in short order.
Tony, can you follow up with Dr. Nipper's question, please?
Yeah, Dr. Nipper, we have essentially unlimited storage in Google, and we can link those files into SchoolAG if teachers want to make those. And we can link those files into Schoology if teachers want to make those recorded sessions available.
Okay, because, because you'll go through a gig in very short order, just from my own experience.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll determine, you know, we'll work with teachers and determine how long, you know, to provide access to those archived files and then purge, you know, as needed or as necessary. But we'll work with the teachers on that.
Next up?
So we gotta do the vote.
Yeah, we need a vote, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there any other questions? There being no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to action items for education, additional targeted support and improvement plan. We're asking the board to approve our additional target support improvement plan as submitted.
We have a motion, a second from Mr. Custer, Mr. Leach on targeted improvement plan. Does anybody have any questions on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection. Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, committee items. We're asking the board to accept the minutes of the Athletic Co-Curricular and Community Relations Committee meeting that was held on June 9th, 2020 as submitted.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second from Mr. Leach and Mrs. Custer to approve the Athletic Co-Curricular and Community Relations Committee meeting. Does anybody have any questions on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection. Okay. One walks over. Now we get to the fun part of the meeting. New business. Who would like to give us talk?
I do have one piece of new business that I know Scott Hutt, who's listed with his raised hand, is going to ask about as well. It's in regards to, I'm hoping Jeff, I'm not looking at the panelists and such. I'm hoping Jeff's still on the list here. There's a skating rink or that's used for deck hockey over by West Potsgrove. The deck hockey team or whatever club that was using that is no longer using it for deck hockey. So in essence, it's like just sitting there. And my concern is it not being maintained. Or maybe we can repurpose this area to either basketball courts or something that the students could use. So I'm hoping Jeff maybe could, maybe look into possibly seeing if we could do something for that area now that deck hockey is no longer there rather than just having it in an empty hole. Sure, I will look into see if there's alternatives used for it. Our ground staff does maintain the area on outside perimeter. And if we see anything on the inside that is trash related or so forth, to move those debris off of the area. Thank you. That's all for me.
I have, I have something here. I'm a little confused. I've been under the impression, and I believe the board's been under the impression that we are set to go or will be set to go on the first day of school. I received several, several emails and messages today from various teachers, mainly from elementary, saying that they do not feel that they are prepared, that they have not had the training that they need and are not ready for day one. So I'm a little confused because I believe there's, oh. I'll bite my tongue on that one, but can somebody explain, Dr. Shirk? Where we're at, because teachers are not feeling they're ready in elementary.
I would just like to add that I've also received emails and texts, not just from teachers, but from parents, reflecting the same thing. And again, mostly at the K5. But this seems to be a concern still, so.
Dr. Shirk, would you like to take a whack at that one, please?
Yes, I would. In fact, I, I've been, I've been receiving the same emails. And I think it's important for the board to understand that this administrative team has been working since March on putting together an educational plan for our community. No, no one was asked to, for this, for this COVID virus. And what has happened really over the last six months is the community has rallied around one another. The school district, the teachers, the board. And there's a lot of tough decisions that we never thought we had to make. The teachers went into this last March and within 24 hours had to vacate their building. They had to take all the personal belongings. They, they could not take any workbooks or things that they, that they needed. But somehow, some way, we put together two weeks of asynchronous learning. We worked our way through the process and started to work in connections with Schoology that, that our secondary level had practiced. The elementary K5 division worked with Class Dojo diligently. And, and just constantly tried, did their best. And that's all we ask them to do. And as we worked through the spring, we made more connections with students. We had more connections with synchronous learning. And when we got to the end of it, you know, I think we can be proud of, of, of what we, what we did. We were one of the few school districts that held our student body to assessments and grading. Some school districts around us just went pass fail. We kept our students with skin in the game. Our teachers helped us formulate those pieces. It wasn't perfect, but they helped us with those assessment pieces and the grading pieces. This led us into the summer where we had an opportunity to survey the teachers. And one thing that we knew we needed was a K5 learning management platform. And from that point on, our technology staff, along with curriculum, worked to put that piece together. We had to, we had to look at a price like we do on everything. We had to look at pricing. We had to look at, one of the comments was even we dropped the Schoology platform and get something completely new. And we, and the consensus was in our, in our administrative offices that we couldn't do that. We had to stay with what we knew. So as we worked our way through the process, we, we got ourselves to a point where we, we got our pricing. We, we got our ducks in the line for the board. And we made a proposal to the board to move forward with Schoology. That was mid-July-ish. Don't, don't quote me on the dates, but early July. So, so we did those particular pieces. And along the way, we knew, we knew, we, along this way too, we knew we were going to need more, more machines to do this as well. So we knew we had an experienced 612 staff with Schoology. We knew we had a non-experienced staff with K5. But our goals as administration was to, with the 612, was to really step up our game and our knowledge. And our building administrators knew who the teachers that needed support and they were going to give them that support. The elementary level, we just wanted them to familiarize themselves with Schoology. And really just, just start that process. There was no way we were going to be able to put a whole learning platform together. Colleges and universities can't do that. We, we're asking our teachers to, to, to work and to learn, you know, along the way with our students and family. Now, you might say, wow, how can we do that? We have no, it's a COVID piece. We have no choice. And, and the piece where we need more time and effort, absolute, not effort, the effort's there. We, we need, we need more time, absolutely. So what we did in July was we started, in June, we started with a professional development platform with our curriculum technology integration staff to start working these options into, into our summer plan and plans to open in the fall. So we gave our staff, we gave our staff one flex day to have professional development on the, the Schoology platform, virtual learning. There was, there was many pieces there and I have, and I'll just, I'll share some, some of those pieces here in a second. But we also gave our staff a second flex day to come up with lesson plans and virtual lesson plans or hybrid lesson plans for seamless learning for the first 25 days of school. So we gave them two flex days that'll come off the school calendar later on down the road. We also gave them a half day on, on today, a day tomorrow and time on Thursday. So four and a half days to get, to get in as good a shape as possible with Schoology. And, and really, you know, I'll be honest, the expectations weren't, weren't that high. Because we knew that we could not have high expectations with a brand new learning platform that some of them just started in the last, in the last two weeks. And the building administrators understood that. So as I go back to those flex days, we also put a whole professional development calendar together for the month of August and started at the end of July that was communicated to the staff on July 24th. The board got the same information on July 27th. And then we revised that, that, those documents August 3rd. And we also put additional PD and learning opportunities and that was also communicated to the staff. So here, here's what we've done. We had 23 staff facilitators. We had over 40 options that dealt with Schoology, virtual learning, assessments. There was many, many pieces. So not only did we bring in outside facilitators, we also had 23 of our own. And we had additional options that we set our staff up for at the MCIU. In total, in total, with 250, approximately 250 staff members. We had 857 participants in these professional learning environments in the month of August. And obviously that's continuing this week. Now, some of those participants obviously did two and three pieces, but they had the flex day obligation as well. So, you know, I understand, you know, and then, and then the curve ball and all was that, you know, Apple did not come through for us with the iPads in a timely fashion. But as a board, you know, we did have the conversations with, with some board members were against making a real quick decision. Thank goodness we did make a quick decision because the equipment probably wouldn't even be here to the end of September. So we did our due diligence. We were thoughtful with the equipment. We were thoughtful with the learning platform. We did the best job possible with professional development that we could within, within the system and the hand that we're dealt. And, you know, Mr. Linger made a comment many months ago that the model that is, does, the money doesn't follow the model. But yet we, we've, we've done a really good job of doing the best that we can with that piece. So that leads us obviously to this week when we find out that actually last night at 8:20, the, the iPad shipped from China. So now they're on their way to us. They will be here seven to 10 days. Our hope is they're here in seven days. It's the fast boat, not the slow boat. I mean, that, that's, that's our hope. So that we can spend the first week of school, you know, doing a lot of things that we would normally do if we were in school, you know, in real time. And, you know, it's getting to know one another. It's learning, it's rules. It's, it's the decision making processes and community building and so forth. There's a lot of those pieces. Also an advantage that we have is last year, all the workbooks and material had to stay in the rooms. And our teachers did a phenomenal job with learning materials and our principals helped out last year copying packets. Like, we did a lot of scrambling with those types of pieces. But this year, we have an opportunity to pass out all the workbooks and all the materials ahead of time. And I know that the, our instructional assistants and our teachers have worked diligently with that piece. And they're to be commended. One of the pieces that I really feel comes out of this is, is the sense of community. No one asked for this, you know, the board didn't, the district office didn't, the principals didn't, the community, the kids especially. So I really feel that our job at this point is to keep the ball moving forward. Because a lot of, a lot of information that I heard from, you know, I hear really, I've heard from maybe 12, you know, 12 to 18 parents, but I've also heard on, on, on We're Not Ready. But I've also heard from 12 parents, 18 parents that please, our kids need to get back out and to get into some regular mode. Even though it's a virtual mode, we need that structure. So we put schedules in place. We did all of our due diligence when it comes to setting up this year. Our building principals have, have put the systems in place within their buildings. And is it going to be perfect? Absolutely not. Is it our best effort at this point in time? Yes. Have our teachers done more than they, we've asked them to do? Yes, they have. Another week to prolong this piece is not going to make us that, that much better. And, you know, I feel that we positioned ourselves all summer and we're, we're in a position to do this. And as, as the superintendent, I understand there's going to be growing pains. My expectations are that you build relationships with the kids, you build relationships from the family. You walk them, you talk them, you instruction, get them through these first two weeks, especially, especially at lower. We have 2,500 kids that will have the devices they need in their hands. It's the 700 kids or so at lower that don't. But what I found out today in talking with the administration at lower, there's a lot of kids, like last fall, have the capability of, of having, of having the, the, the virtual environment. They don't have our lap, they don't have our iPad, but they have a home iPad or a home computer. So it's not like everybody's going to be totally in the dark. And we'll continue to use all of our extra staff, our social workers, our guidance counselors, to bridge some of those gaps until we get all, all the holes filled. But all in all, I really think that the board supported virtual. This, this administration has been upfront the entire time with everything that's going on. We've done our due diligence. The building, the directors have done a tremendous job organizing their areas of expertise. And the building principals have led the particular buildings. And I'm just asking the teachers to just relax, go in and do what they always do, do what they do best. And that's educate our children.
The schedule for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. I'm hearing things that are over my head, that they can't link to virtual classroom, to Schoology, that they don't know where to, how to use a break room, just basic, you know, technological stuff with our system. What's the schedule for?
Are you getting that information now, like real time, or is that something that you've had like days?
This was today. This was today. What is the schedule? What is the plan? And actually, the last couple hours, it all came in like the last couple hours. What is the plan for the next three days to get our teachers ready?
It's, it's building specific plans. So I can call one specifically of our, our, I can, I can start with Mr. Vorse and, and Dr. Rannich. I can also add Mr. Siler in on this. I can also add Mrs. Kohler. So we can start and really anywhere you like. But one of the things that we did was we didn't, we made them building specific and teacher specific so we could meet the needs of the teachers. That was, that was our, that was our goal. So we left that up a lot to the teacher leadership teams within each building. And they formulated a lot of direction that they wanted to go because we felt that that was the time best spent, best spent. Not a top down type piece where you're going to do X, Y and Z. We wanted them to focus on the virtual world and Schoology and, and put themselves in a position. Now, the curve ball was at lower. Now, Bill, again, I'm, I'm not sure if you're talking about K2 or 3.5, but the curve ball obviously was the iPad piece and that's nobody's, that's nobody's fault. You know, we had the vision in early July. We posted that information to the board. We, we ordered it as soon as we possibly physically could. And that's, that's, that's the hand that we were dealt. So you tell me as far as, you know, do you want to hear from those, those directors and administrators?
I don't think anyone's blaming, you know, the administration for not having the iPads yet. I mean, it, you know, everything's running late. You can't find anything anywhere, you know. But, I mean, I, I have to wonder, I, I know the, my understanding that some of these flex days, a lot of the professional learning was, was. Of course, it's not going to be face to face, but it wasn't even. to face, but it wasn't even, you know, like through Zoom or something like that. It was more, you know, watch this video. Which, I mean, I think we can all agree that, you know, sitting there watching, you know, some kind of video or some kind of teaching on a on a computer for an hour isn't nearly as productive as actually getting hands on learning. And I know right now, hands on is very difficult. But, you know, I I think what a lot of the concerns are is, you know, focus around Zoom. You know, people have said, oh, well, you know, I've been in Zoom meetings all summer, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, you've been in meetings, but have you been running the meetings? I couldn't run a Zoom meeting. And I've probably been on, can't even imagine, 60 of them, probably. Let alone then having the kids in the, you know, in the Zoom and how to call on them and how to teach at the same time. And, you know, I I think there's just a lot of concerns there. And then to assume that the kids who don't have iPads have devices at home. I mean, we know that that's, there is no way that every child has a device at home that they can use for that period of time. So those kids are going to fall behind. You know, so we get to week two where the kids might hopefully will have their their iPads. And then what about the kids who didn't have devices? You know, then what? I know the administration is putting in a lot of work, a lot of time, same with the teachers. But I'm just I'm just nervous that that it's going to be a really rough first week that will be sort of in, you know, in some ways pointless because it'll be so much stumbling and kids without devices. You know, I just, I don't know. I I I just don't see the harm in pushing it back a week at this point.
Let's let's separate one from the other, I think. Let's talk about Rocks and West because they do have their devices. They do have their devices. So what is the problem with the teachers at Rocks and West? What are the issues with the teachers at Rocks and West?
I'll jump in to the conversation, just give a little bit of a context. Because I think to some of the specific pieces that Dr. Shirk mentioned, first of all, we have highly conscientious teachers, you know that. They want to be like perfect right out of the gate. And yet we're all facing a situation where we've never been in this kind of a start before. So I think that's part of the just natural stress that comes into play. I'll talk, I know Mr. Siler's done done a lot of things and he he will speak more eloquently about some of the specifics. But in in a broad stroke, the other thing to remember is yes, School G was new. We couldn't purchase those licenses until July in our budgeting cycle. Zoom is new. So although we've been using Zoom, to the to a large extent, a teacher has been using a free Zoom account. Zoom no longer allows those free educational options, for better or worse, they're, you know, they're seeing the potential of a pandemic as well. So now teachers have brand new Zoom accounts. And what that brings is an extra feature set. So I heard someone say a breakout room. It's a great tool. It wasn't something that was available prior to those new paid accounts. So for example, this morning at the Ringing Rocks faculty meeting, which I helped facilitate as Dr. Stango comes comes on board and it's not not fully available. We went through the, you know, the district items that were that were taken care of across each of the schools. But for the discretionary time there, I showed them a couple of quick features for how a breakout room works in Zoom and actually tossed them into those rooms so they could experience it. Over the course of the next two days, we'll have more specific things about School G, about Zoom. We have some parent resources for School G that are being edited and pushed out. The middle school has done a great job educating what used to be the first time parents were new to School G, which was sixth grade. Well, now that's all the way down to kindergarten. So we have some some plans in motion and resources that, you know, facilitators at the middle school have done this for years. Mrs. Henry, for example, Mrs. Frasca, they're sharing those resources. We're pushing those things out to parents over the next couple of days. We have materials and boxes, as Dr. Shirk mentioned, that are going home. Inside those boxes, in addition to the curriculum materials, parents will receive a sheet that has all the login information that their students would need. So that those things which might normally be facilitated in a face to face conversation with a teacher can now be, you know, sent to parents and and they'll have those records. We have a similar sheet that shows a parent how they establish some of the accounts that will benefit them as they want to follow along or have a parent School G account or access our parent portal. So some of these things are just unfolding as we begin. And would it be great to have these things, you know? What's the best time to plant a tree? 20 years ago. What's the next best time to plant a tree? This afternoon. So we're we're addressing what we can and all these resources that they come into the system. And I think in some ways, it just speaks well to our teachers who want to hit the ground running with as much experience in these areas as they have in their face to face lives and instruction. But it's just, it's it's unknown territory for all of us at this point. And I commend them for what they're doing. And I think they're working really hard to get it together. And we'll continue to support as they're in to provide virtual instruction from their classrooms. It's yet another opportunity to provide some of that embedded, ongoing professional learning in addition to the work that's scheduled over the next couple of days.
Well, thank you. You answered some of my next question in regards to parents not feeling prepared too. So I'm glad to hear things are going to be going out over the next couple of days. But back to my original question and Mr. Linger had a good follow up question. Specific, you know, what are the specific needs? I believe we have Mr. Shantz online, if I'm saying it correctly, John. Perhaps we can hear from him. I believe he's spoken to many, many, many of the teachers. I don't know if it was yesterday or today. Perhaps we could hear from him as far as why they're not or how they're not feeling prepared.
All right. So, Mr. Davis, before you jump through the screen, I think we will take this out of order and and go ahead and hear from Mr. Shantz at this time. I would like to get his opinion on this because we we would like to talk now about the community and the partnership and how the union has teamed with us to get everybody ready. So I would welcome Mr. Shantz's comments at this time. I do want to have some questions of him. So if you'll give me some leeway, Mr. Davis, I would like to hear from Mr. Shantz at this time. I think he has a statement he'd like to read and then we'll ask him some questions.
You set the rules.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much to everybody for having us on. And, you know, I know we spent a lot of time talking about the athlete student, but I'm definitely here to talk about the student athlete with student being first. And, you know, I heard a lot of, I heard everything that's going on. And I hear everything that's going on from our end. And again, I'm John Shantz and I'm the union president for the Pots Grove Education Association. And what a year to take over, to say the least. So again, thank everybody for what they're doing. I have so much to say, so I hope that you'll permit me a little more than the three minutes possibly. And I will definitely read a prepared statement, but I want to respond to some of the things that I heard tonight and and sort of set the record straight. And I'm going to begin very bluntly. This is not a situation, because I hate reading on Facebook things like people think the teachers haven't worked hard enough or aren't ready. But we're not ready. We're definitely not ready. The school district is not ready. And we, there's so many things at play here. And I know it's not a popular opinion, but as much has been debated about, you know, whether or not just to have a couple of sports or a band and hugely important things. I was a coach, a longtime athlete, activity leader, advisor, I get that. But we are not ready. And 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 not to contradict anybody, we are not relaxed. And holding my general membership meeting today as a kickoff, you know, there's seasoned veterans with decades of teaching experience under their belt in tears. And it's not for lack of working. It's there's not, we don't have training that's necessary. The devices aren't in, the parents aren't ready, the students aren't ready. And it is going to be my recommendation, or I should say, an official union stance that we will take to push back the start date of school. I had hoped to speak to you guys before new business and before a discussion on sports and things like that because I was, I thought the information was pertinent to any decisions that might be made. And that is why I had emailed you guys, you know, courtesy, professional courtesy and just so, you know, advance notice of what I would be sharing with everybody. Basically, the high school and and middle school have been working on programs like School G for a couple of years. Ringing Rocks has no principal. The elementary schools don't have this training. And I mean, when I say don't, they don't have the training, some of the training isn't occurring maybe tomorrow or the next day and school starts on Monday. And people have no idea how to get onto these platforms. And although there were flex days and things like that available, they were done for all kinds of things like how to connect for social emotional learning. It's any number of other things on our list of choices from, you know, from our my learning plan type thing. So we are in, and again, I don't want it to be public opinion, I don't want to lose public opinion. I feel like we have this mentality that, you know, like a 9/11 rescue worker who volunteered from somewhere in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, comes up and and now, you know, years later, they have lung cancer and mesothelioma and you're not our problem. Like, I feel like we were asked to do some crazy stuff and we did the best we could as every one of you is doing and we all appreciate that. But now there's a mentality that, you know, parents, we've we've done so much as a school and and staff of amazing people to parent these kids and do all these extra pieces for the whole child. And and people realize what it is we really do. And we are diminished and it stinks. And I'd like to use stronger language there, but it stinks. We are diminished in our capacity to help the kids that we love, let alone now trying to help our own children and co-teach, you know, for me, first grade and senior sociology and economics. But we we can't do what we used to be able to do. So having chosen the virtual thing for our district for the time being, we want to go all in and we're simply not ready. Because although, as several people spoke about, trainings were in place and numbers of people participating in things, the right things aren't in place yet. And we have teachers, veterans, again, in tears because they literally don't know how to set up a School G page. I myself, entering my 28th year, had to be in a situation yesterday where a good friend of mine was authorized by our principal to come in and coach me along with it. And I've been doing it, but with each new piece comes a new, you know, I hate to say nightmare, but that's what it is. I I'm making us sound incompetent and it kills me to say that. But the truth is, we are not ready. And then when you take away the devices and you take away the parents who don't know how to do these things and the kids coming in don't know how to do these things, I I think we're setting ourselves up for a failed start. So that's a lot of ad libbing and there's there's much more I could say. I don't want this to be a politicized issue. I don't want it to be along, you know, party lines or an anti-union standpoint. That is not it. I want you to remember something that I say every time I speak, and that is before we are any job title, we are human beings first. We are fathers and mothers and parents and brothers and sisters and all of that stuff. So we want to work with you guys, but we need more work. We need more help. We are not ready, in my opinion, to begin. So the formalized, you know, letter that we released to our members and the board of directors and Dr. Shirk today is as follows. And it's just us taking an opinion or a stance dated today to the Pots Grove School Board of Directors, Directors, excuse me, from the Pots Grove Education Association regarding the first student day of instruction. Dear Board of Directors, please be advised and aware that at present, parents, teachers, students, et cetera, have not been universally provided all materials, resources, training, and orientation necessary for a successful and productive first day of remote instruction, currently scheduled for Monday, August 31st. Based on this set of circumstances and in the interest of providing the best possible start to the school year for all Pots Grove students, the Pots Grove Education Association recommends that the first day of the school year be delayed until all necessary materials, technology, and training can be fully made available, communicated, and practiced for all concerned district stakeholders. And it's signed by me, the president, Andy Clark, our vice president, Stephen Mellor, our secretary, Lambert Lebl, Lebl, our treasurer, and our entire Pots Grove Education Association. So I thank you for your time in in hearing me out. We want to do the best job that we can. We are concerned that we can't. I don't know what you would would do with that information. I expect to be here as long as you need me to answer any questions I may. And I will certainly write down any that I'm unable to answer and take them back to my team. So thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. All right, we'll start with our our members and we'll start with any questions that Mr. Strunk may have for Mr. Shantz.
Mr. Linger, can I add something before the board?
Oh, Mr. Har, Dr. Harney.
I just some considerations as the board considers their questions in this. I'm just, I'm just looking at this from from a purely practical standpoint. And the teacher year has started. So the end of the year is fixed at this point. We don't have extra days unless they're going to give us more days or volunteer more days for us. So any days that come off the calendar at this point are going to be student days that are not met. One, I'm not sure how we do that from the state, how many days that we can change over to student days that are actually going to be teacher professional development days, right? And and I just wonder where these days are going to come from. And I guess what I was highly concerned about is there was an indefinite timeframe set to, they're not willing or wanting to begin until all of these things are met. How many days is that? And where are these days going to come from? So I I think that needs to be part of the discussion here because the teacher, your teacher year has started, the teacher contract has started, and we're finishing on June 10th because that's how this year is mapped out at this point.
Well, let me just make it clear. So, I mean, I think you made it clear enough, but the the board will have to pay, you're going to have to make 180 days this way. And if you don't have them in the calendar, you're going to have to pay for extra days. And that's going to come out of the taxpayers' pocket.
So that was just, that was just the point I wanted to make because we're talking about these days as if they're, there's some nebulous idea. They're not, they're fixed right now. There's a calendar and we need to deal with that calendar. So I just needed to interject that into the conversation at this point.
Dr. Harney, I'd be happy to address some of those issues if I if I may, unless the board would like to speak first. If I could, is that okay, guys?
Yeah, yeah, go, John.
Okay. You know, in in talking to Dr. Shirk and others along the way, we had talked about, you know, front loading the in-service days. And I know that the two flex days, if you add them in with the two and a half days that we used, you know, or will use this week, having done the half day today, it could seem, you know, to to someone not in the know that that sounds like you had four and a half days plus our own, you know, earnest efforts as teachers to do what we always do, go way above and beyond. But if you talk to the elementary teachers right now, if you think they're getting trained, they're not. And here's what here's what they're doing today. They're scrambling around copy rooms with busted up copiers that are struggling to keep up. And they're packing boxes of supplies for hours and hours on end when it was supposed to be in the traditional old days, just a, you know, a welcome back and a, here's the district vision, et cetera, kind of thing. So people are working like above and beyond. So this front loaded in-service and some of these flex days have absolutely been for optional trainings. But not everybody could take advantage of them for for various reasons. So some people weren't able to flex and will have to go in 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 April and in February for the in-service days that are regularly scheduled. I don't know legalities as well as you do about the 180 school days. I know that the state has waived, you know, the so-called magic wand on many occasions, you know, for for various things. Most notably, I've been teaching, you know, through the blizzards of 93 and 96 with 13 and 16 school days off and things like that. I think the pandemic certainly qualifies again as a way to waive that wand and and minimize those days.
Interrupt, I apologize.
Sure, go ahead.
But that's just, you know, I can't let that sit. That's not based on the current circumstance. I don't know what the Commonwealth will do. They did pass legislation this. They did pass legislation this last year, but this year we had to put an emergency plan in, and we have no relief from that hundred and eighty days.
Right, and that's not to say it won't happen. I get you. And again, I, I, like I said, I wanted to preface my statement by saying I don't know all the legalities and ins and outs of that, so I thank you. So again, some of it is speculation on my part, um, which, you know, doesn't make me sound as smart as I should, but I I admit the faults there. Um, as far as the indefinence of, you know, indefinite um, nature of the letter that that we put together, um, we didn't want to just say one week because I think the reality in stuff shipping from China, because we had heard uh, a while ago that they were due in, land in the mainland U.S. on the twenty fourth was was what was going around. Again, not sure if that's accurate, but now we know that they've shipped. You know, we know how these things can be lost, quarantined, who knows what, and once we get the computers, I believe there's a lot of imaging and things that has to be done, at least from my understanding. Again, I accept any and all criticism uh, to to set me straight. But we're worried that it's not just a situation where it's going to be that long uh, or be too long. However, even if we had additional training for the staff to know how to use this stuff, and the parent videos were sent out to the families, which I don't know that they received them yet. So uh, so I I haven't received one, how to use them to teach my daughter, and as a parent, you know, unfortunately, uh, you know, I I'm struggling to do my own thing like so many other workers are and learn the new technology for the students. So, you know, we're, we're just looking at making a recommendation to push it back, but we didn't want to put a a number on that as, like Dr. Honeywood to the indefinite piece, so I I totally get that. Um, but I do know that, you know, we have changed the calendar. In the past, we have dropped in-service days. Certainly, you know, if if we have about ten in-service days in our contract, one of the things you could consider is if you moved four or five of them out of those random Fridays that you have off when it's just leading into a spring break, or you took, you know, the quote-unquote Easter Monday or Spring Break Monday, we can certainly find those days, in my opinion.
Can I just ask a question? I'm not sure. Is it possible to do half-days? Push back for half-days and get the training that they, they're, they're requiring, that they need?
Make the first week all act eighty days, basically?
Yeah, like just a thought.
Well, the bigger question, we've first got to figure out the scope of the issue and whether it's a one-day, a five-day, or a three-week issue. Because
And and Mr. Lindgren, respectfully, I don't have that answer, nor do we want to propose one. Um, and and I want to make sure everybody understands, I'm not coming, we aren't coming in with that.
We can't have an intelligent discussion until we have the scope of the problem. Because if you can't answer that question, there's no way we can come to a resolution.
Okay, I I know, I totally understand that, and we're hesitant to give you that number. I don't want you guys to think that we're coming in in an attempt to, this is not a strong-arm tactic, this is not anything, this is a genuine, we want to work with you guys, we are concerned about all the miscommunication, and I come to you guys in the spirit of not, not even the union president, but so much as a parent and a teacher uh, who who knows that his fellow teachers are not as ready as they should be. And so in our discussion forthcoming here, I hope that we could set a number of days um, without me arbitrarily giving you a number.
Can we turn it to Mr. Voorhees? I I'd never say your name right. I'm I'm sorry, I apologize. Daniel, to be safe. Uh, what is the plan for the next three days, and is the current plan either already set to have teachers prepared by the first days? Or can the plan be manipulated at this late hour, hearing the teachers' concerns for them to be prepared, be prepared by Monday? And if not, see, uh, Patty had an interesting thought, is, you know, could we take a couple of half-days? Because I know half-day, we still get credit for that day. Uh, or or something like that. I'm trying to think outside of the box. I'm not really interested in delaying. I don't think the parents are interested in delaying school either. We're also hearing from the teachers that that they're not ready. So is the plan for the next three days able to fix that?
Mr. Parker, hold on just a minute.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
To hear from the union president is the scope, the problem. He needs to tell me exactly what all the issues are that we need to
Okay.
He's come to us with an issue, and he's asking us for help. He needs to tell me exactly what this all is that he's asking for, what all the issues are so that we can formulate a plan. I can't formulate a plan on what he's asked for so far.
Gotcha. And so, you know, the issues are that we, you know, as much as it may sound to the public or to the board, like the teachers have been trained, there are literally buildings of people that have not been trained to use School G. They have no idea how to use it starting day one. I mean, no idea. They are terrified, in tears, panicking. They don't know how to set it up. They don't know how to, um, I I heard questions earlier, like, you know, uh, from Mr. Bickert, just saying, like, you know, sort of, we'll get there and we'll, we'll coach you through uh, whether or not, it, you know, we'll, we'll work on that, so to speak, like, as far as storage. Um, there's no guidelines that have been, that that are really solidified within us, our, our, us as a staff to know, um, you know, how to do these things. So I, I, it's hard for me to give you the exact scope. Uh, and I know that's a weak answer, but I don't know the timeline. I just know that when I sat today, there was a one hundred percent agreement from our union that when I said, is there anybody that objects to this, that 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 thinks, you know, we shouldn't use more time? Uh, you, you know, again, and I believe that the high school is going to get the job done, and that's because we're ahead of the curve on that stuff with technology, the laptops and all that. I believe the middle school as well. But in the most formative years, in these K through five grades, uh, without the devices being in place, without the training necessary for the teachers, um, and I, and again, we have various building respective inter-level plans coming up. Uh, they, we need extensive training on Zoom and School G, and the reason I say that is the public perception that I believe was put out there was that, and I forget if it's from the board or the, or the admin or what, but it was that this year we are ramping up with a more robust um, education that will be taught by teachers who have been extensively trained on these things. That is simply not true.
Okay, need to back up just and ask you just a couple of questions here for just a minute. You say that the high school is good to go. Is that right?
The high school is in much better shape. Uh, there are a lot of ins and outs since we are using, you know, Zoom in a different way. Remembered last year, Zoom was not required. Um, we were given a directive to take what we were teaching, basically cut it in half and cut it in half again. Uh, I also challenged the statement that we really had much input on the grading policies. That is not correct. Grading policy was changed multiple times, sometimes in the, in the same week. And unfortunately, I believe we passed a lot of people that did not meet requirements because nobody wanted to fail anybody in this situation.
Okay, so you're saying nobody at the high school knows how to use School G?
No, I did not say that, sir. What I'm saying is lots of us do. They are tweaking it, and we're gonna learn the ins and outs, and we are, we've had a team, and Dr. Ziegler did a really nice job uh, in involving not only union leadership, as we had asked for, but all the department heads, and we had people who are are experts in this, in these things step up and and create how-to videos uh, that we are all gonna have the same color-coded, color-coded folders. Every kid is gonna know where everything is from every teacher and every department. So we, we're gonna be in good shape. I can't speak exactly to the middle school, other than to say they are, you know, in second place, in in really good shape with the iPads doing what they're doing. But I'm concerned that that's just two buildings, and that we have three others of our five that are not ready.
Okay, let's, let's stay on that for a minute. So the high school is good to go in terms of School G, and they have a system on how they're using School G?
Correct, in my opinion, yes.
Perfect. You're saying that the three elementary buildings do not have a system for School G?
Uh, from what I gathered from my people today, and and I mean rookies, seasoned veterans, everyone, they are not up and running and ready to go with the knowledge of how to use Zoom or School G to be proficient and provide that robust environment from educated, trained staff.
Do they all have, do they all have devices?
Do the teachers have? Yeah, teachers all have laptops.
The teachers all have laptops.
We all have laptops, correct.
Perfect. So they have the equipment that they need.
But the kids don't all necessarily, and we don't have the knowledge on how to use everything.
Which children don't have devices?
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
Which children don't have devices?
Uh, as far as I understand, it's the three through five grades?
That's right, it's three to five.
Lower, admitting all of them. I guess there might be some people that have their own, uh, and, you know, and I don't know the breakdown regarding, you know, if there's been a survey conducted, you know, which families have internet connectivity or district-provided hotspots, or or, you know, loners or things like that. Um, I know with a, with a larger and ever-growing economically disadvantaged population, that's always going to be an issue. Uh, various home situations that I, I could never personally speak to because we're not privy to that information, but
We've taken care of the hotspots, and we've, we've got the computers on order for three to five. It's just the the kids at lower that don't have them at this moment. Everybody else has devices.
As I understand it, pickup is tomorrow and Thursday for the K through two levels.
Right. So the question is, if the issue is the teachers at the elementary schools don't have School G and aren't trained with School G, what has the union done to get the teachers from the high school to help the teachers at the elementary school trained up in School G?
That's an easy answer, nothing. It's not our job.
Well, yeah, it is. You're our partner. You're our partner. You are the partner.
Mr. Lindgren, Mr. Lindgren?
I disagree completely.
Can I interrupt this, Lindgren?
Please.
I, I think this is good, it has gotten off a path. Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Shantz. It is not their job to teach elementary teachers. It is our administrator's job. Can we please, uh, he's representing the teachers. I, he's not just speaking for himself. I got, a, a number of us got tons of emails today. It is not just Mr. Shantz. Can we not do to him what we did to the poor doctor, please? Can we please turn it to Dr. Voorhees to see what his plan is for the next three days to get our teachers ready? The teachers are saying they are not ready, period.
The, how are we, I don't know the scope of the problem.
Okay, well, right now, part of the scope is fifteen hundred kids don't have devices, roughly.
That's not true.
Because they're gonna be picking them up, they're gonna be picking them up tomorrow, I think it is, and the next day. So fifteen hundred kids are gonna be learning in a couple of days how to use School G, and parents will be using School G. And I mean, I'm just telling you from somebody who's been on the curriculum committee for four years. It took four years to get the high school and middle school teachers to all use School G the same way. So I'm sure that there's going to be a, you know, massive learning curve. I mean, it's, it's gonna be difficult. The first week of school, it's gonna be hell, no matter what we do. But I think what Mr. Shantz is saying is very valid, and I do feel that, you know, to say to him that he has to be the one, and the, uh, union has to be the one to help the other teachers, feel like that's a little bit, a bit like you're tacking him on it.
To say, to come to us four days, four days before school starts that we need to push the start of school back a week.
That's actually not accurate, because we actually came to administration last week asking this, and we were told everything was fine.
Right.
And that the only concern was that devices hadn't arrived yet, which we understood. But otherwise, everyone had a plan and everyone had been trained. But now we're hearing that that wasn't actually a hundred percent accurate because of training for certain things, but not everything, or training, you know, training how to use School G, you know, when you don't have the devices to, you know, from the kids' viewpoints or to show them to the parents, it's not the same thing. So, you know, we, we let, we asked the administration about this last week. All, all of us were in on that email chain, asking about it to bring it up to find out, lizard-balled, and we were told the teachers are ready.
Here's the thing that I have trouble with, and I, and I'm not, I'm not denying any of that. I'm not. And I, I give our teachers a tremendous amount of credit, and I have to tell you that I believe that School G is what I consider to be a fairly user-friendly platform.
Then why is it it took four years for everyone to actually get on the same page with School G and the high school and the middle school? I mean, and that was with
On the same page, on the same page is not the same thing as up and using it. To get two hundred and fifty people, or even ten people, doing the same thing is not the same thing as up and using it. Right?
Fifteen hundred parent, actually twenty-two hundred and fifty parents at the K through five level to be able to do the same thing with it. So I think being asked, can we give them some more time to maybe learn it if necessary, is a reasonable thing.
I don't think you're gonna make a substantive change in one week. I don't think if you give them additional week, it's not gonna make a huge difference in the outcome.
Probably will increase their comfort level. I don't think, when you're throwing something at, uh, somebody with a child, you're not just giving them a new device. You're giving them a new way of learning too. You're gonna be home now. They don't want to do that. They want to be at work. They want to be in school, playing with their friends and learning there, but now it's, you've uprooted them entirely, or we have uprooted them entirely, and put them at home, so it's not just, it's a new method of learning, it's everything. So, you know, try to think of it from their viewpoints. I mean, maybe the thing to do is actually go to the individual teachers at K through five and find out what their comfort level is. I mean, a week to feel more comfortable with it so that they're not stressing out their own students because they're stressed out will make a difference. Going with the half-days, I think that's a very reasonable, like Patty's saying, just because that allows everyone to get their feet wet, but still have a break, you know, during days that's not the full day. You know, they, they get a chance to rest, you know, recover, basically.
Can I just say something real quick here? Um, first of all, we're all on different levels here, and I just want to bring everybody back. We are a community, and Pots Grove comes together in crisis when we need it. We all have been there, whether we could afford it or not. We always roll our sleeves up and we get the job done. So right now, I'm gonna ask everybody to remember, remember, this is about our children's education. I do not want a brand-new kindergartner going in there in the virtual with a teacher not having, have, have been trained or have the confidence that they know what they're doing. So I'm strongly saying, let's all, we all have our opinions, whether it's right or wrong, let's pull together and like, take a breath, and let's just look at what we need to do, get a plan, because it's gonna benefit our kids. It's about the kids and their education. So if we have to go to half-days for a week, let's go half-days a week. I know other school districts, for whatever reasons, they've all pushed um, back their opening day. I don't really know why, um, and and I don't really care to know why. I care about our kids. So let's try to compromise here, because we are the board, we got the administration over here, we got the teachers over here, we got the community over here, and we have the kids. And we all need to come together for the betterment of Pots Grove. Please, come together for the betterment of Pots Grove.
And I thank you, Mrs. Grimm. I promise you, that is my only reason here. I did not seek an argument. I have been nothing but transparent with admin and the board from the moment uh, myself and and the new team came in place. Uh, I bleed maroon and white. You know, I graduated from here in eighty-seven. Uh, if I could use my thirteen years as a student and add them to my twenty-eight years as a teacher, I'd already be retired, and I'd be asleep by now. So, um, I appreciate everything that everyone's doing. Please, again, don't think this, take this as adversarial. I I am coming to you, asking for your help to problem-solve exactly as Mrs. Grimm just described. Um, it is, I do not seek to make an argument or fight out of this. I wanted you to know, from our standpoint, as one of the major stakeholders in this whole thing, the frontline people there for you, who do what we do because we love it, and we can't do it as well as we wanted to to begin with, with this whole COVID thing, uh, and and now we're, we're lacking some necessary training. Our paras, uh, you know, our, our paraprofessionals, uh, the parents, they're not up to speed on this. And I know there was a lot of talk today about getting, you know, a few more things done. It's, it's two more days. We already had a half-day. We're not in on Friday. It's literally two days, and every teacher that I know is scrambling and practicing, my, you know, my high school social studies department tomorrow. We're doing Zoom meetings with each other, with all the new bells and whistles on our new toys, and practicing teaching to each other. Um, we're doing these things. Uh, but again, at the K through five level, people are are struggling to make copies and pack boxes of materials and supplies, and they haven't even had a chance to sit down and use this equipment yet. So I'm not coming to you today, just a few days before. I need you to know that So I'm not coming to you today, just a few days before. I need you to know that this is a recommendation I made months ago and kicked around. I also made it again, uh, a la, or a week and a half ago, as some of the board members have referenced and sort of tried to kick off that discussion again. And so it, it came up today and with crying teaching, teachers, you know, just not knowing what they're going to do there besides themselves. So I am coming to you with the open arms, not a clenched fist, asking for your help and making a suggestion that possibly, and that that half-day thing could work, something, but that you could maybe help us do something as so many other districts have earlier, pushed it back to gain more time. So again, I thank you and I still welcome any questions you have for me.
Sure. I have a question, not to, uh, John. Uh, the question actually is to, uh, Mark, Dr. Harney, Dr. Schurk. I understand the hundred and eighty days and everything like that and obviously we have to go by that. I also know there's something to do with hours, like nine hundred hours, I believe, for the younger elementary kids and nine hundred and ninety, I want to say, but this is off the top of my head, for the higher education. So it was either a hundred and eighty days or the hours. And I've always remembered that the way we were able to work the, to stay with the not taking snow days now was because we were always going to meet the hours. So I'm wondering if, is it still either or, or is it only the hundred and eighty days? Because if it's either or, we still may make the hours, allow the high school, and again, this is just me thinking off the top of my head. Allow the high school and middle school to start on time. Allow the elementary kids to take a couple of days to get more training and such and still meet that time in the normal school year. Is that possible?
And Mr. Leach, thank you for that. I believe, um, haven't we in the past, especially during the construction years at the high school, had a staggered start similar to that?
We, as I recall, we still did the minimum time. Again, uh, just so it's clear, and I'll let Bill and, and Bob speak to the, I think it's and, I'm not sure it's or, but I'll let them speak to that. But I, I want to be clear that last year, uh, the state legislature gave us relief. This year, the state legislature, you know, I don't know and understand the politics of it nor does it matter, has chosen not to give any relief to districts. So we had to pass how that emergency resolution to go virtual and not provide our hundred and eighty days in person. That did not give us any relief from a hundred and eighty days. So you still have to do the hundred and eighty days. Um, again, I'll defer the educators, uh, about the calendar, how to get there. But again, we, we have to still meet that guideline this year. Uh, you know, uh, Mr. Shantz is correct. In the past, there's been legislative relief. Um, there does not appear to be any on the horizon this year.
Thank you. Um, it, it takes me a while to process information. I'm slower. I need time to think about it. I've been listening to Mr. Shantz. I've been listening to Mr. Parker and the other folks. And the answer is, is slowly coming to me and part of what, of what Mr. Leach said. If the issue is that the high school and the middle school appear to be ready and the, the elementary grades are where we really need the help, perhaps an answer is that we start the middle school and the high school and we delay the elementary grades until we get that sorted. Does that, I'm, I'm looking for, um, some input from, first start with Dr. Schurk and Dr. Harney. And then I'd like to hear from Mr. Shantz on, on how that looks to them. And then I'd like to hear from the other board members on this idea. Um, so, Dr. Schurk?
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Um, that, that piece with, with K, with K twelve, obviously that group has the most experience with Schoology. And, um, obviously there, there are some, uh, the Zoom, the Zoom pieces, obviously they, they are familiar with that because they had that, that piece last year. I know it doesn't have all the, we had more of the, the basic economy Zoom piece. I know we have more bells and whistles this year, but I think that's something I would hope that they could overcome. The K five delay piece, I would, I, if, if we could, if we could do right off the cuff, thinking, thinking right off the cuff, it would be if we could do the half-days there where we could at least have a, a half-day type, uh, schedule, um, with, with, with that particular group and do the professional development in the afternoon, that would at least, um, you know, have our interactions start to take place on a basic level, uh, and then allow our teachers to, to, uh, work with one another and, uh, work with our district experts with, uh, with Schoology and the combination of Zoom, you know, with, with professional development. You know, we, we would, you know, that, that would be something we'd, we'd be putting together ASAP. But at least that would, would keep everybody kicking off the same time and, uh, handle some of the PD concerns of the K five group and, um, allow our secondary group to, uh, have our older kids, uh, push on. So, oh, uh, and then I'll just defer that to Dr. Harney, just on, on how, and again, I know it's sort of, it's really quick, Dr. Harney, but as far as days go, what that would look like, uh, on the school calendar.
No, I think it's, I, I don't like the idea of splitting because I think that gives us a child accounting issue. We're going to have a group of students that are four or five days behind another set of students. But the half-days, getting credit for full days, uh, that week keeps everybody in line. It doesn't add to, and it doesn't diminish from the student calendar. And, um, we're not losing five days, four days of instruction that way. And I think practically it's the best way for the teachers to get their feet wet, to learn something and apply it the next day. Learn something and applying it the next day is much more productive than us working maybe an extra week and still not really knowing what we don't know until we get in there. So the half-days, I think, is, is a good option and it does alleviate my concerns on the, uh, the teacher days.
Dr. Harney, just, just to, just to, you know, make sure I understand, it would be, the recommendation would not be to, to split up the district. It would be the half-days, K twelve?
Absolutely, yeah. I, 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 there'd be a lot of unforeseen issues, I think, if we had a, a portion of our students four days behind the rest.
For what period of time, Dr. Harney?
You know, if we do the half-days for, you know, next week for the four days, uh, because I think, I believe we're off that following Friday. So we're only looking at Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So there would be time for professional development in the afternoons and starting the half-days for elementary in the mornings.
Hey, Bob, can I make that motion now unless we need to discuss this further?
Can I, can I, I think this is a pretty big jump we're making here. Can we bring in, uh, Mr. Boris to, to discuss a little bit the implications of this? And, um, you know, making something like on the fly, I'd like to get a little more.
And maybe too, like that Dr. Ramich and our elementary principals, I mean, I think, I think we got to hear from everybody, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to go around the horn on this. We're, we've got to hear from the board as well. We're, we're going to kind of talk this through.
I, I can definitely jump in and, uh, per Dr. Schurk's request, I'd love to, for the principals to jump in after me and Dr. Ramich and anybody else as well. Uh, Dr. Paceto, just because we've made these plans, obviously together as a team moving forward. One of the things that were, I kept hearing, um, I was taking a lot of notes as I was hearing the conversation, just hearing the idea that educators aren't ready. You know, all of us around the world aren't ready. We, none of us were prepared for what hit us in, in March. And, you know, somebody said, you know, everything's been uprooted entirely. Yeah, everything we know together as educators has been uprooted entirely. Um, and as a result, um, we're all being thrown into new things. We don't know exactly what that looks like, makes us all uncomfortable. So I certainly recognize and understand, um, where that's coming from. Uh, at one point, uh, somebody asked, what do the days look like, not only this week, but what could the days look like next week? My response to that is, one of my responses I often give to Dr. Schurk, um, we can be flexible. If we want to make it happen, we'll make it happen. So originally our days throughout this week, uh, the building principals and I strategically put together that time with some, well, actually with a lot of flexibility. So we allowed for building specific meetings, meaning any building specific needs that were occurring, that, that could occur during that time. There was a lot of work that occurred over the summer in terms of curriculum revisions. So our teachers need time to kind of work through what is, what's been revised in terms of pacing, assessments, all those things. They've had those discussions about how to shift in terms of what does it look like in a virtual world. We've allowed time, um, a lot of time for team time for them together to be together with their teams to kind of plan out what this looks like, as well as some individual time for our teachers to really think about what that looks like moving forward. Um, one of the things that we did, um, we did originally provide overview Schoology sessions. Um, and actually feedback from our teachers was, you know, we want to get more specific. We needed to be more elementary specific. So what we did is we went back and added grade level specific Schoology sessions so that those teachers could sit together with their grade level teams and kind of begin building that. And I don't mean to minimize that because, uh, to, to Mr. Lappick's point, you know, it, it takes a long time to learn any new system, but that, that, that was sort of a shift that we made along the way. So, you know, I think we can make any shift together, uh, working with the principals. We can certainly talk about what the remainder of this week looks like. I do know that tomorrow, a good portion of the day, um, is, um, really set aside for curriculum discussions for those teams to get together and talk about the pacing in terms of the instruction that's going to be occurring. And that needs to occur no matter what, so that they're ready on that, that particular piece. Um, and then we can talk about how, how do we build in some greater support specifically with Schoology piece, um, for the elementary group moving forward. And that could be included perhaps even as early as Thursday or certainly during the half-days if we in fact go to half-days.
Okay, hold up for just a minute. Mr. Parker? This is the first time we've heard Mr. Boris speak this evening. So if that is not the answer that you wanted for your question, would you like to ask him again so you can get the specific answer to the question that you asked earlier a couple of times?
My question has, has transformed a little bit because of where the discussion has gone. But my question now would be, will you be able to, um, it, once we figure out what the plan is as far as the days and a couple of minutes, will you be able to, uh, sit with, um, Mr. Shantz and elementary representatives over the next day and day or two to hear directly what their, you know, needs are as far as training and with Mr. Bickert or whoever's involved with technology, uh, come up with a, an agreed upon plan with the teachers?
I think we could certainly do that.
Thank you. I'm good, Mr. Lindgren.
All right, thank you. All right. Uh, and as, as we discussed, so now we're getting around to the, the building principals. Were we going to start with the high school or were we talking specifically about the elementary, Dr. Schurk?
I think it's important to hear from everybody because all the different perspectives that they, uh, have to, have to deal with and work with. So I, I think we can start with Dr. Ziegler. That'd be great.
Yeah, hello, everyone. So the high school, uh, is, is ready to go with Schoology. Uh, like Mr. Shantz said, we, we had a, a team of teachers that have been meeting about four times throughout the, uh, summer to prepare for Schoology rollout. What we've been really working on is creating common expectations with Schoology. A group of our teachers, uh, put together tutorials for our teachers on how to set up their Schoology pages. We have a whole, uh, whole document and links of videos that our teachers created on this. In addition to that, they're creating videos for our students on how to access their work and how to access their items in Schoology. So I believe that at the high school level, you know, we are, we are ready in regards to Schoology. We're getting training tomorrow on Zoom. And, uh, we're going to be digging in over the next few days on teaching like sample lessons on Zoom and things like that. So I think, I think we're going to be ready. Uh, our, our high school faculty and staff have done an outstanding job of preparing and getting ready for this.
Thank you, Dr. Ziegler. Mr. Boyer?
Yeah, it's, uh, good evening. Um, the middle school is ready to go. I mean, you know, we have expanded, uh, basically our knowledge of Schoology from wherever we were at. We were in the process of, you know, our Zoom classroom links were basically due to go out to families August twenty-eighth. Uh, we had a review of Zoom and Schoology today on our faculty meeting and then we had a separate one to kind of, as a refresher for some different schools, you know, skills with Schoology. I feel we're ready to go, um, you know, and really the questions that I received today from our staff after our meeting, were few and far between. Um, you know, we have two new staff that, you know, we have to catch up with some certain things that were just hired. But, you know, I have confidence the middle school, we're ready to go, um, you know, and I, I, I didn't think any different, you know, tonight was a little bit different here in this, but we're ready to start on August thirty-first.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Boyer. Uh, Mrs. Kohler from the three-five building. Obviously, this is, uh, uh, the building that obviously is affected the most when it comes to the iPad pieces. And, uh, so we really appreciate, I know you and I've talked to them numerous times over the last couple of weeks, but, uh, we really appreciate your input. I'm sure the board would too.
Thank you, Dr. Schurk, and good evening, everybody. Um, so, so yes, the, the iPad issue is a bit of a setback for us. But when I reached out to the team leaders and the teachers to share, you know, that this was a definite possibility that we would not have the devices by, by the time school started on Monday. Everybody, and I mean, everybody, our paraeducators, um, our secretaries, everybody just kicked it into high gear and started coming up with, um, Plan B one, um, to, to be able to still start the school year, have the kids have the things that they needed. You, you should see our cafeteria with all of the things that have been prepared to go home, um, for the kids starting tomorrow, um, evening. So, so, you know, we've been working really hard to address that issue so that we could, um, provide the kids with things that we would normally do when school started, um, and knowing that the device issue was, you know, was going to be something that we would have to, to work around. But that, that we would be able to do what we needed to do, um, while we waited for them to get here. I have the, the most confidence in the team at lower and, and actually in all of the buildings. And to know that we will be able to do what we need to do for the kids. We have a Schoology and Zoom training scheduled for first thing tomorrow morning. Our teachers have also been doing practice sessions with Zoom. I know, um, our paraeducators have expressed some concerns about Schoology training and that's something that, um, working with the, um, special education department on to, to, to understand how we can include them in that process. But, so, I mean, flexibility is the name of the game right now. Um, and we will, you know, whatever we need to do, based on what decisions are made tonight, we will certainly get that done as well. But, um, I, I think we, you know, we will go with whatever. Um, we, we'll be ready to start Monday if that's a decision. And if the decision is to, is to go a different direction, we will, we will work with that as well. But we, we, we were moving forward, planning to be ready to go on Monday, um, knowing that we needed to still do some things for families and students. And that was all going to be part of the, the ongoing process for everybody.
Thank you, Terry. I appreciate, appreciate that insight. And I, just from the, just from the board standpoint, um, you know, I've said this to you before, and I, I say this to everybody here, this administrative team always has had the best interest of kids and their staffs in mind. Uh, and it's, they're just, they're just, you know, they, they take an approach that really, in my, my thirty-five years in the business is really second to none because they, first of all, they care about people. Uh, and then they care about their students and their families. And the teachers fall, uh, in that same, in that same lineup. So, I appreciate thus far the insight, uh, from the, the first three administrators. I'm going to, uh, ask Steve Siler if he would weigh in, uh, as well.
All right, let's keep an eye on the clock to, to see if I was starting with good morning or good evening, ladies and gentlemen. But, um, uh, the school, I've had the privilege of, um, uh, working alongside both the, the kindergarten, first and second grade teachers at West and at Ringing Rock throughout the summer, um, as, as we're supporting the, the transition to, to Dr. Stango, um, stepping into leadership there. It's, it's, it's very clear and, um, would, would definitely, um, uh, recognize a lot of the, the comments that Mr. Shantz had made earlier in the evening that Schoology is a significant concern, uh, for, for a large number of our, our families and, um, I think, or for a large number of our students, I'm sorry. But, um, I, I think the, the biggest piece to that is the, the level. the level of, of expectation, uh, professionalism and excellence that our, our teachers do hold themselves to. Um, I, I would anticipate, um, you know, some, some bumps in the road along the way. Um, but uh, you know, we see, we see those at the start of a, a traditional year as well. Um, the first few days of school never look um, as, as uh, you know, smoothly or seamlessly as uh, as, as they may be planned and hoped to be. Um, but um, you know, as, as um, as, as we've heard throughout the team, um, our, our, our teachers are, are um, you know, willing to, to do whatever it takes to, to support their students and their families. So, um, the school ag learning curve ahead of us is steep. Um, I think it's one that we're, we're able to, to tackle in, in, in steps, one at a time. Um, and, and ready to, to move forward with whatever the board's vision is for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Siler. And uh, Dr. Ramage, if you could just weigh in on, on, on Ringy Rocks. Uh, and then if Mr. Siler wants to backfill, that's fine, but I know you both have been working with that group along with uh, Dr. Stango, who is, who is still, you know, waiting in the wings, but he'll, he'll, he'll be on board shortly. But uh, that feedback from rocks would be appreciated, Dr. Ramage.
Sure. And, and I would echo Dr. Sherk what you just said, and I, I would also certainly include Mrs. Kohler in that loop. Particularly Mrs. Kohler, Mr. Siler had been uh, very helpful in, in uh, helping as we, we try to support that rocks team uh, while they are, are, you know, in that transitional time. And I know it, you know, it's a difficult time in a lot of ways, um, that being one of the things that they're facing. But uh, particularly with Mr. Siler and I, we, we met often with leadership teams across both buildings because obviously that's a, that's a desired situation when we can because it's the one area of our whole district where it's a grade level is split in the multiple buildings. So we tried to be very intentional about holding those leadership meetings uh, with many times with kindergarten, first, second grade staff coming together from both buildings and both of us on the Zoom calls. As the training for things like school ag started to roll out, I know uh, Mr. Siler would do the same, but I'd often just pop into a training session just to get a feel. We, we had teachers step up to provide that training. Some of our secondary teachers who have been using school ag for, for a period of time helped provide it. And then some of our elementary teachers who I would call, say, a front runner, someone who's more, it's just a skill set they have, they're willing to pick that up and go. Uh, they really develop some really nice K-two specific. Uh, for example, how does an emerging reader or kindergarten student who may not be able to read, how do they find their math folder in school ag? Well, they had those kind of conversations and they talked about the visual cues and things that can be set up on a page. So there was, there was a lot of underpinning, a lot of foundation work that, that went in. Uh, recently, as I, I think I mentioned earlier, I, I'm helping uh, Dr. Stango since he's not available. I facilitated the meeting today and um, you know, Mr. Siler's going to help across the time. Mr. Vorus and I will be there for these, for these planned in-service days. And um, you know, where I'm trying to respond to what those needs are at the time. They are putting materials together for a distribution. There's no doubt about that. So they're trying to get curriculum as well as the iPads that uh, Mr. Bicker and his team have already assembled and they're putting in basically in a box so that parents will be able to come uh, tomorrow night and Thursday night and K-two parents and their families will be able to come and uh, and pick up those resources. One of the practical things, just to get a sense, as, as I'm hearing school ag a lot, and it is true, it's a centralized part of our learning, but as the first days of school really hinge so heavily on helping to build those relationships, which we know, you know, we do that naturally in face-to-face settings. I'm just encouraging particularly our K-two staff to build those relationships through Zoom. So there's, there's not necessarily an immediate need to hop on school ag on the very first day of instruction. This is, this is my feeling. Because Zoom is a place where they can have some interactions. They can still do instruction that they'll want to, want to mix into that uh, creating a learning environment and a classroom community. But Zoom is a more familiar piece for our staff members as well as for families. Um, so I'm advocating a, a heavy emphasis of Zoom over our opening days and then an introduction to school ag along the way to show students when it's time for a quiz or a test, when here's a learning task to submit, here's where we go from school ag. So I think, I think these, these tools and the environment we're creating virtually, they all, they all work together. And the more that we can um, you know, keep that idea in mind, it's, it's not really just about all one piece. Uh, academic exchange of things happens in school ag, but a lot of what we're talking about will happen in Zoom will happen in an environment like we're doing now. Uh, so that's what we're trying to weigh out and get a feel for that. And I would agree, I'm sure the staff there would, would respond to whatever, you know, whatever the scheduling is across um, the, the coming week, if the, if it's opportunities for training, they would embrace opportunities for training. If it's uh, kick in and go, they'll, they'll do their very best to make the best uh, situations for the, for the students they serve and the families that, that support that work.
Thank you, Dr. Ramage. And of course, last but not least, Dr. Procedo, if you'd weigh in please, uh, from your uh, department.
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Sherk. Um, I, I would just add that um, from a pupil services and special education perspective, um, I have tremendous faith in our teachers and staff, and I think that maybe, maybe they're not giving themselves a big enough pat on the back, truthfully. I mean, we did an amazing job in the spring. We knocked it out of the park in E S Y. Um, teachers and staff at the secondary level engaged in school ag and Zoom, Zoom at the elementary level. So um, you know, I, I think that we've been meeting as departments, we've been engaging in training, we have more going on this week. Um, Zoom and progress monitoring follow-ups for paras again on Thursday. So you know, there's nothing perfect about this situation for anybody. It's an, it's a tough situation. Um, we're not going to get it right all the time, but I do think that we're in it together. And I think that um, my perspective is many of our teachers and staff just want to have the kids in front of them. And I think that um, there will be a sense of calm to a degree when we get to that point. Um, so you know, I think if, I think if the decision is Monday, I think that there's a lot of social emotional learning and connections that can happen um, as we improve our craft in the other areas. And if the decision is to delay, um, you know, I think that we can certainly make good use of that time as well. But I, I really have, um, I say this to them all the time, I brag at the county level about our teachers and staff and their commitment and um, their ability to really just get this job done in a tough situation. So um, I remain committed to that and um, I think we're good to go.
Um, thank you, Dr. Procedo, and thank you uh, everyone for uh, for weighing in. Um, I think you gave the board a good perspective of where you are within your building and within the departments. I just, uh, Mr. Bicker, anything you want to add from the technology standpoint?
Uh, we're just doing our, yeah, thanks, Dr. Sherk. We're just doing our best to make sure the systems are functional, make sure the uh, all of the systems have rosters, teachers can see their rosters. You know, any accounts that need to be created, any devices that need to be configured. Um, we're just doing what we do.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lindgren.
All right. Um, it's once around there. Um, we've talked about sort of the half days and how that's going to work. Um, at this time, I would, I would very much appreciate hearing from Mr. Shan's uh, his opinion on this and what we've talked about so far on the half days.
Uh, hello again. Uh, not sure what that looks like. Again, uh, we are certainly not, you know, union leadership, and again, this isn't really about the middle school and high school. Uh, although, you know, there, there, there's still more training necessary, I believe. You know, texts are flying in to me from all over the place. Um, but you know, we're speaking predominantly about the K to five uh, group. Lots of options out there. Uh, we would certainly be willing to work with you guys on trying to come up with ways to, to do that. There are concerns that, you know, uh, you know, that I, it would be out of our scope of, of, you know, decision-making power. Again, that's why I came to you with a recommendation. Uh, you know, that's really all we have. Um, but we could certainly take people, uh, I think if principals were to go back to their buildings, uh, I've been looking over the schedule actually of the elementaries, and I don't see anything listed on them for the next two days specifically. It says like Zoom or school ag training, you know, it's a lot of like blocked out stuff as, as people are figuring, figuring things out where it says, um, you know, a faculty meeting and, and this time and that time. So I assume that's where all that is going to take place. But I certainly think it, that at the building level is, is where that should occur. I, I don't honestly believe it would be my position or union leadership's position to come in and say, hey, here's how you should do this. We are just looking to have these exact, authentic conversations for no other reason than a, a better, you know, hit the ground running type of thing. Um, so I don't want to make a recommendation. I don't see anything wrong with us all putting our heads together and figuring out a way to make those uh, you know, half days or, you know, lose a couple of days totally for full-on training. Again, we're open to anything. We just truly appreciate that the board i- is entertaining the conversation, allowing uh, me to speak on behalf of our membership today, and we were, are more than willing to work with you. Uh, and, and that's just, that's what we do. So thank you.
All right. So, um, at this time, I think we're ready to talk about a motion from the board. Um, we've heard from our administrators and, and now from uh, our union leadership. And what we're looking to do is to try and find some way of getting there from here. Um, we the only thing that I can say, you know, we're listening to everybody talk, we're listening to all of the different things. And it's hard for me to square the circle between what I'm hearing from the administrators and what we're seeing in those emails and hearing about it, when I listen to the, the administration and what they're talking about with their teachers and, and the, and the preparations that they're making and, and the progress that they're making and, you know, their, their glowing reports of the teachers and the, and, and their professionalism and the other side of, you know, the, the seasoned professionals, you know, in tears. I don't know how to reconcile those two stories. It, it, it seems that it's, it's very hard to reconcile those two. It's, it's entirely possible that, that those two are both true, but it's, it's hard for me to reconcile those two. Um, I know that this thing that's been going on for these past several months has been very difficult on uh, on all of us on the board, trying to figure out all these given different decisions. And we've worked through a lot of different subjects and learned a lot about, a lot of different things. And you know, we've taken each decision as it comes and trying to make the right decision on the different things. And now here's, here's another one. You know, we, we get through the one decision on the athletics and now here's the next thing. Um, and we make this decision and then, you know, two weeks from now we'll have another decision and, and so on. And then we keep, we keep coming up with, with next decisions. Um, we want the teachers to be ready. We want the students to be ready. We want the, we, we, we want, we wanted the computers here on time. We wanted the notebooks here on time. We wanted everything to work out. Um, and nothing's, you know, we, we keep saying to each other, you know, can't we catch a break? Can't anybody catch a break? There's all the jokes going around about twenty twenty and when will it be over? Well, it's not going to be over before December 31st. Nothing we can do about that. And we just keep sort of trudging through twenty twenty, and that's just going to be the way it's going to be. And I I don't know when things are going to get better. So all we can do is to keep on pushing and trudging. I, I mean, I was, if you have never seen me, I'm short and I'm stocky. This is what I do. I trudge and I toil. That's, that's what I do. I'm sort of used to it. And it, it's not glamorous and it's not, you know, sort of fun, but that's, it's, it's what I do. And you know, there, there's I admire and I I really want to be the guy that can inspire folks. And sometimes um, it's hard to find a way to do that. And I admire the people that can. I don't really have a very inspirational message this evening, other than to say, I'm here and I'm going to keep working for the people of this district. I'm going to keep on being here and making our decisions, and I'm going to do my level best every single day. And if you think I'm asking these questions in a, in a, in a rude way, or if I'm just trying to get the information, I'm trying to find out what's going on. I'm trying to get the, the best information I can get. And I don't necessarily go about it uh, in, in the most perfect way. I'm just trying to figure out where is the truth? What is the right information? How do I make a decision that is the best decision? Is it to delay school? Is it to find another way to compromise? What is the best decision that we can make? I don't know. I don't split the baby just to split the key. I want to know what is the best decision? If we can, if we can delay this school, or if we can have half-days for a little while and that gets us somewhere, and that is actually a good decision, I think it makes sense right now to delay to do the half-days. Because that buys us some time with the computer, for the computers to come in. It gets us some time where we're, we've got some time to do, as Dr. Sherk said, to see what works, see where the problems are, work on them, solve them real time in the classrooms and after classrooms. I, I think it makes some sense. So I think a motion to work on half-days for a week would be a motion that would make sense to me. That would buy us some time to A, have the computers come in, B, give the teachers additional training uh, in a real, real-world environment and set everybody's mind these down the road for a week. Um, if anybody wants to amend that emotion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I didn't make the motion yet. Um, I'll make a motion that we delay school and and we will go to half-days from August 31st through September 4th. Starting school September 7th? Or is that the holiday? No, it'll be the 8th.
The 8th.
Patty, are you saying, you're saying delaying school, but you're really starting school and still now?
Yes, I'm sorry. We're, 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 instead of starting school, we're going to go to half-days from August 31st.
To the
September 4th. No, to, through September 4th, beginning full days on September the 8th.
Patty, are you saying all grades K through 12 or just five and then middle school and high school normal?
I'm saying the school district.
Right. So we're right, half-days for everyone, K to 12 for the first week, August 31st. For the first week and then coming back to school full-time, starting on the 8th of September.
Everyone.
Everyone.
Yeah, Dr. Harney, Dr. Harney indicated earlier it was better if the whole district followed the same schedule. Am I correct?
No, I, I, what I was saying, I didn't like the whole, I didn't like part of the district starting and part of the district not in at all.
Right.
The timeframe is these days need to count as student days. Um, and as, as long as, even if, if half the district is half-day student days and the other one are full, as long as they're counting as student days, I'm okay. It was when we were talking about having one group not in at all and the other group in, I, I don't know.
I think, I think the question that needs clarification, and it doesn't mean the board should vote one way or the other. It's their, their call. Do you have a problem with the elementary students going half-day to school and the rest of a student body going full days? And I know that's not Patty's motion, and she may not want to make that a motion, but I, I'm not sure we're clear as to what you're suggesting.
And if, if I could weigh in just real quickly, I know uh, Mr. Shan's is still one. Logistics schedule-wise, we do have an act eighty-day schedule that we, that we use. Uh, which, which uh, we do that for professional development that adds two hours of professional development in an activity schedule, but allows our teachers to get a full, full day in. an Act 80-day schedule, but allows our teachers to get a full day in, you know, K-12, and then the students are dismissed early. That schedule was already intact, and our teachers are familiar with that piece. So, that would be a good segueing to this motion or this proposal. And obviously, you know, with the opportunity to have 6 through 12, you know, start out, you know, full-time, if you will, and, you know, regular schedule, we've heard from both middle school and high school principals, that that's definitely a doable piece. And then that would allow our elementary division to get to see their teachers, or get to see their students, work through, you know, complete schedule, shortened schedule, and then have the two hours of professional development at the end of the day, and would also give our families familiarity, because they are familiar with an Act 80-day schedule as well. So there's a couple pluses for that schedule, but I would like Mr. Schantz to weigh in on that piece.
Sure. And again, this would be me speaking as myself, not necessarily the views of the entire union based on all those different possibilities here. You know, the first thing I want to say is, me, John Schantz, leaning a bit more towards full-day delays, and, you know, and again, something I had suggested a while ago would be to just not start until the 8th, to give, you know, even more, you know, consistent and concentrated time to really dive into this. Taking the half-day schedule into account, or only the Act 80-day schedule, the Act 80-days only allow two hours out of the seven and a half for teacher training. So we get, you know, the high school gets dismissed at 2:17, or 12:17, I apologize, we're done at, you know, the kids would normally have left at 2:17, we carry an extra half an hour in there, so maximum time, we'd get two and a half of the seven hours. And again, that's not a lot of training. So, I know Mr. Lindgren had asked, you know, the scope of the thing and some of the suggestions that we could offer. And again, I don't know if the half-day is the right answer. I completely get what everyone's saying about trying to come in. Could there be another option where possibly you say, okay, well, we're going to delay this? Even if you bought Monday and Tuesday, the 31st of August and the 1st of September? And again, please remember, this is just John the human speaking to you in this position, spitballing this without my team behind me to make, you know, those decisions, but is it possible to consider, it's the same type of timeframe where maybe the first two days were pushed back with nothing, and then the kids could come in the second and the third, just as another option with, you know, all-in on the 8th? Again, there's lots of ways to look at this. I don't have the answer. I know Wednesdays are also asynchronous pieces, I believe. Dr. Shirk, is that district-wide, or is that just at the secondary level? I'm not sure you've got that question there.
He was muted. District-wide, John.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Harney. Yeah, so, again, you know, that puts us in a position where, again, Jeff's spitballing for the betterment of everyone here, as an option to throw out before the board, because as I'm receiving a few texts as we speak, you know, that we're really looking more towards needing full days and training and an Act 80-schedule, and I believe in my opinion and our opinion, may not be enough, just getting two and a half hours, you know, in a couple of days. So, as another possibility, before any, you know, motion is made, seconded, questioned, whatever, would you even consider pushing it back to 31st and 1st, having an asynchronous day on the 2nd, so that the kids aren't live yet, still allowing for more Zoom training? There's lots of pieces of the protocol to be put in place. And again, at the high school, I do feel privileged to be ahead of the curve, and I do feel very, you know, sorry, people in the unenviable position to be behind the eight-ball here, but that asynchronous kickoff day then on the 2nd could just be a little bit more laid back. It can establish some of those ground rules and game plans and dissemination of things like the syllabus and class rules, and the Falcon Four can be reviewed, policies, procedures. We all know the reality is, and I always loved going back to school before Labor Day, because those four days were get-to-know-you days, where the teachers need to get to know a little bit more. So perhaps as a compromise, if they were all-in-service days, continued front-loaded-in-service days on the 31st and 1st, Wednesday, the 2nd being an asynchronous day, everybody comes in, you know, for what we're going to call, you know, a full school day on the 3rd, just to give it a trial run, everybody takes four days to decompress, we come back on the 8th, and we're all in. Again, I'm just spitballing here.
John, if I may, obviously, I mean, you know, with real-time social media, texts and emails, I mean, you have the pulse of your people right now, tonight.
Right.
So, you do. So, because we, you know, the board really, Mrs. Grimm came up with, you know, this idea, this compromise, and Mr. Lappick weighed in, and administrators weighed in, and I think there has to be some piece, you know, in negotiations, if you want to call it, at this point, at this late hour, we need some type of ability to come to a compromise, because we've got to let parents know tomorrow what we're doing. I mean, we're not going to have time to sit down and talk this out. We have to really make this decision, really, I mean, we're close tonight, we really are, and have the direction that we can get out to our families, so that we can let them know, you know, when, Thursday at the la... I mean, I think we're really pushing it, if we wait till that time. So, I mean, I just, I mean, obviously, this whole piece, you know, I think maybe the board members need to weigh in as well, because you sort of gave us a counteroffer, if you will, so...
Yeah, and that's, yeah, I understand, Dr. Shirk, and I wanted to make sure that you understand, that is not me, I don't want to nor feel authorized to be like this. I'm not trying to negotiate. I literally consider this, I would choose the word brainstorming, and I do not in any way seek to come off as someone trying to negotiate, you know, in public with the board. This is not me trying to strong-arm anybody. This is not us trying to say, you know, if you don't go for this, what I just totally suggested as a brainstorm, that we would fight you on it. No, we appreciate that the conversation's being had, and if the board would say, hey, look, we feel the better compromise is, are some half-days, you know, the principals and curriculum directors are going to be set to task, as we all are, to figure out those schedules, and I hate, like Mr. Lindgren said, like, the curveballs just keep on coming. And that is just something that, you know, months ago I had suggested, and more recently too, because I just thought we were going to need more time, and here we are, all needing more time, in my opinion, and in the opinion of our union. So, no strong-arm, open arms, unclenched fists, like, looking to work together, please make a decision that somehow takes us into account, and we totally thank you for that.
Dr. Shirk, it's Jay. I'd like to make a couple comments, if I could, realizing it's late. Change is a stressful thing for all people. I spent most of my working life helping people through change, a lot of times, technology changes, which are the worst. Numerous companies where we had one operating system, and we were going usually to SAP. We always thought what we did was adequate training. At the end of the training, it's predictable, a third of the people said they're ready to go, a third said they think they're ready, and a third said, oh my God, you didn't give me enough, they didn't give me enough, I don't know what's going on. Now, they're telling the truth, but change has two components. One is knowledge, and the other's emotional. And in these kind of changes, it's the emotions that get in the way of doing all that. Now, I'm hearing two different stories tonight in this, or two extremes. So, the question becomes, has the training been adequate so far? If it has, the other thing I've learned, when we listen to people, is that we gave more training with SAP changes. You still get a third, a third, a third. There is always a third of the people that aren't ready, and they're not bad people. That's how they handle change. The only thing we found that helped is to create some kind of support groups, cohorts. It's not more classroom training, but get them using the system, even, which they couldn't the half-day, and then have them paired up, or in trios, or in groups of four, where there's power users, and they can get immediately back to each other and say, how did it go? What did you learn? How could you use it? The only thing that got us faster implementation of technology changes was face-to-face support from each other. More train... You get to a point where more training doesn't do anything, and in fact, you could argue that it increases, it increases the fear and the concern of the people. I just taught two Zoom courses for the first time in my life. You know, I didn't know how to use breakout rooms or any of this stuff, and I was scared going in. If they had given me more training and showed me all of the capabilities, they would have scared me more. You know, I just would have been more scared. So, you know, so the question for me to ask is, has the training been adequate? And I think I heard somebody else say, what's the breakdown of the teachers that are saying they're not ready? If it's 100%, then sure, maybe the training hasn't been accurate, but if it's 20, 30, 33%, I say that's to be expected. And I'm not saying that's bad people or bad teachers, and they need, they don't need more training, they need support. They need support for people to show them, see, you can do this, see, you can use this. These are teachers who love teaching kids, and they've never done it in a virtual environment. And not only do you have to do it in a virtual environment, you've got to work the machinery. It's frightening. But more classroom training, you get to a point where more classroom training adds no value.
Mr. Strunk, I'd just like to jump in there and say, you know, again, thank you and welcome to the board. I've not yet had the...
Thank you, John.
Sure, I have not yet had the chance to meet you. But consider me the Lorax, and I'm speaking for the teachers. The training is not, has not been enough, inadequate enough, and some of it isn't even commencing till tomorrow. There has been options, and some are better than others, and we do work together. There are people getting together in classrooms, in socially-distanced desks at homes, if they're part of their own little quarantine teams, if you will, and I know us, and I know I'm one of those people that gets very emotional and reacts to change and doesn't do well with it. This job has taught me a lot, and, you know, you know, everything from breathing techniques and really thinking through, things through an active listening and mindfulness, it sounds crazy, but it works.
That's good.
I'm losing my mind right now, but anyway. Good morning to everyone, it's 12:12. But, no, I will tell you honestly, sir, it is not just fear and change, it is the inability to utilize the pieces that we're going to be asked to use. We are not ready, and, you know, in my mind, it was, you know, push school back to the 8th, four more full days. Again, you know, that was me personally. The letter we had written was just to push it back until whenever, and I understand Mr. Lindgren being upset, or concerned, I should say is the right word, that it's an indefinite amount of time, as multiple people spoke to. But again, I don't want you to take from here, Mr. Strunk, that it's just fear. I don't believe we're in that third, third, and third type of situation. 100% of my people today on our meeting, now again, it was probably 55 to 60% of the membership was on the Zoom today, 0% said anything against it. So it was 100% buy-in that we need more time for various reasons. So it's not just the third I wanted to...
John, thank you. And then I will say, if in fact you're right, and I'm not here to debate whether who's right or who's wrong, but if you're right in what you're saying, and given the timeframes, the nature of the training has to be hands-on, people need to be pushed and given, almost given the opportunity to fail in front of each other, because that's how you learn technology. There's no better success than failure in that, and it has to be hands-on, they have to be demonstrating to each other in classrooms. That's the only way that I know of that you can speed up that learning curve.
Right, and I don't know that half-days are the answer to that, unfortunately.
And one of the points here is that by going half-days' schedule, you get an immediate feedback. You quote, pick up the skill and then get a chance to implement it, and, you know, if you don't do well in front of a group of kids, you don't do well in front of a group of kids. But they'll understand that you're learning and you're trying, and that's what education is all about. We're trying to teach them, and we're in the process of learning too. So I think Jay's got a valid point, but I think it also works for this half-day system, rather than having a block of knowledge dumped on you. You know, and I think that will be a very, this will be a very effective way.
Charles, then what I got to be ready for is my first half-day, and then I get feedback on it and learn from it, and if that feedback is helpful to me and I can be shaped, I leave there feeling more ready for the second half-day.
Yeah, exactly.
And realistically, we're talking about training that wasn't enough when we have two days of training laps.
Okay, I'm just going to step in here and say that what I remember is that... Sorry about that, we're starting to break up and step on each other. Last I knew, Mrs. Grimm had made a motion that we were going to start school half-a-day, K through 12, on the 31st, and continue it half-days through the end of the week, and then we're going to start full-days, starting with the day we come back after Memorial Day, no, sorry, Billy, my last, Labor Day on the 8th of September. That was the motion. Did we get a second on that motion?
Yeah.
We got a second on that motion, so we have a motion and a second.
Just for clarity, Robert, when we say half-days, we mean half-day for students, we mean full-days for faculty.
Half-days for students, full-days for faculty, that is correct. And we're not talking about any Act 80-days whatsoever. Half-days for students, full-days for faculty. Are there any questions from the board on this issue?
Yes. If you do half-days for an entire week for the middle school and the high school, my question would be, do you mix up the days so that you have the first half of the periods, one day and the second half the next day, or do all the students miss out at the middle school and high school level on their afternoon classes?
I don't know that we need it for middle school and high school. I'm going to be voting no to this, and just personally vote K to 5 for half-day. That's just me.
Mr. Lappick, we would build a schedule like we would have like on our, you know, like a two-hour delay schedule, an Act 80-day schedule, where we meet every period, instead of having, you know, 48 or 50 minutes, it would be 38 or 37 minutes. I mean, our principals could weigh in on the exact time, but you'd have a complete schedule, or if we had to make a new half-day schedule, we would just divide that by the number of periods and make it fair. But I just want to jump in there quick. I know, Mr. Parker, you had mentioned, go ahead, I'll let you jump back in.
But thank you very much for explaining, thank you.
I hope I'm not stepping on people, my connection's getting bad. I'm going to vote no to this, because I'm here in middle school and high school, for the most part, is ready, and they need, especially missing so much last year, they need all the time they can get. That's just me. If it gets voted down, I'll make a motion for K to 5 to start with half-days.
Bill, I agree with you. I see no reason why middle and high school can't start with the full day and just go with the half-days with the elementary schools.
The only thing I'd like to weigh in is, don't forget about our Western Center students, because they're on a half-day schedule already. So, having the high school have a regular schedule would help our Western Center students, just another factor.
May I, really quickly, Dr. Harney, just do forgive me, I've been working since 5 o'clock this morning. Can you speak to, you were not in favor of segregating out the schools, you thought it best, everybody do the same thing, whatever we had chosen. Can you kind of go back to that quickly?
Yeah, not necessarily the schedule. I don't think it would be a problem for the middle school and high school to have a full day. What we need are, that all of those days count for student days for all of the staff. And if we do have half-days to the point where it counts as a full, as a student day, I was okay with that. I didn't like the fact that we had some students not in at all, and some students in.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mrs. Grimm, would you be willing to amend your motion to have K to 5 do half-days, and the high school, or 6 to 12 do full-days?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to have K to 5 do half-days, and the high school do full-days?
Yes, I'll amend that motion.
6 to 12 do full-days?
Yeah, I'll amend that.
Okay, very good. And Dr. Nippert, would you be willing to like, amend your motion? Very good. All right. Does everybody now understand the revised motion? Does anybody have questions? Does anybody have, does anybody have questions on the revised motion?
You need public comment.
I know, that's, and I'm Ashley, would you please take over public comment for the new motion?
Sure.
Thanks, Bo.
Sorry, you woke me from my nap.
Sorry.
All right. Hold on. Okay, so let's
Just remind folks of our structure, and it's not our structure, it's what's dictated by the Pennsylvania sunshine law, that we're now taking public comment on this motion only at this moment.
Two minutes, state your name, your address.
Yeah, and I don't know if these are public comment on this or on something else.
Ashley, maybe just ask them specifically, are you talking about pushing school back, yes or no? Just so that they can't get around that.
Well, I can't unmute them, I think Lori's doing that, so. Let's start at the bottom. Lori, or not, wait a second. Now it's changing. Okay, Lori, Lori Ann O'Locke?
Yes.
Are you, is your comment on what we've been talking about for the last?
It is.
Okay. All right, if you can state your address.
It's 2299 East King Street, Santa Toga.
All right, it's all yours.
I have two children in the middle school, which are used to using School-A-G. But I do have a third grader in Lower Potts Grove without a device. And I personally have not had to use School-A-G because my older children do it on their own. I am concerned for the children, even if you do half-day. I'm, I'm concerned that kids, even if we can do Zoom for the first couple days, half-days, there are a huge contingency of kids who do not have devices. So what happens to those kids who feel out of touch, unready to start because they do not have an iPad? I'm just worried about that. I, I'm worried that because of the lack of equipment, that there isn't a one-on-one with teachers to even feel a part of their classroom, even if you do half-day. That is my concern. I understand I will be picking up a workbook, but what, what do the kids do with that workbook if they don't even know what their assignments are or what that workbook will do for them for the first week of school? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lori. All right, how about David Borzick? If he can be moved up to the top. Or Lori, there we go. All right, you are unmuted.
Sorry, I woke up too. My question is, is I've been in the school district about 20 years now.
David, can you, can you give us your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
1230 Grandy Drive.
It's late.
I know. I've been in the school district about 20 years. And when School-A-G came out, the problem was trying to get around it and use it in such a way as it was beneficial. My question is, is since you're going to do half-day schedules, how are you going to evaluate the ability, because everybody's been talking about teachers, how are you gonna be able to evaluate the ability of the students and their parents to be able to use this system? Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, now we have Rick Rabenowitz.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep, you're unmuted.
I'm gonna keep it really short. I'm sorry to even take any time, given how late it is.
And we need your address.
What's that?
We need your address.
5 Lee Drive.
Thank you.
I've been listening to the debate and the debate started on Facebook early in the day. And it's, and it's been ongoing. And I'm just gonna say that I started the morning against a delay. I started this meeting against a delay. And after listening to all this information that all of you have been inundated with, and I've, I've been inundated with, I've changed my mind. And, and while I think that the compromise is better than where we were, i.e. a half-day for the elementary schools, the fact that Lower doesn't have machines at all and won't pushes me over the edge. I just think you should just delay the start of school for the elementary school for five days, which was the original issue. I understand Dr. Harney's concern, but at the end of the day, it just seems like the right thing to do is just to give these teachers extra time to train, give the parent, the parents extra time to plan, and the school extra time to get the machines that, that are delayed for these students. That's for what it's worth. That's, you know, just somebody who's just been listening to everything and trying to process it myself as to what's best for the district. And to me, that's the best idea though. You know, the compromise that's been offered is certainly better than where we were for those people. So that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. All right, now if we can go to Vince. You can say your own last name, Vince. I know at this hour, I'm gonna screw it up.
Actually, it's Vince Amalfatano, my comments
Amalfatano, okay. And what's your address, Vince?
135 Micklet's Drive, Upper Potts Grove, but my comments on a separate topic.
Oh, okay.
Have you come back to me later?
All right, thank you, Vince. So we are down to Sarah Becker Freilich.
Hi, my name is Sarah Becker Freilich. I live at 200 Fairview Street in West Potts Grove. I'm a teacher, entering my 19th year of teaching. And I will say that every single year that I was taught
We can't, I, am I the only one that can't hear?
I can't hear.
There, now we can start to hear you.
I'm sorry, I was trying to use earbuds.
That's all right.
Okay, Sarah Becker Freilich, 200 Fairview Street, West Potts Grove. As an educator that is entering my 19th year of teaching, I will say that the most important day of any year is the first day. Because the first day sets the tone for the students. And the first day is the most important day for the students as well personally. Regardless of when the first day is, the teachers need to feel that they are ready. They have been tasked with an enormous challenge this year. And half of your community is villainizing them in that they didn't perform well enough in the spring or whatever you're hearing. So the first day, they need to be able to give their best to prove to the community that they are capable of this. I also am going through a training on a new LMS for Canvas. And I have spent hours upon hours upon hours and I'm barely even begun. I haven't started filling bags for students in my school yet or any of those things. The, the teachers need time and I don't think that starting off on Monday with a half-day is sufficient enough. They need to be strong right out the gate. And you want all of your kids prepared with their devices on day one. Otherwise, like someone else mentioned, someone feels left behind already if they've missed that Zoom. We're talking about, about emotional learning being crucial this year. It begins on day one and it begins with that first Zoom meeting. And it begins with knowing where it is and how it's taking place. And that information is possibly gonna be communicated to them through School-A-G or whatever LMS they're using. I would encourage you to at least delay until Wednesday. No half-days on Monday and Tuesday, or in the very least. Or to delay for the following Tuesday, September 8th, like many of the school districts in the area have, have done. Thank you so much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Sarah. And let's see, Dawn Engelmann?
Hi, can you hear me?
We'll take, we'll take the car in tomorrow.
My name is Dawn Engelmann, I live at 292 Maggers Mill Road. I also work at Ring Rocks. One of the staff members today had a wonderful suggestion that when we do start back, whenever that date is, that somehow integrating the fact that parents and students don't know School-A-G and the staff don't know it, somehow integrating the learning partnership there, that the parents are learning how to use it, the kids are learning how to use it. That maybe that could be a part of the start of school, helping them learn how to use this. Because we do have to remember, it's not just the staff that don't know how, necessarily know how to operate it. It's also the parents and the kids. It's a trifold of people who don't know how to operate School-A-G. And somehow we think on Monday, we're all gonna click on this and it's gonna come together. So I didn't wanna talk, but I thought I had a unique perspective. There are three groups of people in the elementary age that don't know how to use School-A-G as a whole, as a big picture. The teachers may know how to throw their lessons in, but it's how does the parents portal go into the School-A-G? And how do we tell our parents how to log in? It's the overall big picture that all three people need to know. The parents, the students and the staff together. And that's all I have to share. Thank you so much for your time, guys.
Thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
All right, we have Jason McHugh. He's, I don't know, he's been here a little while, so.
No, I just recently raised my hand if you can hear me.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, so yeah, Jason McHugh, 970 Ivy Lane. And I just wanna reiterate what others have said. I don't know how we can start school even on half-days if three of our 12 grades don't even have the technology to connect to do Zoom meetings. I know I have a daughter going into fifth grade. Luckily, we have alternate technology that she could connect. But there's going to be many others that do not have the technology or the capabilities to connect unless the school provides it. And when you're talking of hundreds and hundreds of students that don't have this, half-days don't even make sense because you're not gonna be able to educate those three grades appropriately. And that's really all I have to say on this specific topic.
Okay, thank you, Jason. All right, we have Hope Gerard.
Hello, Hope Gerard, 1040 Crimson Lane, Lower Potts Grove. And yes, I, I first of all would like to thank everyone for bringing up this topic. It is definitely something that's near and dear to my heart in, in reference to not only supporting the parents, but also our teachers. As someone mentioned, you know, our teachers are not feeling the support from administration, their peers, the, the families, you know, they love our students and they want to give their best. And yes, a lot of them, the reason why we love them so much is because they are overachievers. And, and they want to give 110% every day. But I really feel, as Jason just stated as well, and, and kind of the, the concerns that Mr. Shant has, has expressed throughout the whole evening, is really giving that support. And when we do not have equipment, I have five boys, three of them which are school-age. You know, I, I don't have the, the definite amount of technology that is now required if two of my children are at lower and now they need devices. So again, you know, I think that maybe a vote needs, or a survey needs to go back out. How many of our three to five, you know, don't have those additional devices for their extra kids? Last year, we made it work. You know, we tried to figure out, and luckily, there was only one day, and luckily, my husband was home from work, that we had two Zoom meetings at the same time. I understand Dr. Ramich was saying, you know, start with Zoom, focus on Zoom. It, it still doesn't help those people who have no electronic device in those families. So I, I ask that the board, you know, kind of consider that piece. I don't know that there is a right or wrong answer. I know this is a difficult time and we're all in this together. And, and like Mrs. Grimm said, we come together as a community all the time. We know that just based on Lower collecting all these goods and supplies and things like that. We, we are a community, we are Potts Grove proud. But I think at this point, to neglect, you know, understanding the true concern out there, the true concern is, is the district is not ready. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now I know Vince Amalfatano already spoke, but his hand is still raised. So I don't know if he wants to make another comment, but if not, then we're done. So, okay, hand is no longer raised. That is it for public comment.
All right. Very good. So there's that. Just very quickly, I'll just go back around and ask if anybody else has any comments or questions they would care to make on the board?
Just a comment, or I guess a question for Daniel or Dave, I don't know, or both of you. Can we make sure instructional assistants are included in the training that's gonna be going out the next week and a half?
Certainly. We typically have those conversations, Mr. Parker, about who needs to be included in it. So that would be part of our conversation, absolutely.
I appreciate that, because as of now, they haven't had any training in this.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Wait, wait, hold on, are we voting on half-days or?
We are, yes, I'm sorry, we are in fact
It's, it's what, quarter, it's 20 to 1, so sorry, I'm getting a little punchy.
No, no, you're, you're fine, I apologize. We are in fact voting on half-days, starting on Monday, the 31st, going through the Friday for K through 12.
No, 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 no. No, no.
8 to 5.
8 K through 5.
Sorry, 8 through 5, full-days for 6 through 12. And then, starting on Tuesday, the 8th of September, everybody, full-days.
Correct.
We did, thank you for correcting me. That is the motion.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna vote no on that.
Okay. So.
Voted yes or no, we probably need to do that again.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
No. All right, we don't have to count.
Thank you all, that's
I have another piece of new business if you're ready.
Mr. Parker, can I just jump in and say one thing there? I, again, we just wanna, you know, on behalf of the teachers, all the staff, just wanna say thank you for entertaining, you know, this, this at all and for all the thoughtful discussion from, you know, parents and community members and you guys especially. So as a complete joke aside, could I make a motion that we all start work two hours later tomorrow? Anyway, thank you guys for
It doesn't work, I have a class.
Hey, thank you guys so much for anything you were able to give in the way of, you know, giving us more training so we can do the best job we can for our, for the students in this community. That's all we ever wanted, so we appreciate it.
Before I get to my new business, since I'm following that, that comment, I appreciated, I appreciated a lot of what Mr. Shant shared tonight, especially something he said earlier. And I agree completely with him, he was not here to negotiate. I personally asked, once he was here, to speak at the time that he spoke because I'm because I'm not looking to digress in this meeting, and I'm not looking to argue, but in all honesty, it's twice in the last, I don't know, four to six weeks that we've been led to believe one thing, and then to hear something totally different from the union. So I appreciate him coming on. Personally, I'm speaking for myself, but if anybody wants to agree or disagree, I would welcome him, not at the board table, but at our board meetings, where he can share information and we could ask clarifying questions of him. I think it's important, and I think it's necessary at this time, as we've seen from the last two incidents, to hear directly from the teachers. So as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Shant, I hope to see you at future board meetings.
Thank you.
Well said.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And having connected with several of the board members, you know, just on a personal level, in the community, having taught their children, I think it's a wonderful idea to open up a more streamlined communication, you know, directly, because everybody's in the know then, and it's not an argument. And we can go into something like contract negotiations in a couple of years, and there's a familiarity and not an animosity, and I would love to make that happen. So thank you, Mr. Parker, and all of you. Respectfully, I'm going to take my puppy for a walk and go to bed, guys. So thanks for all you do.
Thank you. So my new business is, I heard last night in the high school orientation, there was some discussion, it sounds like not all classes are being, going to be recorded at the high school level. It might just be me, I was under the impression that everything was going to be recorded. So this way, if a student needs to go back and, you know, re-listen to a lesson, or if they missed a lesson because they were, you know, at a doctor's appointment, there won't really be an excuse to miss a school day, because you can do your class when you get home from that. I don't think it should be open to everybody as an excuse to do school whenever you want at the high school level. Maybe it's under lock and key with the teacher, but it seems to me if we have the bandwidth, or whatever the technical term is, that all classes should be recorded. Other thoughts on that?
I think that's a great idea.
Yep, same, I agree.
Yeah. Because everybody learns at a different pace, so if they can go back and have the reference, good idea.
Dr. Sharp, do you have any concerns, or is this something I need to make a motion for, or is it something that could just be put in place?
I just, if we could have Dr. Ziegler just weigh in specifically on the conversation, we could bring everybody up to speed, because not everybody was there, I'd just, I'd be curious exactly what was said. Dr. Z, if you're still there, I hope.
Yes, I am, yeah. So last night, a parent asked us, would there be recordings? And at that point, I did say, there would not, there was not a plan to record. As we went through the district work that we did, you know, recordings was not something that we focused on. One of the concerns that we had with recordings is, we don't want students to think that they don't have to attend class because they can just miss class and then watch the recording. That would be a common problem if we allow this to be open to anyone. And really, with the investment that our teachers are making in virtual learning, being live synchronous teaching, we were concerned about that. But certainly, this is certainly something that we can do. Our teachers could easily jump onboard and support, and we could make available to our community.
And I do agree with that concern. So hopefully, procedure can be put in place, so the students aren't taking advantage of it, because I think that's a valid concern.
You know, Mr. Parker, to your point earlier about two, three minutes ago, maybe that's something Dr. Ziegler can talk about with his high school staff, and even, you know, even the union leadership piece. Because obviously, they weigh big into that, into that recording piece. So that would be a good opportunity for, you know, Dr. Ziegler to have that conversation, and us to have that conversation with that group.
I think at this point, I'm going to, I believe it's a board-level decision. I'll make a motion, since school starts Monday, I would be all for that. I'd like to have, you know, as much information and input as I can before making a decision. But I would like to see, I'm going to make a motion that all classes be recorded so they can be used at a later time, as deemed appropriate by that teacher.
Actually, I'm, okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
Like this, I'm just a bit concerned about that, because they're, like, all classes, like, without exception? I sort of feel like that.
Jim, 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 hold on, you get, they got, someone's got to second it before.
Yeah, I know, I know, I realize, sorry, again, it's, you know.
I did, I seconded.
I need more food, so I'm sorry.
I did second it.
I have to agree with Jim, I think that's a pretty broad statement.
I'm open to amending it.
Every single one has to be recorded. I just.
It's a district-wide, we, it's a district-wide, just not high school-specific.
I mean, like, special education classes, would they be recorded then as well? Is that appropriate? I mean, maybe Dr. Presidio can weigh in on that, just.
There's a technical limitation, too, which I mentioned in another meeting. I use Canvas and use Zoom to record classes, and I wound up running out of allotted memory. I could not keep all the lectures. I had to eliminate some. So we should not have a motion that is unlimited. You need to limit the amount of time, because I heard somebody say, we have an infinite amount of space. It's awfully hard to have an infinite amount of space. I don't believe that. I believe that there is a limitation on memory that may impact this decision. We do not have enough information to make this motion at this time.
I don't disagree, and I guess it is 12:45, but my intent is, or my point being, you know, whenever there's content being given, whenever new instruction is taken, I don't know how we want to word it, but in other words, for, I think it's already a done deal for elementary, I believe is my understanding. But I think we're doing this, we talked about, you know, recording this classes in the past, in policy and so forth. These are being done, we keep talking about synchronous and asynchronous. If you want to make use of it, so if a kid has to miss school, why not be able to let him hear about the lesson on such and such? So I don't mean every class of every day from nine to five. You know, I'll word it however we need to word it, but, so content instruction can be recorded.
Terabytes of information, we're talking terabytes of information, literally.
Well, that's a Tony question, if we want to ask Tony about the space.
But we can't pass.
Go ahead, Dr. Nibber, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, it's not something that we've done, so we don't know the, you know, how much capacity will be needed. My recommendation, when Dr. Nibber brought it up earlier, was to leverage Google Drive to store the files and link them to Schoology, where it's basically just a link to a file that's stored in Google. Dr. Nibber's right, I mean, nothing is endless, but they do say we have unlimited storage. But even saying unlimited, I'm sure there is a limit there.
If it's a regular school day, if we were in a classroom and a kid misses a class or class, how does he make up the information, or she? We don't record that, what's that?
Right, exactly, and oftentimes, it's a loss. I mean, teacher makes up as much as they can, you know, as humanly possible. But we got the technology going on now, you know, we got kids, especially elementary, that will not be able to, because of, you know, supervision, be able to be in the class during the day, they're going to have to do it at night. So they're going to have to see it later in the day.
Do teachers know that ahead of time, whether they have a full complement of students or not? Is that, is that a, is that the dividing line of whether I need to tape or not? Would I know in advance whether I have everybody there?
Well, yeah, yes, you would, but I mean, the other point of it is, to be able to go back if you, you know, need to, you know, your kid doesn't understand such and such lesson, for the parents to, you know, replay it later.
I understand that, Bob, it's very nice to have, that it's not a feature that's available in a regular classroom.
No, it's not.
And, yeah. And that's why I mentioned earlier, if we gave Dr. Ziegler, you know, an opportunity to speak with the teachers on how that might, you know, work, that might be, that might be, that's definitely worth the discussion time. So that can also be changed as we move forward.
You also need to think about how you're going to reference the lectures. If you just give a date, that might not be useful information to the student. If I say, this is the lecture from August 24th, well, that may not mean anything. But if this is the lecture where I talk about the first law of thermodynamics, that may mean something. So you can't just put this stuff in a pile.
Okay, you know what, guys, it is almost 1:00 a.m. Can we just do the vote? We have one hand raised, and we are all just way too tired to be, in my opinion.
I agree.
Talking about anything too heavy right now. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have, we have four hands raised, so can we please get this moving?
I'm going to rescind my motion. I strongly encourage that as much can be recorded is recorded for the reasons stated. And like you said, we can come back and discuss at a later time.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Do you have any other new business?
The only thing eventually I would like to bring up is, I want to bring up the tax issue. We can do this for another meeting, I did get a lot of complaints about that. And if we can do that at another time.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, though.
Sure, anything else?
All right, Bob, we do have four hands raised.
We do, so it's, all those folks have been able to.
Five, five now, six.
Well, they've been waiting patiently, so we know what these six questions are going to be about, let's hear them.
Okay, so first is Sarah Becker-Frelish.
Hi, I'm Sarah Becker-Frelish, 200 Fairview Street, West Pots Grove. Thank you, board, for putting so much of your heart into this tonight. I just want to reflect on the discussion that was just being had about recordings being available, and I'd like to just propose one other issue that might cause a student to not be able to tune in that day. And that might be if there's an issue with their Wi-Fi, or if they have an electrical outage or something like that that would prohibit them from being able to participate in the live part of the class that day. That it's important that they're able to access that information at another time of the day. So I would encourage you to continue to discuss the possibility of recordings and making them available, at least upon request. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, next we have Vince Amalfitano.
Hi, how you doing? Vince Amalfitano, 135 Nicklet's Drive, Upper Pots Grove. And yeah, my issue is, and thanks for taking this, I hate to be one of the last speakers of the night on a long night, but my issue is in regards to the non-public transportation, where you voted against doing that. And I seen tonight that you guys take your job extremely seriously, everyone, from the teachers, administrators, principals, et cetera. And I seen this real long discussion, but when I looked at the video from the last board meeting where you made this decision, it looks like you discussed this issue about the non-public schools for two minutes and 10 seconds. And most of that was, I believe, Mr. Davis, Mark Davis, reasoning or about how you can get around not busing non-public students. And one thing to keep in mind, and I'm sure you all know, is we save the district money by going to a non-public school. I know it's our own choice, our own, you know, our own decision. And I believe to educate a student in Pennsylvania or in Pots Grove is somewhere around $15,000. And a special needs student could be double or triple that. And looking over the resolution that you guys voted on, there was one note in there that said, "The district shall terminate school transportation services for resident students." Then, this is what I'm confused about. "The board has determined that such transportation is no longer desired." I just wanted to know if I can get an answer, I imagine you can't answer now, but however you answer, about how did you come across that determination that the transportation was no longer desired? I also reached out to our, my local representative, Marcy Topol. And apparently, Kerry Benninghoffs, who is the majority leader for the PA House of Representatives, sent a letter to the Pennsylvania Department of Education Secretary, Pedro Rivera. And I'm not going to read the letter to you, but I'm just going to read one little paragraph that he wrote in there. He just said, "Keep in mind, both parents of public and non-public school students pay taxes to Pennsylvania and its school districts. Government must be accountable to them for providing transportation to the school. This includes providing transportation to non-public school students returning to in-person learning, even if the accountable public school has elected to begin their school year virtually." And then here's another line, "The funding is in place. Failure to transport children to school in-person education is an unfair setback to students in an already challenging time." And I heard everyone speak, and I heard Mrs. Grimm say that, you know, we're a community, and we're in this for the students. But I believe this is a situation where the non-public school students and the taxpayers were left out of this decision, and this was just thrown upon us without any warning. So I just hope the board can take this issue up, and it can give some people some time to put some input into this. Because as far as I know, we're taxpayers, we are a community. And I know everyone there, their first thing is to look out for the students. And that's what I just like to say right now.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you for your time.
All right, next we have Stephen Barzik.
Hi, yes, my name is Stephen Barzik, and my address is 1211 Spring Hill Lane in Upper Pots Grove. My question, as we talked about earlier a little bit, is around school nurses that are required to be provided by both the PA Public School Code and by the regulations of the Pennsylvania Department of Health. So 58 years ago, in 1962, the PA Legislature passed the School Nurse Act that required equitable services be provided to students, whether they attend public or non-public schools. This has been transitioned to the current PA Public School Code, 1402 Alpha 1, which requires every child of school age shall be provided with school nurse services. Additionally, the Department of Health, Section 23.51, states that a child in private, parochial, and public school shall be provided with school nurse services in the school which the child attends. Section 23.52 states, "The school nurse services shall be provided through the public school system, and the administration of these service, of this service shall be the responsibility of the public school administrator in consultation with the private or parochial school administrator." School nurse services are considered to be one of the mandated services, and include the same nursing functions as those provided to students in public school buildings, such as assessment of student health, healthcare needs, development of appropriate plans of care, medication administration, first aid and emergency care, et cetera. Neither the law nor regulation distinguish differences in the level of service to public versus non-public schools. Now, that's not my opinion, that's a direct quote from the PA Department of Health website. It's easily verifiable, just take a look. I understand this decision was made previously to not provide this equitable nurse services to St. Aloysius specifically. But with these actual requirements in mind, will the Pots Grove School District provide the same nursing services that they would to the public school, to the non-public school? That's all I had.
Thank you, Stephen. Next we have Gordon Whitlock.
Gary.
Yep.
Good evening, sorry, or should say good morning. I feel for you, I've been in your shoes.
Can you give us your address, please?
Sure, 729 West Ray Street in Stowe. I'm going to start out with a question, Mr. Davis, my friend.
Mr. Whitlock, this is just comment, so there won't be any answers.
Well, in order for me to lead to my comment, I got to get an answer to one question. Well, in order for me to lead to my comment, I gotta get an answer to one question.
We, we, this is public comment, we, we don't.
And public comment, according to law, says, "I can ask a question."
You, you certainly can.
Okay, then I'm asking the question, Mr. Davis, has the laws changed in transportation from when I was last on the board? Am I gonna get an answer?
It's public comment, I'm sorry.
No, and I understand what the public comment is, and everybody there, I'm telling you right now, Bob Lindgren knows me, Mr. Davis knows me, and I know what the rules are. So I am asking him the question, "Has the rules changed for transportation since I last served on that board?" Simple yes or no?
Skip, good to hear from you. Again, you know, we don't answer questions during the public comment period. So I'm sorry you'll be disappointed with that answer, but that's what the law.
So basically, you're changing the rules on that, too.
Answer, I'll be pleased to answer.
All right, I, I'll do it this way, what I do know, according to the law, that transportation, if you're providing transportation for your students at that public school, you must also provide transportation to any private school. No two ways about that, that is the rules. You are providing transportation for your VOTEC kids. You are also providing transportation for your special ed kids, which are elementary as well. Therefore, you don't have an out for not providing transportation to the public school, or to the private schools. So I am saying to yous that yous need to reverse your decision based on those rules and provide the transportation that not only are the taxpayers paying from this district, as well as you are being funded by the state to do so as well. Since you're not gonna answer my question, that's the way it is. Thank you for your time, and I know from what I'm hearing, from what I've seen from the board tonight, it's, it's, it's probably not gonna even be bothered with, so thanks anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlock. Next we have Lisa Hefner. Oh, she's gone. All right, next we have Jason McQ. Oh, wait, no, Lisa Hefner is there. Well, well, Jason, your mic is open now, Lisa, my apologies. You'll be next.
Sure, I'll, I'll be quick again. Once again, this is Jason McQ, 970 Ivy Lane. And I just am commenting back to the whole half-day situation. Now, I definitely don't want to delay the school year, I never wanted to do that, but tonight was the first time I realized that lower would not be getting devices in time. And I understand the vote has taken place, so now the board, the district, somebody needs to come up with a plan in the next 72 hours, because essentially there's only three business days until school starts, on how we're going to appropriately start the school year for Lower Pots Grove without the technology in place. And two, when John, the union representative, was talking, when he was talking about the training needs of the staff, I don't think he was talking specific to elementary. And once again, it's been a long night, I don't remember the specifics, but there are definitely middle school and high school teachers that also need additional training on how to properly utilize Zoom, on how to properly take advantage of the technology, how to situate themselves within their classrooms so that they can teach appropriately. I understand that stands were not given for the laptops or tablets or cameras for the teachers to use, so they've got to figure all of that out. There's a lot that still needs to be worked out beyond just the elementary school. So beyond the fact that you're just giving the half-days for elementary, even though three-quarters of the elementary or two-thirds of it, since lower doesn't have the technology, can't attend these classes to begin with, you've also got to deal with the middle and high school teachers that have to spend at least a couple of days figuring out how they're gonna position their devices, how they're gonna teach electronically, because it's different than it was in the spring, when they were sitting at home doing these courses. So just keep that in mind and know that we've got to have these answers in the next 72 hours, given the current vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, next we have Lisa Hefner.
Hi, this is Dave Hefner, 928 Kepler Road. I would just like to strongly echo the comments made by Mr. Amalfitano and Mr. Whitlock. And also share my extreme frustration with, with what appears to be a almost total lack of meaningful conversation around an issue that is impacting taxpayers in this district. Two minutes and 10 seconds to decide an issue and decide the fate of good number of citizens of this district is simply not enough. We, I have been in constant contact with the administrators, with Representative Joe Sarisi. And there has been a lack of responsiveness to letters sent to this board from representatives, state representatives, from administrators, from schools in your district. And it is simply unacceptable. There is a law, and I share Mr. Whitlock's review of that law. You do have an obligation to have equitable transportation for non-public school students in your district, when you are providing any busing for public school students, which it is clear that you are. You do not have a choice to follow the law. The law is the law. And at the very least, there should have been meaningful conversation had with the administrators and principals of the private and parochial schools in your district. That did not happen. And this decision was made capriciously and without consideration for the, for the citizens of this district. The only thing that we as parents ask for, for our tax dollars, is to receive transportation equitably, as the Supreme Court of the United States demanded that happen in the 1940s. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Francesca Malatesta. Turn that off.
Hi, this is Francesca Malatesta from 1645 Potter Drive in Santa Turgut, PA. I echo the comments of everyone reporting on the transportation for non-public school students. We pay our taxes, our property taxes. We do not, you know, we are saving the district thousands of dollars. Now, Mr. Nestor, in one of the comments above, replied to me saying that, in essence, the tap, the, the monies are gonna be applied towards, like, next year. But next year, they're gonna get less money because there's not receiving busing. So it really is like they're kicking yourself in the foot, like, it doesn't make any sense. But anyway, beyond that, it's just principle, and it's not principle, it's legality. What exactly are the grades of the children for special, with special needs and special education that you are transporting? Is it K through eight? Then you are required by Pennsylvania law to transport non-public school students. You don't get to make up the laws. And furthermore, I'm, I'm even more disturbed about the way that these decisions are being made. No one is, it seems like you're just, you've already made your decisions before, like, people are commenting and no one cares. This is disgusting. I've been patiently waiting for it since 7:30 to get this through this, so I appreciate, and I apologize for my frustration, but it's, people are telling you their concerns and no one is taking them into consideration. You're starting a school year and the public school students don't even have the technology to attend. Makes no sense. And then you wanna reinvent the laws. You're not above the law, you need to follow the law. The law says you're supposed to provide transportation for non-public school students if you're providing transportation for public school students. That's all.
Thank you, Francesca. Okay, we have Stacy Messing.
1979 Summit Way, Lower Pots Grove, I'll be very, very brief. I just want to point out that those students being bused to the Western Center have got to provide their own transportation to the school. So I'm not sure where the equity is in providing busing from homes to private schools when those of us that attend a public school have to get our child to the school in order to get them to their educational program. I don't know if that's something that's realized by the people talking about the busing issue, so I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, that's it.
All right, I would like to clarify a couple of points. Most important being that at this time, we are not, not transporting any special education, or any special education students from their homes to the school. There is no special education student of any grade being transported from their homes to any Pots Grove schools. So any information you have to that effect is not true. It just isn't. As the last speaker indicated, students who are transported to Pots Grove High School are being bused from Pots Grove High School to the Western Center and back, that is a different issue. Those students are being transported from Pots Grove High School to Western Center and back again. That is true, but nobody, no special education students of any grade are being transported from their homes to any Pots Grove school and back to their homes. So that, that's where the situation is on that. As I mentioned, every decision we've been making has been fraught and has been difficult. We have thought about this, this transportation decision. And it was a direct result of the decision when we decided to go virtual. It was another cost-saving measure that we tried to implement because of, it was part of the furloughs that we put in place. All the information that we're looking at trying to save the district money going into what's going to be a very difficult year next year, and the budget cycle coming up, and the year after that. We don't know what's going to happen, other than the fact that state revenues are gonna be down and our own local revenues are gonna be down. And one of the biggest ways that we have of, of saving money is transportation. Our biggest cost is salaries. 67% of our budget is salaries and benefits. What you may not know is that the teachers, the teachers are guaranteed their pay, guaranteed their pay. Their salaries, their benefits are guaranteed, period. So that is a fixed cost. There is nothing that we can do to change that cost at all. So we have to look for savings elsewhere. When we decided to go virtual, we had to look at the other places where there is. And, and when two-thirds of your budget is already fixed, there are only so many places to look. One of the biggest places to look is in transportation. $175,000 a month is our transportation budget. Over $4 million a year. So that was one of the choices that we made, was to abandon busing for all of our students, for all of the people of our community. It was not an easy decision. It is not a great decision. It is not something we're happy about, it is not something we're pleased about. It's not something, it is not something that we're joyful about.
I'd be joyful if we adjourned.
We will.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I'll take the motion.
Emotion, but.
Second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, good night.
Good night, everyone.